Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Shade Faschakun.
Here.
Trish Bodie.
Here.
Paul Gauthier.
Here.
Nikosi Nelson. Francesca Romans.
It is 6:18 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. It is my pleasure to welcome Kriti Venkatesan to come lead us in the pledge tonight. Kriti is a student from Laura Bush Elementary and she is all dressed up and ready to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God and one indivisible.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Let's give Kriti and Mr. and Mrs. Venkatesan a round of applause. All right, we're going to move on to our spotlight on learning for this evening. And next, we're going to have Dr. O'Pry, John West, and Donita Meyer presenting this evening on our spotlight on learning, which is highlighting Leander ISD's substitute teacher program. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, Board. Dr. Gearing, we are delighted to be here to celebrate Leander ISD substitutes. And what better way to celebrate substitutes than with the voices of our students? Before we get started, I'd like to turn this, I'd like to have our other substitute team members introduce themselves. I have one missing right now, though. There she is.
My name is John West. I'm a senior director of HR for Leander. I oversee the support staff, auxiliary staff, and the substitute program here in Leander.
And then I am Donita Meyer, and I am the substitute recruiter.
As you know, staff members need to be absent from time to time. The Leander ISD substitute team strives to not only make sure that we have plenty of substitutes, but the substitutes that we have are of quality that are suited for the students that we serve here in Leander.
So if you recall, a few years ago, we brought, in 2022, we brought the subprogram back in-house. And at that time, the board generously also approved two new positions to help manage that program. That team of four, since that time, has done a phenomenal job and executed at a very high level. The slide that you see right there shows that over the last three years, on average, this team manages an active substitute pool of 1,200 subs. And this particular graph shows fill rate. Fill rate is essentially number of filled absences compared to those that need a sub. The dark blue line is this year. On average, for the entire year, a 90.1 fill rate, which is unheard of for a district this size. To achieve those numbers, it takes a lot of work. One of the initiatives that we are super happy about is our recognition and retention efforts that are led by Donita. And I'm going to turn that over to her and let her show you the great work that they've been doing.
All right. Okay, so I think we all can agree that being a substitute teacher is no easy task. They must adapt quickly to new environments each and every day. They remain incredibly flexible and still create a caring environment for students to continue learning. It's very important to me and my team that we express our appreciation for everything our substitutes do for students and staff throughout the school year. We strive to ensure that they feel valued, recognized, and a vital part of the LISD family. One of the big appreciation events we do takes place in the spring, leading up to Substitute Appreciation Week in May. We partner with LISD Council of PTAs to launch a Shout Out for Subs contest across all our elementary campuses. This is to promote substitute appreciation and recognition from our students. Students were invited to participate by submitting artwork, stories, poems, or any other creative piece, expressing how a substitute teacher has made a positive impact on them. I think we all can agree, being appreciated by colleagues, supervisors, or other adults in our life is very meaningful. But hearing directly from a student about the difference you've made to them is something truly special. We want our substitute teachers to not only recognize their important role in maintaining the continuity of education, but also to genuinely feel the impact they have on students' lives. It only takes one moment to make a lasting impression, especially on a student. So that's what brings us here today. We are here to celebrate the students and substitutes that were selected as our winners for this year's Shout Out for Subs contest. The substitutes you see all in this photo and the kiddos that you see in this photo were all of our campus winners that were selected by our wonderful LISD Council of PTAs. I then have the privilege of going to each of these campuses and letting the student know that they won for their campus. And then the student and I go together to surprise the sub with the certificate, with the artwork and the story that they presented. And I can't tell you, they are truly overwhelmed with emotion every time. They, they can't believe that they, you know, are being recognized by a student. Sometimes even some of them are like, I think I only subbed for them like one time. And I'm like, that's what we're talking about. Like, one time can make a huge difference. So after that, we take all of our campus winners, and they're judged by three of our district admin staff. And this year, Casey O'Pry, Paige Collier, and Heather Ned helped us do that and chose our district overall first, second, and third place winners that we would like to recognize this evening. So we are going to start with our third place winner, who you have already met this evening, is Ms. Kriti Venkatesan. She is a kindergarten student from Laura Bush Elementary, and she is joined by the substitute teacher that she chose to recognize and appreciate, Victoria Simmons, along with her principal, Kim Grubb. Victoria has been a substitute with us for a couple of years now and mainly subs in our Steiner Ranch area. Kriti submitted a lovely drawing that captures the joy and enthusiasm Ms. Simmons brings to the classroom. In her artwork, there is a speech bubble above Ms. Simmons' head that reads, "Wow, good job," as she raises her hands in celebration, while a student at a desk responds with a heartfelt thank you. This is a perfect reflection of the impact that Ms. Simmons' smile and enthusiastic encouragement has had on the students. We thank you, Kriti, for your beautiful picture, and thank you, Ms. Simmons, for being such a bright light in the lives of our students. Now, we have our second place winner is Colin Keen. Colin is a third grade student at Parkside Elementary, and he is joined today by his teachers from Parkside, Maggie O'Connor and Jackie Adams, as well as the substitute teacher he chose to honor, Ms. Ada Price. Ms. Price has taught elementary school for 29 years before retiring, and she has been a substitute with LISD now for three years. Colin submitted an outstanding heartfelt poem for the contest that truly expressed how much Ms. Price has meant to him and many of the other students at Parkside. These are just a few of the lines that I wanted to share that capture a little bit of who Ms. Price is to Colin and the students at Parkside. Ms. Price makes learning fun each day. Like sunshine, she lights our way. Her smile brightens up our class, cheering us on as moments pass. She reads stories with such care, making adventures we can share. Patient, kind, and always there, teaching with such gentle flair. Science projects, art, and more every lesson we explore. Thank you, Ms. Price, for all you do, for making learning fresh and new. You're the best teacher, that is true. We're so lucky to have you. We thank you, Colin, for this special poem and taking the time to recognize Ms. Price. And Ms. Price, thank you for your positivity, your warmth, and your genuine kindness you show to our students. Then last, but certainly not least, is our first place winner. First place winner is Kingston Sanders. He is a fourth grade student from Nauman Elementary. And Kingston is joined today by Brunella Vigil, the substitute teacher that he wanted to show his appreciation to, and also his principal, Ms. Kay, from Nauman, is here. Ms. Vigil has served as a long-term instructional assistant substitute at Nauman for most of this school year and has been a sub with Leander for just a little over a year. From the moment I saw Ms. Vigil and Kingston together, it was very evident they have a very special bond. And Kingston shared that Ms. Vigil is very special to him because she made him feel heard, seen, important, and brave. And I just don't think we could ask for more than that. So thank you, Kingston, for your beautiful expression of gratitude. And thank you, Ms. Vigil, for the care and encouragement you give our students and for going above and beyond to make sure they feel supported. Thank you.
We definitely could not have an amazing substitute program in Leander ISD without our exceptional principals that support the program so well. I know we have our principals here. If you want to come up and maybe come for the photo with our students and our recognized substitutes, thank you.
Thank you to our presenters, our students, our substitute teacher program. We appreciate you and your families for bringing you out here. Let's give them another round of applause. Next, we're going to watch a video highlighting student and staff recognitions.
Welcome back. The school's officially out for the summer, and what a great year it has been. I'm Marco Castillo, a junior here at Rouse High School.
And I'm Morgan Nichol. I'm also a junior at Rouse High School. This year has been amazing. We accomplished so much, and even though the classes are empty right now, we still want to celebrate the incredible students' academic and athletic achievements across Leander ISD. Let's head to the theater to see what masterpieces our students put together at the UIL Theatrical Design State Competition.
Vista Ridge had multiple students competing at the state competition. In the end, they won it all in the set design category, as long as third place finished in the hair and makeup division. Congratulations, Rangers. Keep up the great work. Let's hit the ground running and head onto the track for this year's UIL State Meet.
Two students made their way to the podium in their respective competitions. Starting with one of our very own readers, Rouse Sr. Caden Ohara launched himself into second place in the pole vaulting competition. Moving on to the 6A competition, Vista Ridge Sr. Emma Wade raced her way to third place in the 1,600 meter competition. Congratulations to both of those amazing student athletes. Sticking with our district athletics, a Leander ISD football coach is now considered best in the state.
Vandergrift Athletic Coordinator and Head Football Coach Drew Sanders was named Coach of the Year by the Texas High School Coaches Association. Coach Sanders has led the Vipers since the school's beginning, winning their first state title. This is an incredible accomplishment. Congratulations, Coach, and keep up the incredible work you do with those student athletes. Moving on to more career and technical education awards. Because you already know that we got a lot to announce, let's start with our future healthcare workers.
At this year's HOSA competition, Vandergrift took home first place in the medical reading category and will move on to Nationals. Additionally, they earned a bronze medal as part of the Barbara James Service Award. Sticking with that award, Leander High won four gold medals, and Vista Ridge also won two gold medals. Moving on to Rouse, three students earned second place in their respective categories for community awareness. These wins also booked them a trip to the national competition. The future of healthcare is in good hands with these amazing students. Good luck to all of you at Nationals. At the Texas Science and Engineering Fair, students ranging from sixth to 12th grade are given the opportunity to show off their research projects in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics.
A student from Canyon Ridge Middle School won it all in the category of cellular and molecular biology, with his projects focusing on healing eczema. Also, a pair of Vandergrift students brought home third place wins in the category of microbiology and biochemistry. Over at Vista Ridge, this group of amazing students earned a third place nod for their work in the Behavior of Social Sciences category. Lastly, there was a third place win for the students at Running Brushy in the Physics and Astronomy category. We are so proud of all these amazing students. Congratulations on a job well done. We're looking to have some of the best principals in the business across all of Leander ISD. And while they all deserve a round of applause, one of our principals has stood out in such a big way that even the HE buddy has took notice.
Dr. Amy Sharp at River Place Elementary was named a finalist in the Elementary School Principal category. This is part of the HEB Excellence in Education Awards. This includes $1,000 to Dr. Sharp and an additional $2,500 for River Place Elementary School. Finalists were chosen based on their leadership, campus culture, communication, and several other criteria. The students and the staff at River Place are incredibly lucky to have a great leader like Dr. Sharp. This week, we're celebrating the amazing speech-language pathologists across LISD.
They do so much amazing work for students, and our friends over at Mason Elementary would surely agree with us.
I just want to give a shout out to all of our speech-language pathologists across the district.
You need to know that we appreciate you because of all the amazing work you do, helping kids of all types and all abilities communicate. As someone who went through two years of speech therapy in school, I can confirm that Leander ISD has some of the absolute greatest speech pathologists, especially here at CC Mason Elementary. Linda Smith is an absolute rock star, and I'm so excited to have her part of our team.
I'm very grateful for what Ms. Smith does. She helps me with my, like, speech, helping me talk slower and pronounce my sounds better.
You capture our kids' hearts and you keep us in line. And we are just so thankful that you're here at Mason Elementary. Love you.
She's very kind and thoughtful, and I'm very thankful for everything she's done for me and others.
She is one of the best ladies to work with, and we love working with her in our classroom.
Happy Speech Language Pathologist Week.
I'm afraid to be speechless after all those heartfelt messages. What a great way to end the school year.
I agree. We're so lucky to call Leander ISD home, but it's easy to feel this way when you're part of one community.
One family.
One LISD.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to move to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. The board appreciates the community's engagement in tonight's meeting and your valuable input provided through citizen comments. In accordance with Leander ISD Board Policy BED Local, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures in order to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board. This evening, we have 47 individuals signed up to speak and in addition to some lengthy topics for the board to consider. Normally, the board would allow each speaker and public comment up to 90 seconds for his or her presentation, but due to the high number of individuals who will be speaking this evening, I'm adjusting the time to 60 seconds per speaker so that we may hear from everyone and have time remaining to conduct the business of the board this evening. Those of you that have signed up to speak during public hearing for federal funds overview, you will be called after the presentation has concluded. These are the general citizen comments that we're about to start. Before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we're going to watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Devon Kim. I'm a junior at Rouse High School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during the meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. You can send them an email or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the board president calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Okay, before I call up Speaker One, if we can have the first few speakers line up in the back, like maybe one through five, that way we can move through these in a structured, efficient order. Thank you, Daniel. Okay, we're going to start with Speaker Number One. Speaker Number One, come on up.
Hi again, it's me, Michael, from Fabian. I wanted to come back to ask you nicely to please not close my school. My four-year-old sister is starting kindergarten in just over a year, and I think it would be really nice for her to experience this brilliant school of mine. And I'm going to mention again how special it is to be able to walk to school and how it helps me to build friendships. To me, this school is more than just a building. It's a living organism that breathes the life of children that live in it every day, learn in it too. I think it's really sad that we all feel like we need to keep showing up here to tell you how special our school is because all of our neighborhood schools are special and none of them should be closed. Thank you for listening to my speech, and thank you for listening to the hearts of those who want to protect their schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number One. Speaker Number Two.
Once upon a time, there was a girl named Charlie whose family wanted more for her. So they looked and looked until they finally found a perfect place called Cypress. She was in first grade and nervous for the first day of school because she didn't know anyone. Little did she know that she was going to make the very best friends at Cypress. Along the way, she got to ground performing arts through the Spring Productions by Ms. Beller, including Aladdin, Frozen, and Wizard of Oz. She ran in Coach Dash's running club, and Coach Twombly always took time to talk to her and other students to really get to know them. Her art was featured in the district art show by Mr. Clark. Ms. Miller introduced her to a new world as a news anchor in the Daily Cheater News, which grew, she grew as a leader in the student coalition, where she got to meet every month with Principal Jistl, Assistant Principal Gomez, and Mr. Grace to develop new ideas, to improve the school. She got up extra, extra early to serve for safety patrol for the morning drop-off. Her teachers recognized her as a spots leader for her leadership and kindness. None of this would have happened without Cypress. It's more than a building. It's filled with amazing students, morning hugs, and most of all, the best teachers. I know you have a hard job, and closing any school would be very sad but necessary, but I'm asking you to please leave Cypress open so other students can have also...
I'm sorry, thank you speaker number two. Speaker number three.
Cypress Elementary is more than just a school. It is a family where teachers, staff, and students and parents have celebrated to create a safe and supportive environment for us students to grow. I love all of the teachers at Cypress and I know they care deeply about every one of us and our about, every one of us and our education. The teachers at Cypress Elementary are real-life changers and have always inspired us to own our learning and to set goals to help us grow both academically and emotionally. Cypress Elementary is also the heart of our community. The PTA has helped bring the surrounding community together. Community events like multicultural night, our annual fall fest, which has over 500 attendees. Cypress Elementary is an amazing school and it would break our community to lose it. Thank you for letting me speak in this meeting. I hope Cypress will continue to stay open for all future students, including my little sister.
Thank you, speaker number three. Speaker number four. Speaker number four? Oh, speaker number four is not signed in, sorry. Speaker number five.
Hi, this is Oliver Lavelle. I'm going to read what he wrote for me. He's a little shy. My name is Oliver Lavelle and I'm six years old. I will be in first grade at Cypress Elementary. Cypress is a very, very good school. The teachers are fun. What makes Cypress different is that the principals are very nice and funny. I like going to school because the teacher I had is very fun and nice. I like that the playground is very fun. Our gym coach is very fun and funny and lets us play some fun games. Art is fun and sometimes hard. I like Cypress because they do movie nights. Please don't close Cypress because it is very special to me. Okay, we're here remaining, what, 17 seconds? I'm his mom, Tanya Lavelle. I don't want to advocate for any school closures at all. None of us in here want that. We voted for bonds to support new schools, not to close the ones we already have. While Cypress's enrollment and cost savings number are the highest of the bunch, I want to highlight, you know, I get to see him get his fist bumps every morning from his principal. We have these community events funded out of our own pockets to welcome everybody.
Thank you, speaker number five. I don't have speaker number six checked in, so I'm going to move to speaker number seven. Speaker number seven. Speaker number seven? Oh, there he is, okay. If our next speakers want to line up in the back, that would be great.
Good evening, board members. My name is Laitea Drain. I am nine years old and I'm going to fourth grade at Cypress Elementary. I know our school district does not have enough money and you are looking for ways to save money. Closing Cypress Elementary is the wrong choice. Our school sets the example of what an elementary school should be. The teachers, students, and parents of Cypress Elementary work extremely hard to include everyone and make our school the best. Why would we close the, why would we close the best? Who would follow if we closed? Cypress is way more than a number on paper. It is a place where children feel loved, safe, and at home. Please don't take that away from us. To quote our school's song, Cypress Cheetahs are the best.
Thank you, speaker number seven. Speaker number eight.
Hello, my name is Andrew Creaney and I have a few things to say. First, I researched the rating of every single Leander ISD elementary school and Cypress is one of the highest rated on the list with a 4.5 stars out of five possible. There are set, most schools actually average in the three to four star range. Age? And the, and the one that had the least was actually 2.7 stars. Now, I know why Cypress is rated so high, the staff. They're such kind and supportive people, but if the school gets closed, this, a lot of staff would likely be fired as an accidental result. Also, if you close, it was a school, Nomin Elementary, which is where you're planning to send the people at Cypress Elementary from what I've heard, would be overcrowded and it would, and it would cost the district even more money to build other areas to the school in order to support them.
Thank you, speaker number eight. Speaker number nine. Speaker number nine.
Hello, my name is Lorenzo Padilla and I am in fourth grade in Cypress Elementary. Schools are for learning. All school got that down, but you know what else they have? A community of teachers teaching us, not just math, science, and language arts, but how to act kind and how to act as a family of friends, making our lives better every day. Our teachers and special teachers help us do the things we love. My performing art teacher helped me discover my passion for theater and acting. My school helped me take the first step into a successful life with classmates, friends, and teachers. I'm so lucky to be a Cypress Elementary cheetah.
Thank you, speaker number nine. Thank you. Speaker number 10.
At Laura Bush, our teachers help us think outside of the box. So let's do that because closing schools is a very inside-of-the-box way to save money. Instead, there's just one example of how we can make money. Let's run our gym Y drive 30 minutes for soccer when we have a perfectly good gym right here. Big problems need creative solutions and we have plenty.
Thank you, speaker number 10. Speaker number 11.
A few weeks ago, my kids were on a Kiwi bender, so I went to Costco and bought the giant box. Naturally, the very next day, they decided they didn't like Kiwis anymore. I'm grateful to the board and administration for considering options like offering paid pre-K to drive enrollment. And at the same time, the path to fully repurpose Steiner Ranch Elementary for early childhood education reminds me of this Kiwi situation. Do we really need space for 600 pre-K students in Steiner right now if it means displacing every child currently at Steiner Ranch Elementary? Or could we start small, repurpose a few classrooms, see what the actual need is, test and learn? At the end of the day, a box of Kiwis is just a box of Kiwis, but a neighborhood school, as y'all saw, is something much more than that. So I just encourage y'all to let us help you and ask us for help, tell us what you need so that we can really do this smarter and so we don't have to face the situation every year. And is the way to recruit better teachers through fancy training centers or is it through small classrooms with strong communities?
Thank you, speaker 11. Speaker number 12. Speaker number 12. Speaker number 12. Okay, speaker number 13.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to question how the district recently standardized calculating functional capacity at our schools. I understand the equation, but have had a lingering question. How is it possible that Fabian Reed and Reagan, among others, have the same functional capacity of 842 when those campuses are clearly larger than ours? So I submitted a public information request, asking for square footage of our schools. The difference between Fabian and Reagan is 38,873 square feet. And Reagan is even, sorry, Reed is even larger. We are 65% of Reagan's size. These schools are not of equal comparison. The current equation is flawed and incomplete. There are more layers to this than what I can fit into 60 seconds. Don't worry, I'll email you. But it's important to discuss right now as you're putting schools on the chopping block in tonight's long-range planning presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker 13. Speaker number 14.
Dr. Gearing, thank you for visiting Laura Bush Elementary School the other week for the exit interviews of the students. My fifth grader participated and it was a great experience and I hope you learn a lot more about our awesome school. I understand the tough budget situation the board and administration face. I appreciate the effort Jeremy, Pete, and Casey have put into proposing these long-range paths. I support offering a paid pre-K enrichment program in Steiner as the long-range framework proposes. However, instead of repurposing an entire school, I advocate for the Path 3 hybrid approach. Let's use underutilized space within existing elementary schools for paid pre-K enrichment. This is far more cost-effective and those significant repurposing costs aren't in current calculations. This hybrid model keeps families in our district, preventing them from seeking private options. Finally, I am curious about the proposed 47,000 square feet of office space for school community relations, professional development, and administrative office programs. How is this determined? What are the costs and what's the ROI? Please address this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker 13. Speaker number 14.
Hi, I'm a proud mom of a newly graduated kinder and first grader at Laura Bush. My daughter asked me tonight why I was missing dinner and if it was worth it. Once I told her I was going to save her school, she asked to come with me. I've graciously accepted her request to come to the next meeting. As I think about school closures in our neighborhood, it drives my mind straight towards property values. Lowered property values immediately has a downstream impact of our lost revenue for the district. Instead of decreasing values, we propose partial repurposing to paid initiatives bringing revenue into our district. Our community is willing to pay for two large initiatives as cited by surveys, not only tuition-based pre-K, in addition, after-school STEM labs and research facilities. This opportunity betters our community, future, and district.
Thank you, speaker 13. Speaker number 14. Actually, no, we're not updated here, sorry. Speaker number 16. Apologies. Speaker number 16. Speaker number 17. Not checked in. Speaker number 18.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adriana Pejenaute and I have two kids at Laura Bush. After reviewing the slides, I have serious concerns. While I respect the effort, many of the proposed paths don't add up. Your own numbers show that closing Laura Bush would say almost nothing. In your slides, there is no clear plan for repurposing the buildings or supporting the staff. Have you asked our teachers? They are professionals, they head of our schools, and we must protect them just as we must protect our students. Education, not budget cuts, should be the priority. How can we justify closing schools while funding the construction of four new ones? Why not reduce administrative overhead instead of disrupting classrooms? Finally, as board member and parents, you face a potential conflict of interest. Your duty is to every student in the district, not just your own neighborhood. We need fair decisions, not convenient ones. Path 3 is the only reversible solution. It addresses cyclical low enrollment and helps preserve future...
Thank you, speaker 18. Speaker number 19.
It's Angelica Roman and I'm a proud mom of Laura Bush School. I'm here to tell you that Steiner Ranch, closing Steiner Ranch, it's not the right solution, not even repurposing the entire school. This is not only affecting one school, it will affect Laura Bush and Vista Ridge. And remember that all these schools fed into Vandergrift High School, that it's the top performing high school in the Leander ISD and one of the best in Texas. Why do you need the entire school for just a pre-K? Why don't you just use a space? And also, you can use, you can use that to improve the utilization rate that you are worried about. Converting a full campus and staffing pre-K center won't fill 600 seats. This doesn't seem efficient or sustainable. Please also consider the property values and the community equation. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker 19. Speaker number 20.
Good evening. My name is Isabel. I'm a mom of four kids and I live in Steiner Ranch. And one of my kids have learning disabilities. I'm here because our schools don't just educate, they change lives. Small class size have made it possible for my children, especially the one who needs extra support, to receive a personalized, high-quality education and build a strong foundation for middle school. I understand there is a proposal to repropose one of our schools into a preschool center, but there is simply aren't 600 children in that age range. Instead, we could expand paid preschools programs across the campuses. This allowed us, this will allow better use of space without sacrificing what make our school special, small classes, individual attention, and a strong sense of community.
Thank you, speaker number 20. Speaker number 21.
Good evening. Thank you all for your service. I know you put in a lot of time and I know this stuff isn't easy. You're having to make some difficult decisions. I would encourage my friends and neighbors that are here, you need to contact Governor Abbott, Lieutenant Governor, and the Republicans in legislature. They have not given a pay raise to our teachers, they have not increased public school funding. That is what's causing Leander to have to make these kinds of difficult decisions about closing schools. If we can get more money from Texas Legislature, which we have a cert, we have a budget surplus in Texas and we have more people coming into Texas every day. So there's no reason that Texas State can't give more to our public schools. That's what we need to do. I don't think anyone wants, I'm positive that no one wants to close any schools, but at this point, we're going to have to make some hard decisions and move forward. Thank you again for your service and happy June Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker 21. Speaker 22.
Hello, my name's Allison. Thanks for the chance to address you tonight. I grew up in this district. I spent K through 12 here. I am here now as a mom of a recent Cypress fifth grade graduate. Sorry, I have like immense fear of public speaking, so my voice is shaking. Last school year, we fled Giddens Elementary after years of abuse that my children suffered there. My older child, both my children have been assaulted on campus by their students. The administration response was nothing. Another parent assaulted me outside a classroom and the administration did nothing. My daughter's teacher verbally abused her daily in class. When that was discovered, the administration did nothing. I put in transfer request and by some grace, we ended up at Cypress. My daughter, I traumatized. And a year and a half, that community, that faculty, that staff, the students healed her. She was failing in everything. She's now excelling and going to advanced classes in middle school. I would like you to consider the impact more than just financial of what the closure would mean. The district cannot afford to lose Cypress.
Thank you, speaker 22. Speaker 23 is not checked in, so we'll move to speaker 24. Speaker 24. Speaker 24. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kami Cox. I wanted to speak with you today because I'm in a unique position. I'm a product of Leander ISD and went to Nomin in elementary school. I deeply love that school and the memories I have there. I've also taught at Cypress for the last five years and I call Cypress my home. While teaching at Cypress, I've experienced a deep level of family collaboration and community. Both schools are wonderful schools and have educated in our, children in our community for decades. And I know that you look at a lot of factors here, but I urge you to look at student, staff, and parent feedback forms. The most important data point we have is school culture. I know that there's, was a long-range planning committee to discuss suggestions for school optimization and I'm curious how many parents and staff there were from Cedar Park Schools on the... I'm curious how many parents and staff there were from Cedar Park Schools on that committee. While our words might not have been heard on that committee, I encourage you to look up more qualitative data about Cypress campus culture. I believe the culture at Cypress would be very difficult to replicate. I don't envy the decisions before you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker 24. Speaker 25.
All right. Good evening, Board members. My name is Lisa Weiser Cummings. I'm a Cypress parent. I'm also speaking here on behalf of my rising sophomore at Cedar Park High School as well as my upcoming fifth grader at Cypress. I am here to ask you to reconsider Pathway 1 as the proposed consolidation of Cypress and Nauman. Cypress has the highest enrollment rate of all the schools that you guys have under review right now, and a merger would actually push that number up to 98% capacity with Nauman and Cypress under the first year. So where are these kids going? These buildings are full already, so are we getting portables? We're gonna close schools and then buy portables for these kids because there's no room in those schools. But this is more about numbers. Cypress is a vibrant, tight-knit community and with young families moving in, our neighborhoods are changing. People are moving out, new neighbors, small children are moving in, and our school is growing. Cypress delivers through its IBC programming, strong special education supports, and a thriving
Thank you, Speaker 25. Speaker 26 and 27 are not checked in, so I'm gonna move to 28. Speaker 28.
Good evening. My name is Rayanne Dower. I was here at the last meeting. Both of my kids went to Nauman, K through 6, with my son graduating this past May in fifth grade. I'm still here to support Nauman and to avoid closure and repurposing. I know there's been other actions that have been developed. I wanted just to further discuss the great foundation that Nauman has regarding SCSS. Before having kids, one of my neighbors touted the wonderful staff that supported two of her three sons that had autism. I never expected my child to have ASD, but he was diagnosed with autism later with ADHD. I had peace of mind that my son would be in great hands at Nauman. During his time there, he graduated from speech therapy and SCSS, social lessons. Again, I just wanted to stress how Nauman, as a Nauman parent, how important and critical they were with diver- divergence and to my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker 28. Speaker 29.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Cindy Hughes and I've proudly been a part of the Leander ISD community for the past 19 years as a teacher at Cypress Elementary. I'm here tonight to ask you sincerely and passionately not to pursue Path 1 in the facility optimization plan. Cypress isn't just a school, it's the heart of a neighborhood, a safe haven for children, and a place that has shaped generations of families. For nearly two decades, I've watched this school create not just strong students, but kind, confident citizens. I've seen teachers go the extra mile, staff who know every student's name, and a community that rallies together in ways that are rare and incredibly special. Cypress is a model of what we want in public education: consistency, care, and connection. Closing it would fracture something that's been built with love, hard work, and deep roots. It's not just about numbers on a chart, it's about people, relationships, and the kind of community legacy we should be preserving, not dismantling. I urge you to please take a closer look, talk to your community. We will work with you. Please keep Cypress.
Thank you, Speaker 29. Speaker number 30. Speaker number 30.
Good evening. My name is Jeff and I'm the parent of two children who attend pre-K and first grade at Laura Bush Elementary. Four years ago, my wife and I had made the life-changing decision to leave California and move to Texas with the sole purpose of being in a good school district. Even while living in California, we heard chatter of how exceptional Steiner Ranch was because of the amazing elementary schools in the community. This legend turned out to be true. Not only did Laura Bush exceed all of our expectations as a top-rated school, it also became the heartbeat of our community. Its location makes pickup and drop-off easier for families, but the close proximity has also brought many families close to each other through cherished events like fossil hikes and rodeo day. Repurposing Laura Bush would take away the heartbeat of the community and leave many families feeling abandoned. Just as Laura Bush has been a beacon attracting families like mine, the schools here continue to draw families with young children to this area. Please choose to preserve the heartbeat of our community and keep the doors of our elementary schools open.
Thank you, Speaker number 30. 31 has not checked in, so we're gonna move to 32. Speaker 32.
Hi, my name is David Kestner. I've got two beautiful daughters, one's about to start first grade. I have to say, I'm incredibly impressed with Cypress Elementary. My mom is a schoolteacher. I've seen, actually, my stepmom is as well. I haven't seen anything like Cypress Elementary. I was very impressed. And financially, facilities are very easy to see what they cost. Maintenance is expensive. But the leadership in any organization is exponential impact to the financial situation as well as the amazing community that's out here. I don't know what your other hearings look like. I'm guessing they don't quite look like this. The leadership is why this is here, so don't waste that resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 32. Speaker 33.
Hi, my name is Megan Foster. I'm a product of LASD. I attended our schools and graduated from Vandergrift in 2014. I've been a SPOAIA at Steiner Ranch, and this fall, I'll begin my first year as a classroom teacher at Fabian. With the tremendous support of the staff at SRE, I pursued my degree in education. My daughter will start third grade next year and has an incredible love for school. As both a parent and an educator, I've seen firsthand how deeply this school invests in its students and staff. This is where I found my passion for teaching, where my daughter found her passion for learning, and where I found educators who pour their hearts into what they love. SRE has shown me how a school can become a home. I believe it is in the district's best interest to keep SRE and Fabian open. Our small schools with big hearts are the ones that have continuously proven to make a profound difference in the lives of our students, families, and communities. And I'm rooting for Cypress Creek, too. It's awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker 33. Speaker 34.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm Beth Jones. First, I've been here 21 years with my children, one autistic and one with ADHD. You can imagine how that went. But these teachers were fantastic and helped us. Why I am here tonight, though, is not about my children. Tonight is about as a board president of the MUD District, which includes Nauman and Cypress Elementary. We are a community that has been strong for many years. These schools are essential to the community. Our children feel safe walking to and from school. This is essential for parents to feel secure as well. They both provide value to the neighborhood. Cypress was built in 1816, or 1860, in a log cabin, first school in Cedar Park, rebuilt in '37 and in '87. Soon after, the district Anderson Mill Park was built. This was built by the MUD and it was built for our schools, so that after school, the kids had a place to go. During school, the kids had a place to go. For activities after school, the kids had a place to go. We have 1,500 homes and many families. We don't work together and bring these schools together. We need to work.
Thank you, Speaker 34. Speaker number 35. Speaker 35.
Good evening. I am a mom to three LASD students, and by the time my youngest, a fourth grader, goes to middle school, I will have had kids at Cypress Elementary for 13 consecutive years. Cypress was constructed in 1987, just two years after the establishment of WTC MUD 1, the community within which Cypress is located. The school is so deeply embedded in the fabric of our community that closing it would fundamentally change the character of our place. Our school is worth so much more than a narrow set of statistics, and the repercussions of LASD's decisions impact so much more than the school district's bottom line. Closing a beloved 40-year-old elementary school located at the heart of a predominantly residential community is going to have significant impacts on property values. And that revenue may be a drop in the bucket for LASD, but it is extremely concerning for a tiny MUD that relies on property tax revenue to support its operations. The way communities promote healthy and prosperous change, stay vibrant, sustain property values, and continue to thrive is by evolving with and investing in our most precious community assets, which include neighborhood-oriented elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 35. Speaker 36 has not checked in, so we're moving to Speaker 37. Speaker 37.
I moved to Cedar Park in 1999 with an eight-month-old. She went, I walked her to school, Cypress Elementary, every single day. It is, and whenever I drive by it, it just tugs at my heart. This is our home. This is a community. Preschools would be great, included in the elementary school, in every school. The disconnect with our neighborhood and this district needs work. Keep them both. 1860 is generations of children. Let's not cut the schools where education started in Cedar Park.
Thank you, Speaker 37. Speaker 38.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Leslie. I'm both a parent and a substitute teacher here in Leander ISD. I'm here to speak out against the proposed closure and repurposing of Cypress Elementary. As a substitute teacher, I believe increasing enrollment by cramming more students into the same footprint will be detrimental to learning, teacher retention, and student well-being. Architectural capacity is not the same as real functional space, especially when you account for special education, small group learning, or intervention programs, all of which require space to be effective. The idea of full enrollment deserves scrutiny. Who defines it? Why is it prioritized over quality of education? Does higher enrollment inherently lead to better learning outcomes, or the contrary? If your proposed goal is optimized, excuse me, is to optimize underutilized space, then we need to measure utilization in a more qualitative way, and enrollment projection is just not enough. Cypress is a small but mighty school. Let's invest in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 38. Speaker 39.
Hi, good evening, Board members. My name is Nancy Stroder. I have a first grader at Cypress Elementary and I hope my two-year-old will be able to attend there in three years. I want to thank you for your service, as I know you have some tough decisions to make. I stand before you to advocate for Path 3 in keeping Cypress Elementary open. Cypress is more than just a school, it's a cornerstone of our community, with strong parental involvement, as you can see, and a dedicated staff, and a location that allows many students to walk to school and exemplifies the values we all cherish. In an era where bus drivers, shortages are very prevalent and real, this walkability is not only convenient, it's essential. Overcrowding is a pressing concern I have. By merging the two schools together with over 800 students, it's not just challenging, but it's counterproductive. I believe Cypress is successful and Nauman based on their size, the teachers can focus on their students. As you are aware, Leander ISD has experienced 171% increase in student transferring to charter
Thank you, Speaker 39. Speaker number 40.
All right, I'm gonna try to go fast. Okay. My daughter's in second grade and absolutely thrives at Cypress. We walk to school along with underserved communities that depend on that. She loves her teachers, her quest program, art, and she wakes up excited to go to school. That kind of joy is rare. Being a parent at Cypress even inspired me to be a teacher, and I plan to join the Cypress team because we believed in your values, putting students and teachers first. But this decision feels like the opposite. Why not reduce the administrative overhead or ask them to wear multiple hats instead of cutting staff who directly serve our kids? Asking our students and teachers to carry more, to adapt to crowded classrooms, and mounting pressures is not the solution. Closing Cypress would be a devastating mistake. You will lose the trust of everyone you serve. Please don't take away our community and our children's joy in learning. Keep Cypress open and let it continue to thrive.
Thank you, Speaker number 40. Speaker 41.
Good evening. My name is Megan Myers and I'm here tonight as a parent deeply invested in Cypress Elementary's future. I'm the parent of a current Cheetah and two future Cheetahs, and my family selected our neighborhood for Cypress explicitly. We have plans to be here for a decade. The proposal to shutter Cypress is short-sighted, given the layers of supporting data provided by the board in its proposal. Cypress serves the largest numbers of students under review, over 500. Moving this volume of students is a huge logistical challenge that has the highest family disruption factor of any school under consideration. Cypress is a thriving school with a clearly invested community. Instead of shutting Cypress down, the board should preserve its excellence. Cypress is the only school under review that is currently operating with a surplus, a sign of both financial health and strong community investment. If allowed to remain open, its excellence would continue to prevail in delivering lasting value to the expanded community. I urge the board to spend more time exploring the hybrid approach in Path 3. There are more options to be explored. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 41. Speaker 42.
Good evening. I'm a proud Nauman parent. Truly, it's nothing against all these fine people here to support Cypress. You're all passionate advocates for public education, and that being said, I think we would get along just fine. But I don't think it would be wise to merge our two schools. I haven't commissioned any longitudinal studies or done a deep dive into how the budgets work, but I do know this. Every day, I read doctors, educators, psychologists, sociologists, and experienced parents tell me the same thing, which is the key to teaching a child to do anything well is consistency. My son had the benefit of attending the ELE program at Nauman. It brought us into the school early, it got us involved in the community, and it's made us clearly very passionate advocates for Nauman. I don't understand why, if we wanted to increase our early childhood education... That's my time.
Thank you, Speaker 42. Speaker 43 has not checked in, so we're moving to Speaker 44. Speaker 44.
Good evening. My name is Prairie Burgess. I am a parent of two children in LASD, both of whom have come out of Cypress Elementary School. Sorry. While I understand the challenges you face, I urge you to consider the value and unique strengths at Cypress Elementary School and what they bring to the community at large. Cypress is a special mix of economic and demographic combination that makes a unique place. It has parents and students from all walks of life who work together for a purpose of raising up our community's children. It is a community school in all aspects of the phrase, and the students who have walked those halls know how to connect with others, so that, sorry, know how to connect with others who may live, look, and work differently from each other. This results in more success later in life. Cypress is under strong leadership that provides consistent, positive education and growth opportunities for its students in a safe and welcoming environment. We have a solid record of developing students to grow into engaged teens and adults who are involved in their schools and communities upon graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 44. Speaker 45 has not checked in. We're moving to Speaker 46.
My name is Brent Burgess and I would like to speak in opposition to the idea of repurposing Cypress Elementary. Allow me to state, my family, my neighbors, and my children have had amazing experiences at Cypress Elementary, and we are grateful for the teachers and administrators who've worked hard to educate our children, promote the values of our community. Additionally, Cypress Elementary, combined with the adjacent Anderson Mill Park West, or Anderson Mill West Park, serve as a cultural nexus for much of the Anderson Mill West and MUD District 1 neighborhoods due to its central location, propensity to support community involvement, and what appears to be a higher concentrations of families with young children. I believe that repurposing Cypress would lead to adverse results for neighborhoods and lead to less, not more, community engagement and parental action with the school, interaction with the school and the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 46. Speaker 47 did not check in, so that concludes our citizen comments portion of the agenda. So that concludes our citizen comment portion of the agenda. Thank you, citizens, for coming out and sharing. Next, we're gonna move over to Item 5A, which is Discussion of the Federal Fund Overview and our Public Hearing.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gearing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. For the community watching, I'm Paige Collier, Assistant Superintendent for Special Programs and Services in State and Federal Programs. I am joined by my colleagues Shannon Jack, Director of State and Federal Programs, Tina Dozier, Director of Global Languages and Cultures, and Jamie Everett, Director of Career and Technical Education. We are here to present a public overview of our federal funds, which includes the required annual review of expenditures for the 24-25 school year. In addition to fulfilling this compliance requirement from the TEA and the United States Department of Education, we're excited to also take this opportunity to highlight the impact of these funds by sharing photos and stories that celebrate the meaningful work happening across our district. This presentation also serves as a forum for public comment, ensuring transparency and community engagement in how federal resources are utilized to support our students and our schools. All right. The Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA, includes Title 1, Title 2, 3, and 4, and this slide shows the final amounts, including carryover for the 24-25 school year. Each funding stream supports specific programs aimed at improving student outcomes and ensuring educational success. Title 1 is the largest portion of our ESSA funding, and the goal is to ensure that all children meet challenging state academic standards with a focus on closing achievement gaps. Title 2's purpose is to increase the academic achievement of students by improving teacher and principal quality. And the purpose of Title 3 is to support our emergent bilingual students in becoming proficient in English and meeting state academic standards. Title 4's purpose is to improve student academic achievement by increasing the capacity of schools to provide all students with a well-rounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, safe and healthy schools, and improve the use of technology and instruction. These ESSA funds are critical in supporting access to instructional quality and student well-being. This slide outlines our federal funding allocations under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act for the 24-25 school year. These funds are critical in ensuring that students with disabilities receive the services and support necessary to access a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. IDEA BIA, IDEA B, is the primary federal funding source for serving students with disabilities ages 3 to 21. These funds support our special education staffing, our related services, instructional materials, professional learning, and other resources essential for meeting the individualized needs outlined in each student's IEP. This funding helps us ensure compliance with federal mandates while maintaining high-quality programs and services for eligible students. IDEA Preschool, this allocation supports early childhood special education services for children ages 3 through 5. It helps fund developmentally appropriate services and supports to address early learning needs and foster school readiness for our youngest learners with disabilities. IDEA, funding plays a crucial role in providing access to education for students with disabilities, and these resources allow us to offer individualized support, invest in specialized staff and training, and create learning environments that empower every student to reach their full potential. And this slide reflects our Perkins Five Formula Grant. These funds support our CTE programs, which prepare students for high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand careers. The grant is used to enhance program quality, update equipment and technology, provide professional learning, and expand student access to industry-aligned pathways. Perkins Five Funding is instrumental in strengthening our CTA offerings and ensuring students graduate with the skills and certifications needed for success in both college and workforce.
The district strategic process for planning and utilizing federal funds includes the plan. Stakeholder input was gathered through multiple channels, including the District-wide Education Improvement Council, ensuring broad community engagement. A comprehensive needs assessment was conducted to identify priorities, which informed how funds would be allocated. Data from various sources was collected to support the funding application and guide planning decisions. The district received initial planning amounts, enabling us to draft and submit the federal funding application. Once approved, funds were spent on activities aligned with identified needs. After receiving final amounts, we continue to collect data to evaluate the effectiveness of how the funds were used, ensuring accountability and continuous improvement. Title 1 funds support increased student achievement by enhancing academic programs for educationally disadvantaged students, supporting campus intervention staff, and promoting- Meaningful parent and family engagement, sorry. Parent-family engagement supported through the Parent as Teachers Program, also known as PAT, and campus-specific events. Student supports include essential materials for students qualifying under McKinney-Vento or foster care, and staffing for targeted academic and behavioral interventions. Title 2 funds are used to improve educator quality and effectiveness, increasing the number of highly effective teachers. These efforts aim to boost student achievement and ensure all students have greater access to effective educators. Professional learning is supported through PLC Live and after-school sessions, curriculum specialists, and programs like Reading by Design, Kagan, and Principal Learning to strengthen instructional practices and leadership. Recruitment and retention efforts include the Radius Virtual Platform, new teacher support, and initiatives such as Capturing Kids' Hearts and Learning Leaders.
Hi, good evening. Title 3 funds support our emergent bilingual, all of our emergent bilingual efforts for supplemental activities, professional development, and parent engagement. Title 3 funds serve to develop and enhance capacity to provide these educational and effective instructional programs, as well as assisting emergent bilingual students in meeting both academic standards and developing high levels of academic achievement in English, and for our dual-language students, also developing high academic language proficiency in Spanish. Some of the photos that you see here highlight some of those activities that our students have the opportunity to engage in, in experiential learning. There was an opportunity this year with a collaboration with the Texas Land Grant Office, where students engaged with staff in development and creation of maps, and then it was followed by an opportunity out on the Capitol grounds to, for students to research the monuments surrounding the Texas Capitol. You'll see also in the bottom right-hand corner our middle school Texas History students getting hands-on learning at the Texas, or at the Bob Bullock Museum. And on the bottom left-hand corner, you see our multilingual students, from very young students in the program through eighth grade, who facilitated a panel with community members, parents, and instructional staff, talking about their multilingual journey and how that has enhanced their academic journey here in Leander ISD. Additionally, these funds serve to support professional learning opportunities. These professional learning opportunities range from regional opportunities within our service center, to statewide conferences, to national conferences, and to conferences that we host here in Leander ISD. I had the opportunity to share last fall that one of those opportunities was the Texas Association of Bilingual Educators Conference, where Leander was selected to be a host site. Two of our campuses host sites for educational leaders around Texas, seeking to engage in best practices for emergent bilingual learners EC through 12. Our fabulous students are highlighted in the picture on the, the second one on the bottom. They participated in the state conference this year as performers for one of our enrichment Bilefoclórico groups of students from elementary schools in Leander. And along with engaging in and accessing this learning at the state, regional, and national level, frequently, our staff members, teachers, campus leadership, and district leadership present at these conferences as well to share in the expertise. This past year, I really wanted to make sure we highlighted the collaboration that stemmed from a proposal from high school students at Vista Ridge from their Spanish Honor Society Club. They, the students presented a proposal to engage with and work with our youngest multilingual learners. This came to fruition in visits to two of our dual-language campuses where, campuses where, I think they were sophomores through seniors who were engaging in a, they were supporting their science modules and, as well served as an authentic audience for their, their portfolio presentation practices. But it also ended up being a very reciprocal exchange of language between our Spanish learners at high school and our learners who are in our dual-language programs EC through 5. Those students are highlighted in that bottom-left-hand picture. I spoke about the students having had the opportunity to visit with high schoolers as an authentic audience for their portfolio presentations. These two photos on the right upper and right lower show our students from Baghdad Elementary who presented just recently in the last month their educational portfolios that outlined their academic achievements, but additionally, for these students, many of the students who participated were part of the dual-language program. In their portfolio presentations, they demonstrated a third language or interest in a third language or a fourth language, which resulted in their earning their badge of biliteracy for Baghdad Elementary. This was a first year for that opportunity, and we are excited to see this grow district-wide for our students in our multilingual programs. So these initiatives demonstrate our commitment to strengthening the academic achievement, but as well as the academic achievement demonstrating our commitment to the linguistic development of all of our students EC through 12.
Title 4 funds support a well-rounded education and promote safe and healthy learning environments, with at least 20% allocated in each area, could be more, but no less. The remaining funds are used to enhance the effective technology to improve student academic achievement. Funds provided additional safety equipment for each high school in the form of evacu-track chairs and professional online learning support for students and staff across the district. A campus also received a direct student behavior support specialist to promote a positive learning environment. For special education, our preschool funds support the provision of a free, appropriate public education for eligible students with disabilities, and they are used to deliver and enhance direct student services. The majority of our special education funds are allocated to personnel. It's approximately 85 positions that are paid through these funds. This is essential to providing direct services and support to students with disabilities. Residential care services are provided for our students with intensive needs, along with contracted services such as speech, occupational, and physical therapy. Funds also support instructional and evaluation materials, as well as professional learning to keep staff up to date with our evidence-based practices. These investments ensure we meet student needs and comply with our federal requirements and deliver high-quality special education services. Leander ISD Career and Technical Education Programs are strategically designed to equip students with a robust blend of academic, technical, and employability skills that are needed to successfully and competitively enter the workforce or pursue further education in specialized fields, no matter what that post-secondary path of choice is for all of our students. Perkins Five is a supplemental grant to our state CTE-weighted funding to support our CTE programs and ensure that all CTE programs that we offer here in Leander ISD are supported to meet the standards of sufficient size, scope, and quality. To celebrate and highlight the quality of our programs in CTE in Leander ISD, I am thrilled to share with you tonight that we have recently been awarded a CTE District of Distinction for the 24-25 school year by the Career and Technical Association of Texas. I am honored to say that we are one of 38 school districts in the state of Texas to receive this honor in its first inaugural year of being awarded. As you can see by the data on the slide, this shows a glimpse into our programming and student impact that our CTE programs offer here, and highlights the immense commitment, the immense commitment, dedication, and hard work of our staff, our teachers, and our students. As you can imagine, running programs like Automotive Technology, shown at Rouse High School in the upper program, or upper picture, and the Wolfcast Audio-Video Broadcast Program, shown in the bottom lower picture, Cedar Park High School, as well as the other audio-video programs I saw featured here tonight from our students at Rouse High School, takes an immense amount of dedicated staff to support all program components, as well as an immense amount of industry-aligned equipment to provide students the experiences in these programs. Our Perkins funding that, that we use here in Leander ISD, is dedicated to two full-time salaries committed to supporting our comprehensive CTE programs and work-based learning initiatives. Additionally, to the full salary positions, the Perkins Grants supports building teacher leadership capacity for all 40 of our high school programs of study, providing stipends for 40 lead positions for district collaborations across our district PLCs. All remaining grant funds are put directly into our classrooms to provide industry-aligned equipment for student experiences. Perkins Grant Regulations require that all funds and activities align with six specific uses. Our grant-funded staff salaries and stipends directly support these essential areas. The next few slides will highlight the six essential use areas of the Perkins Funds. The picture that you see on the current slide shows the state, the Texas State Work-Based Learning Continuum. I'm proud to say that in Leander ISD, we offer student experiences and teacher experiences at all levels and in all categories of the Work-Based Learning Continuum. All of these experiences ultimately build and develop the skills necessary for our students to pursue careers in high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand occupations. Another use of Perkins Funds is to ensure that districts are appropriately implementing programs of study. The program I'd like to highlight tonight as an example of the two uses on the slide is our interior design program. The first image on the left, you will see a snapshot of one of our district program of study flyers that we strategically designed to communicate and promote our student experiences and programs to our students, families, staff, and all of our outreach for our partners. That we also, it shows different components of programming for our student experiences, including the integration of academic skills. Interior design is a great example of the integration of academic skills, as it actually has TEAC-based prerequisites of English and Math coursework before students can start interior design, the first level of coursework in the interior design program of study. The application of those academic skills blended with the technical- The application of those academic skills blended with the technical and employability skills that they earn and gain through our program experiences ultimately prepares students to apply those in real-world scenarios. That, the example tonight that I'd like to highlight is shown in the picture on the right, are two interior design students at the recent groundbreaking for the new LISD Early Childhood Center. Three of our interior design programs were actively engaged and participated in the designing of the Early Childhood Center, and the students shown here in the picture are holding a design board that show the design components that students are contributing to the facility that will be brought to life in Leander ISD. And none of this could be possible without our amazing CTE teachers. Our CTE staff offers year-round professional learning opportunities to all of our CTE teachers to meet, to stay aligned and meet both educational and industry standards. This is done through monthly cross-district PLC meetings, industry and post-secondary immersion experiences, as shown in the top picture. This is a cross-content collaboration, actually, of our fashion design, interior design, entrepreneurship and business management teachers spending the day at UT Austin with, at the Kendra Scott Center amongst other departments. That was a celebration this year on the February 17th Professional Learning Day. We call it our industry site, our Industry Immersion Day for CTE teachers. And instead of keeping teachers here within Leander ISD system for professional learning, every middle school and high school teacher was placed out in industry for an immersion experience, whether it be an industry partner or post-secondary institution. In addition, we offer multiple opportunities throughout the school year for our teachers to engage with industry partners, post-secondary partners, and general community members for input to make sure that we are receiving input on continual program evaluations and involving them in data for continuous improvement program decisions.
Okay, so as you can see, our federal funds are very important to us, and we're very strategic about how we use them. And now it's an opportunity for our public hearing. Madam President.
Yes, this is where we would have the public hearing, and public could sign up for citizen comments related to this public hearing. We did not have anyone sign up for comment here, so we can move to our own discussion at this point.
I have concerns, but I think Pete is the right person, and I was going to wait for the Legislative Committee. I mean, we all hear what's happening in the news and federal funds and the uncertainty. And it scares me because it's, we just keep getting hit left and right. And so, this presentation was great, thank y'all, but my questions will be directed toward Pete in Legislative Update, because he's going to have the nitty-gritty, the numbers we need to talk about.
I'm curious for, help me just get here, because we've been talking about state funding quite a bit. For the federal fund dollars that we see here, some of these are like ones that are applied, that are given to us, because that's our allotment, that's the amount the federal funds give us. There's other ones, am I correct, some of these, did we apply for any of these? Are these all the ones, I just want to make sure I understand what this presentation, is this all the ones that were just given to us, or did we have to apply for some of these?
The funds for Title S grant was applied for, we apply for them every year. CTE is an application process as well. They're not competitive grants, these are formula grants, and so, we apply for them every year.
Okay. And are we seeing from your spot, just kind of your presentation, is there a trend up, down, or, I know the answer, but go ahead, and let's go ahead and make it clear.
We're trending about the same, because it's based on so many factors across a lot of different areas that we hit. And so, our population is staying about the same, as far as poverty and other things. And so, it's, the trend is staying the same. We, I'm not seeing an up or down, about the same.
I, I can add that for Title III, we have estimated planning amounts going forward. And so, where our population is seeing a trend up, we're thankfully, we are seeing a trend up with the estimated planning amounts specifically around immigrant funds under Title III, and then slightly above as well for our Title III ELA funds.
One last question, I just, you know, compliance with this piece is huge. We know one mistake can cost millions of dollars. Are y'all getting what you need? Because again, I just think about the CTE, that is ever-changing, especially right now in the current federal government, as far as what you have to apply. Are y'all getting the resources you need to ensure that you feel comfortable to be able to report properly, getting the information updated? Because y'all kind of have an important job right now.
As far as compliance goes, yes, the, it's essential that we're working across departments to do that, and that has been an effective use of all of our time this year, especially this semester, to ensure compliance moving forward. So yes.
Kind of along those lines of compliance, we did this past school year, there was that efficiency audit that was done. And so, are you aware of the results and kind of looking into that to see how, I mean, the, there is a draft report that they are working on, so I don't know if they've brought it to you yet, to start working on that, or that's something for?
So they have not seen the internal audit report yet?
Okay.
I had a question about the CTE funds. What percent of the CTE, CTE programming is covered by the Perkins Five grant? Is that 100% or?
It's actually a very small percentage in our overall total. So like we showed it, when you look at just under our total allotment coming in this year is just under 300,000. It does cover two, you know, it's largely taken up by the salaries and the stipends. We do get a sizable amount of needed equipment in the year, but we are largely and predominantly funded by our state CTE-weighted funding or additional district funds given to our program. So it is a small portion.
Okay. Is, is the proportion the same for high school as it is for elementary or middle? Or does federal contribute more to high school programming than it does middle school or something like that?
I can speak specifically to the Perkins grant. It is specifically for secondary and post-secondary programs. We don't actually reach direct use of Perkins Funds to the elementary level, you know.
And, and we can work with you on the rest of the CTE funding that's outside of the realm of this conversation, but we'll certainly help you with how, how that all works.
I'm happy to meet anytime.
Great questions, thank you. Board members, any other questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you, we appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 7, Consent. Board members, do you have any motions related to consent agenda items?
I move the board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second? Anna made a motion, Trish, second. All those in favor? Seven in favor, consent agenda passes. Next, we're going to move over to Item 8, which is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This is our favorite part of the year. At the end of the year, we celebrate what for us is the culmination and our product, our ultimate product, which is our graduates. And so, we're driven through the year by the graduate profile in everything that we do, so that we are creating constantly critical and creative thinkers, skilled communicators and collaborators, compassionate community contributors, and adaptable and reflective individuals. And we've had this wonderful ability over the last month or so to celebrate the graduates through our system. So we started with a self-18-plus transition services graduation. This happened at Vista Ridge High School. Next year, we hope, of course, to have this in their own new facility. And so, we're super excited about, this is such a great way for us to start our graduation season, to celebrate these students, these adults really, who are now graduating out into the real world with the skills that they need to be as independent as they're capable of. This was followed by New Hope High School graduation, which involves students from across all of our high schools, and so, they can choose to graduate from New Hope or from their regular high school, and they do wear their graduation gowns from their home high school. Project Search is a program that we have in partnership with Ascension Seaton North, and we graduated six students out of this program. This is a fantastic partnership that actually has our students interning in the hospital, and many of them, in fact, 100% of them this year are graduating out into paid work positions. Of course, our six comprehensive high school graduations held at the HEB Center here in Cedar Park, so you can see all six of our principals celebrating with their students. And we just want to express our congratulations to the class of 2025. We have a lot of hope for these students as they go forward. I will tell you that it is unusual for all board members to attend all of our graduation ceremonies, and you took the time and the dedication to do this. This means an incredible amount for, for our students, but also for our faculty and staff. It shows us that you're as committed to the graduate profile as the rest of us are. And we did inaugurate our new board member into how we do business. But I did include the celebrations. It's fantastic for our students to experience the joy that they get when they interact with our board members as they cross the stage. And we have a little selfie fun as well along the way. So we graduated 3,407 graduates, you can see the number breakdowns here of those in all of the ones that we experienced. That's not all that we graduate, though. We also graduated a class of Leadership Leander ISD, and these are now ambassadors officially for the district. They have spent the whole year learning more about the district and digging deep into the, the major business systems of the district. These are community members who are interested in being ambassadors and voices for the district as we go forward, and we want to congratulate them and thank them for taking the time to learn more about Leander ISD. And I just want to point out that our graduate profile starts very early, and this is just one example of something that's happening across the district, as our students at Farbien Elementary delivered handmade flowers to residents of one of their community homes. Another tradition that we have in the district is for our high school seniors to go back to the elementary schools that they attended if they've been in Leander ISD all this time. And I've put this under empowered staff, because this is the impact that our staff has on our students. They remember, as seniors, the path that was set for them from very early in their experience in elementary schools. And it's not only the girls who cry, by the way. My apologies to this student. All right, and we now want to celebrate 10 years of service for trustee Trish Bodie, elected to the board in 2015. And we just want to thank you for 10 years of dedicated service to the district. During your service, you might have won the HEB Excellence in Education Large District of the Year Award, along with your fellow board members at that time. I'll point out that this was done with community support, because that grant application was written by a parent in our district, but also with the staff support of the superintendent at the time, Brett Champion, and also Veronica Sofar, and of course, the board members, very young-looking board members, I must say. And I think I see Paul Johnson in the back there as well. And Gloria was there, not as a board member, but as the leaf board president, I think, at the time. I know this exact moment, because I was super mad that night, because I didn't win here. I was the superintendent dripping springs at the time, and we came second, I didn't like that. So thank you, Trish, for your service, your dedication to our students, really appreciate With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Garing, for the superintendent report. Next, we're going to move over to Agenda Item 9A1, which is our Legislative Committee
So, it's been busy. June 2nd will be signee die, that's the way you say, that there aren't any other meetings of the 89th regular session, and we certainly hope that does conclude all the legislative activities. They are getting a little grumpy and interesting, and so, would like to go ahead and, and see what comes out of this. We said this earlier as a board, that we have to watch the totality, because certain bills come out, and you're like, yay! And then you're like, oh, wait, but there's this word in here, oh, there's this amendment in this other part, and how does this impact? And so, I understand that there are some bills that are out there, and I'm like, look, look at all the awesome things it does. I think that's important, I think we can honor that, I think we can be thankful, but I also think, as a district and as a board, we're also going to be realistic and look at what's behind that curtain, though, because that helps us figure out, we have tons of discussions that have to happen because of this. And I would like to thank, of course, the whole board for the support that y'all have given, but specifically, I would just say Legislative Committee, who've been on those early, early morning Monday calls, and it's not just the Monday calls, but it's the meetings, it's the reaching out to people. And, I mean, Anna spearheaded two, at least I know of two individual events up at the Capitol to help talk about special education, safety and security, these were our legislative priorities. So thank you very much, Anna, for Legislative Committee. But there's some interesting things coming up, and rather than hear me talk about it, we thought we would ask our finance expert who can give us more of an idea of what to expect with the totality of what's happening.
I wish this board meeting was last night. I would have given you a very different presentation on funding. So we've built our budget, I'll just give you a kind of a heads-up. You may already be aware of some of the issues we have, but, so, the legislature this year, you know, passed, basically, committee substitute House Bill 2, and in that, there was a lot of increases that we'll hear about. For Leander, in theory, we had a 1.1 million increase in the safety allotment, a 1.7 million increase in the compensation for non-teachers, non-admin, a 1.7 million sped, increase in sped for evaluation reimbursement, four and a half million for other costs, utilities, TRS, et cetera. And then, the, the teacher raise, which, you know, 12 to 13, 12 to 13 million for us. And that was what we built our budget on, that's what we've gone through this whole time, all this process. There was a couple of talk about a whole harmless piece, and then, we were assured that there was a whole harmless amendment going in that would, would hold Leander whole. Found out this morning that that amendment did not apply the way it worked, so we're one of about 20 school districts in the state of Texas that we went from getting approximately $23 million, 13 of that would have been teacher salaries, and about maybe 22 million, and 9 million of it would have been above that, with our goal of hopefully using about 4 million of that for some salaries for non-teaching staff, and then 5 million to help buy down our deficit. Found out this morning that the way that calculation worked, that that is, instead of us being about 9 million over, or having more than 9 million above, I'm actually, we're actually about 1.6, 2 million below the cost, the monies we're getting to even implement the teacher raise. We got a whole harmless piece did not go through that we got, and so, we were, $10 million is what we, we lost in funding on that. I have to be careful saying "lost," but we were reduced 10 million, and so, that was our, not, and that was just found out this morning. So that puts, that changes our-
Can you help for the public watching, what hold harmless, like, just a little more information about what that means? Because I think most people who don't live this, they're like, tell me more, what that means.
Yeah, so going back in time, I'll, I'll give you the real school finance, in a perfect world, the legislature would just suggest the basic allotment. Everything we have is driven off the basic allotment. Every now and then, they decide to do something not with the basic allotment, and they put something in place, and it lasts a year, or two, or 20, or 30 years. And they have hold harmless provisions to, put in place for that, that says, hey, if the change comes, we're going to keep holding the district harmless, they're going to keep the same amount of revenue as they had in, in years prior. So about a year or two ago, with Senate Bill 2, we received, they reduced our MNO rate a significant portion, I think we talked about three or four cents, we did of our budget preparation, it being 10 cents. So whenever the state legislature, when they buy down the MNO tax rate, or they compress our tax rate, they have to pay for that. I mean, they, they pay for the state funding increases, right? We don't receive an increase in our funding, just we receive less- We don't receive an increase in our funding, because we receive less local, state goes up, but it's the same total. So we received a whole harmless provision with that increase in the over 65, right, all at the same time. And so that was, at that time, it was about $3 million. Well, that has since grown. And then when House Bill 2 was passed, the legislature wanted to basically not continue on with, there's multiple whole harmoses, this is the one that affects us. So they wanted to continue not to do the whole harmless piece and put everybody on formula funding. So for districts like ourselves, I believe Round Rock's in the same boat. I believe Deer Park, Bernie, Kamau, or some of the top, well, I don't know off the top of my head, are districts that relied on that whole harmless piece to get them, to make them whole or keep them whole. And when this was not included, hence, there was $10 million of whole harmless built into our state templates, and then that thus went away. So our revenue went down, $10 million. So it's $10 million less than what we had been building this whole budget on, all the runs on, all the things. So it's, it's not been a fun day, but this is kind of what we're faced with. And we're not the only district. Now, there is a small chance. You know, the Commissioner of Education does have the authority to handle any unintended consequences of legislation. And that's kind of really, both finance bills have passed, you know, they've concurred both houses, so it's a done deal. It's going to the governor's desk, there's nothing the governor can do to add to it or tweak to it. So that's really the only thing we have in place, unless, you know, somebody else puts pressure on somewhere. But that's really the only thing that we have, as far as we know, to seek clarification or to seek the commissioner to do that. And I don't, I mean, I hope he does it. I'm not going to, I can't make a prediction. So all I can do is, we can request it. And again, we're not the only districts, so at least we, we do have some other districts that are in the same boat. There's a little bit of power in numbers at times, so.
Is it beneficial for our community to contact, send emails to the commissioner and request? Or is it kind of, it's done?
I don't think it's even, the request is probably going to the commissioner tonight or tomorrow. So I don't think the commissioner is absolutely aware of the request yet. I think at this stage of the game, it's, you know, your representatives, your local representatives, you know, because I think their intent was to give the districts, you know, the increase in the funding for the teacher raises and the allotment pieces. Most of them probably don't realize the whole harmless piece, and it's not really publicly out there yet, except for those 15, 20 districts that it affects. So it's on our radar, but most of the representatives probably at this stage of the game don't know if their districts are affected yet. Or if they do, it's fairly recent. I wish it was better news. It's very frustrating. We're at a tight budget as it was. This isn't helping any, so.
I have a question on special education.
Yes, ma'am.
And please correct my numbers if I'm remembering them wrong. We pay over $30 million a year.
39.
$39 million. We pay over what we receive in funding for special education students.
Ballpark numbers, we receive about 42, 43, 44 million in special allotment. You got to spend 55 percent, so about 28 million. We spend, I think, 64, give or take, rough bottom numbers in my head. But the last time we calculated that out, we spent $39 million more than we're required to spend. So we receive more, but we're only required to spend 55 percent, but we spend 39 million more than what we're required to spend.
And the special education is one of the fastest increasing populations that we have, especially with, was it last session with the mandate that now all dyslexia students are included in special education? So that increased evaluations and everything drastically.
Yeah, our special education population is growing about 6 percent a year.
And the amount we were given was $1.7 million.
What the legislature ended up doing was they reduced, they reimbursed $1,000 for evaluations. And we do about 1,700 evaluations based on our calculation. And then in the second year of the biennium, in 2026, 2027, they're supposed to come in, it's under the, the commissioners has the authority or the rules, rulemaking authority to determine to increase the weights, change the weights. They've had a study on the table, six or eight years now. I mean, they've known they've been underfunding special ed statewide, about 1.8 billion, probably at 2 billion now. This is nothing new, but we do anticipate that that will increase our funding in 26, 27, but that's not until the second year of the biennium. And we don't really have a true indication of how much that will increase.
Okay, thank you.
I think also, just to piggyback what you were saying, Francesca, in regards to evaluations, $1,000 is bare minimum, most charge 3, 5,000, if not more. My kids cost 7,000. But because of vouchers, those students who utilize vouchers or go to private schools can utilize those evaluation services, meaning they will never step foot into our building, but we are required to give them an evaluation, but that money doesn't come to us. I mean, we get reimbursed, is it 2,000 for a private school? Did they pass that, or is it still 1,000? Okay. It used to be 2,000. Yeah, the house version had 2,000.
Yeah, I think the house had 2, and 3,000 at a time. And then by the time it went to the Senate, it was stripped back down to 1,000.
But I think I reached out to our special education director, Paige, because some districts around here are seeing an increase in individuals utilizing those evaluations that go to private school. And so I know, for instance, like, I think us this year, we saw it double. And so that's something this board needs to keep an eye on. It went from 25 evaluations up to 57, and these students are private school students. So we have an obligation to still give them an evaluation. And so I do want to make sure that we keep an eye on that because resources are being, you know, used by students not attending Leander ISD schools.
And I believe we have 45 days to conduct evaluation.
Oh, yeah, we have 45 days. You have 10, I mean, we have all these regulations, and those parents can still get us and take us to court and still have the same due process rights. And we will be on the hook for all of that, even though they don't attend our schools.
So just to clarify, even though our student population hasn't grown in the past year, it's just been relatively flat. But the special edu, the student needing special education services grows about 6 percent a year. And so that's really where that extra cost need is coming from those, it's one of those areas in special education services.
But it's, you know, as Francesca mentioned earlier, our trustee Romans, I'm sorry, you know, made the comment that, now I start laughing, I can't remember what I was going to say, but, you know, she made the comment that dyslexia is now one of those numbers. So I'm looking at a five-year trend, it's up 6 percent a year, but a big portion of that is when the federal government and the state ruled that dyslexia now falls under special ed. And then, you know, if you go back even farther than that, you know, back to the other federal issue with the Houston ISD with the 8.5 percent, that has changed, and our special, more kids were tested. And so those numbers have continued, but in the last five years where it's 6 percent a year.
So those pretty much fall under unfunded or underfunded mandates?
Underfunded, I would say underfunded mandate. It is, there is a special ed allotment, but it's been underfunded since its inception. And that was in like 19, late 80s, or early 90s, sorry.
And I just want to make sure we note, we're not over identifying students. We had a TEA audit, and we came out clean, everything was great. But what we are doing here is we're providing resources to parents so that information to get at that evaluation is not having to go through five, you know, webpages. And we're not gatekeeping on getting children services. If anything, we're giving parents the resources and telling them, hey, here's a letter you've got to send to, you know, your principal. This is how you get your services for your child. And I mean, it's just, although our percentages go up, we're doing what's best for kids.
Yeah, if a student qualifies for those services, we ensure they receive those services.
And I just want to clarify to Anna's point. When a family using vouchers and not setting foot in Leander ISD ever wants an evaluation, that's not optional for us. We have to do that evaluation for as many kids show up, even if they will never attend Leander ISD. That is, I just want to clarify, that is not an optional evaluation.
Yeah, district is mandated to provide the service.
And the amount we will get for the students is $1,000, and the cost for us to do that evaluation is approximately?
Yeah, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7,000, just depending on the severity.
On the student, and then if a parent decides to get in an independent evaluation because they disagree with that evaluation, that's even more funding that we're going to have to be on the hook for. And then one more thing off that what Francesca was going off of. They come and get the evaluation, they don't come to, you know, LASD school, and their voucher of private school or charter refuses, for whatever reason, to give those services. We have an obligation to give those services. So Mr. Lou can be going to Mr. Private School over here. They're not going to provide speech or OT, but this neighborhood local school does. And guess what? They have to have that complete services here at this local school. We have to pay for it, but we're not getting that $88.
So my comment to that is, Pete, if they, parents who aren't planning on having their kids go there, do they not have to pay their taxes in that area? And I think the answer is-
They still pay property taxes.
They still pay property taxes. They're still a part of the community, so.
We just don't get the budget for it.
Right, so where's the disconnect? You know, I've gone down to the Capitol dozens and dozens and dozens of times. And we're 30 minutes away, and the impression I get from, they aren't always wanting to help us for some reason. And I would love to have more conversations to why that is. Because you're right, if we're providing a service and they're taking it somewhere else, but they have to be fair for everyone across the state, right? We have 30-plus million people, so, you know, how do you be fair? And how do we not be someone they don't want to help? I don't understand that. I mean, there's a bigger problem here than just a, they won't fund this, or they won't fund that. There's, there's-
There's a bigger agenda at play.
And I wish we could get to it.
Hey, Paul, next time I go down to the Capitol, I'd love for you to go because what I have found to be the most impactful way to get their attention is through personal stories. I mean, I'm a parent first, and when I start talking about my struggles and what we went through, that's what gets them to hear. So I'm not always down there like Trish, but I would love for you to go with me with a bunch of special education parents, just so you can hear their story and you can see them.
I'd love to do it, especially if Trish is down there. We can coordinate without being a quorum.
Perfect.
Yeah, one thing I'll just add, I think a comment was made earlier, and public comment about students transferring out. But if you look at our data, you know, pull the transfer report, it's going to show 3,500 students that reside in Leander ISD that attend charters, not private, but charter schools. Of that 3,500, I did a public information request from TA. 2,880 of those students never attended Leander ISD. Means they moved here from out of state or moved here, but they never enrolled in Leander, they just went straight to a charter school. So we have a lot of new move-ins, a lot of people coming, they're not giving our school district a chance. And basically, in my opinion, it's, you know, they're coming from another state where maybe the public education there wasn't the level ours is, or maybe they weren't at the level of Leander ISD is. And so it's an opportunity for us to show all the services that we do offer and the wide breadth of programming that we offer for all of our students, K through 12, and to give them an opportunity to see this, you know, we offer more than any school in our area, private or charter or public. So I think we offer a great service and product. I mean, I know I look at it as a business from the CFO side, you know, it's a service organization, and that's, you know, we provide great things for all of our students. And I think it's an opportunity for us to let that be known even more so. We've heard it tonight about certain schools. You know, the people love their schools, they love their community schools, and it's an opportunity for us to, this isn't just a school thing, this is our district, this is what we do at all of our campuses. So I think it's an opportunity to let our legislators know that as well. You know, and say, we're going to serve every student that walks in the door. And apparently, we're going to serve every student that walks into a, maybe a private school number two that needs special services. But, you know, we're going to do that, but, you know, at least reimburse this for the true cost. Not a one-third or less, so. It's frustrating because that's dollars that could be going, or should be going, you know, to our students that attend Leander ISD.
Well, Pete, we'll be talking to you, I think, more when we get to the discussion on budget. And this will continue to be an ongoing conversation when we're sitting here talking about, how do we make these really hard decisions? And we're looking at, you know, how does that swing 5 million, 4 million, 3 million? And all of a sudden, with a pen and one clause, 10 million hit like that. I mean, these numbers, they're, I don't know, they're hard to deal with right now. But, so, let's put this in perspective. It was, these were some big bills that passed. We will see big impacts with those bills. And so we'll continue to see what happens as it moves, final through the signing, what happens in all of that, rulemaking. Like you said, could there be something else? But I want to point out that out of 8,700 bills that were filed, 917 have passed so far. We have a few more that get to pass, well, most likely pass before signee die. What does that mean? That means that there are other bills that impact public education that are moving as well. And so this is not a complete comprehensive update. This was just a small snapshot because we're having some really strong discussions tonight. And so this kind of gives us a piece of the puzzle. I have a question to ask you, though. I think lawmakers are under their impression of where school districts should spend money and evidently not in other places. I'm not sure how they're putting all the pieces together, but they're being very directive on some pieces. And yet, when they're on the floor, when they're doing press conferences, or when there's X post, although I really don't look at my social media much, like, once a month now. But when you see those things, it seems to be like, hey, there is more money in public education than ever before. There is now more, there's this special teacher pay. How does that work? How, if I was a teacher, I heard, yay, I got more money, but my school's saying they're not getting more money. How would you help our community kind of reconcile this?
Yeah, it's a great question. You've got, so for a teacher, you know, when you ask, you ask me, how many teachers do we have in our district? I'm going to say between 3,000 and 3,100. But not every teacher in that category qualifies as a teacher of record. So when this raise come out for the 2,500 for the teachers that are, you know, years three and four, and then 5, 5,500 if you're a year five plus, that's only if you're a teacher of record. So it doesn't include dyslexia teachers, it's not going to include GT teachers, it's not going to include our counselors, our librarians, our nurses. These are, so.
But Pete, they said they gave us money for auxiliary staff as well, full-time or part-time, right?
They did give us some. They did give us, I think, I think we got about 1.7 million for that. You know, it's not going to go very far. And it's not going to be near be able to match the 2,500 or the 5,500, or 5,000 that the five-plus-year teachers got or get. They did not put it in the basic allotment. They directed it strictly to a specific group. And I mean, as, my wife is a teacher, so obviously, I think my wife's been underpaid for years, and, you know, and $5,000, I think she'll still be underpaid, but she loves what she does, and it's a passion of hers. And I know all of our teachers are the same way. So it's long overdue. You know, but it's, it's, they're just touching a small corner on a bigger problem. So you hear staff, you know, you hear communities say, or you hear legislators say, we've increased public ed. You know, you go back to last session, we added $18 billion to public ed, right? And, yeah, they did technically, but what they really did was, they didn't increase it in the classroom, or increase it in the schools. 12 billion of that was they bought down the M&amp;O rate. Or I might say this backwards, I think 5.9 billion of that was they increased the homestead exemption. So yes, state funding went up, 18 billion, give or take. But my local, statewide, the local funding went down 18 billion. So we're still at the same per people amount. They just get to walk around and say they added 18 billion to public education. And technically, it's true, but it's not the full story. So, you know, the disposition is it's true, the design is to make you think that we all got additional funding and we didn't. Come to this session, same thing. Now, we have, we get funds, but it's earmarked for specific areas. Most districts, or a vast majority of districts in the state of Texas are having deficit budgets. And we got $13 million, and I got $13 million in expenses. You know, I have to take this money and give it to teacher raises. Long overdue, glad to do it, but it does nothing for our deficit budget situation, does nothing for the other 50, 60 percent of our staff that aren't teachers of record. We got a little bit for that, but it's not going to be, you know, near enough. We haven't gotten, you know, they increased, they'll say they increased the basic allotment by $55, which they did. They also decreased the gold penny yield by $6, which nullifies that. All they did is take 2.8 million over here for Leander SD and move it over here to the 55 on the basic allotment. So it went down 2.8 and went up 2.8. I'm still at the exact same level. And, but they get to walk around and say they increased the basic allotment by $55. So it's true, but there's always more to the story.
Thank you for staying engaged. I know you sent letters. I know Bruce sent letters. I know Anna, Gloria. I know I was talking to our Texas trustees too. I know some of these trustees that were getting impacted by this. And we were all reaching out, and it seemed like there was a recognition, a communication. I think really, many of those school districts that were impacted by this thought that language would address it. When I listened to it laid out on the floor, they said it was going to address the whole harmless, so.
And what they did is, the way they read the whole harmless was, for Leander ISD, if we were going to get $13 million was what the expense was on the teacher raise, they just made sure I got, we got the 13 million. They didn't, the whole harmless and the bigger picture. They didn't, the whole harmless and the bigger picture, so. And that's where us and nineteen others approximately, you know, or got, got damned or fell for the cracks. How do you want to call it, so?
You've mentioned the basic allotment a few times. And we're currently, Texas is towards the bottom in the country as far as per-student funding. And the basic allotment right now is sixty-one sixty. It has been that way since two thousand nineteen, correct?
That's correct. And it does go up fifty-five dollars this year in theory, but the gold penny yield goes down. So it's, it's, they'll say it's sixty, sixty-two oh five or sixty-two fifteen, but it gives you the same revenue.
And we needed, all over the state, districts needed over a thousand dollars to keep up with inflation?
I've heard anywhere from thirteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollars on the, the basic allotment, just to get us where, so the, the dollars now would go as far as they did in two thousand nineteen with the sixty-one sixty first one in place.
And the original House bill was three fifty or-
Three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five. Now, the final amount that they are sending to the governor is fifty-five dollars a student.
Fifty-five, and that's not an increase. Yeah, they, they took it from the gold penny yield and just moved it over here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, uh, you know, like I said, it's, it's tremendous that we are able to give raises to, to the, to the teachers that are so well-deserved and, and, and long overdue. But there are so many other things, uh, that districts needed, whether, I mean, there's obviously some grants. We've got some, but the, the big, or allotments. But, you know, the biggest piece really was the basic allotment. That's all of our special ed allotment, the career and tech allotment, the GT allotment. All of those allotments are, are, the, the, the basic allotment is a driver. So when you don't increase the basic allotment, none of those, those allotments are able to keep up and, and with the programs, uh, program needs that we have. There's not, there's not a whole lot of the same since two thousand nineteen. I mean, everything costs more, uh, and we're at the same per-people level between local and state funding. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it, it puts districts in a tough bind. I mean, I don't care how good of a CFO you are, I don't care how good of a board you have. I don't care how tight you are with your finances. You can't live off two thousand nineteen dollars six, seven years later and expect to have a, you know, and employees that are, are, are paid competitively. And, and, you know, and do some of the extra programs that you want to have, uh, offered in your community. I mean, it's, you know, there's a skeleton in that room over there where we had, where we had eight before, and I almost brought it with me. And as I say, we've, we've gone through, we're cutting fat. We've gone through muscle. Now it's bone. I mean, there's nothing left, you know. I mean, we are, we are cut our budget and revamped everything. And, 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 and we're in a, a situation where, you know, we're having to have some dire discussions. And it's, it's, no one likes it. It's no fun. But we, we've, you know, the, the state has, has, has done this to many districts, many conversations throughout the state on, 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 on campuses and, and how to get funds. And, and we're, we're no different. And, you know, so we have that on the agenda tonight. Talk about later. We've, you know, we've had some tough decisions, and it, it's, it's no fun. But, you know, we, we've, it's nothing on our own doing. It's, you know, it's, the state has given us money just where they wanted to, but again, not allowed us to, uh, you know, to, to increase the basic allotment where we can, we can, uh, have the monies to give these programs and to do some of these things. So it's, it's, it's tough, and it's, it's definitely not enviable, and it's not, it's, I wouldn't wish it on anybody, you know, because we all want to do our best for all of our students and have, keep the great things we have at LISD. And, and we're, we're having to make some tough decisions, and it's, it's frustrating.
Just a quick clarification. So the twenty-five hundred, five thousand, are those one-time payments or pay increases?
I believe those are pay increases for two years guaranteed. The monies will come in for the next two years. We know that.
And so after that, then we'll have to-
Whatever the next session brings, or whatever they decide to do.
Make, try and get it rolled, at least rolled into the basic allotment.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, um, Board, we're going to take a break, and we'll come back at eight forty. So please be back at eight forty PM.
Okay, we're back from break and we are ready to move into our next agenda item, which is 9B1, Discussion of Long Range Planning Framework Facility Optimization.
Good evening, madam president, members of the board, Dr. Gary. I am going to be joined by a couple of gentlemen, Dr. Casey O'Prye, Chief Human Resources Officer, and also Dr. Pete Poppy is going to join me as well as Chief Financial Officer. And the three of us are going to begin our conversation, long conversation tonight, but it's very important because we've reached a point in the Long Range Planning Framework in which we're going to have a conversation just around everything up to this point and where that has led these conversations and these discussions, just looking at it from a facility optimization standpoint. There's a lot of slides that are going to be repetition that you've seen before. I'm going to try to go through those pretty quick. Why, but it's important because it's context for those community members and others that may just be engaging for the first time. But an important piece of this is we're going to be sharing a lot of information, but no final decisions have been made at this time regarding the optimization of any specific campuses, even though we're going to have conversations around some scenarios and some pathways. What you're going to see tonight, none of it would be put in place until the 26-27 school year, so 25-26 is going to look very similar to this year and every door to our campuses will open. So we're planning out in front of this in order to have adequate time. And so tonight is going to be a very difficult conversation. We hear from our community and how difficult these conversations are to even comprehend from their point of view, from a parent point of view, but it's also very difficult from a board perspective and administration. And so we don't want to do any particular thing. Again, we want to engage and have a conversation with you, but we do want to leave here with some guidance and some direction on what those next steps will look like in this pathway, in this framework as we move forward. Now, our job here, looking at our facilities at more than just a building and a specific purpose, they were all built to serve students in some way and they still will serve this community in this district, but possibly in a different way. And we need to equip our buildings to serve future needs. This framework and this bridge concept, we are literally, our toes are on the edge of that bridge as we start to look at from what's happening today and what's going to happen tomorrow, we're on the edge. And tonight, hopefully, we'll be able to take our next steps on that pathway and on that bridge. This timeline, time has been updated as we've navigated this framework just because we want to make sure that we're giving adequate time and attention to these different steps in the process. We're here in May and obviously, we celebrated the end of the school year last week, but we're still going on with these conversations because they're very important. And so tonight, we're really talking about that facility optimization. We do still have open enrollment. Open enrollment is still a concept that we're going to discuss here administratively and aboard on what that policy could look like next month and June is when that is expected to come before you. So I wanted to remind everyone of this timeline that we're working through. Towards the end of this presentation, you're going to see another timeline, which are some next steps that could be involved with any decision that may be made, any direction. And at the core is our student experience that'll continue to be at core, no matter what decisions we make. And that student experience really drives a lot of how we look at this from our perspectives and our perceptions. We do know we have a problem. We do know we have an approach and that's what's been applied up to this point. And then that intention that will lead into our discussion tonight is just looking at our campuses. We have overutilization, we have underutilization. Underutilization is something new to this district and something that new that we're navigating and trying to come up with solutions. And so that's what we're going to talk about. The navigation, going from that intention to what considerations are you going to look at tonight? That's about adjusting course and being able to adapt to just the changes that even Dr. Poppy shared with you moments ago from a financial standpoint. And also looking ahead, trying to be proactive in addressing these challenges as early as possible because we know the future is going to change. And so now I'm going to discuss a decision framework and how we can have this discussion. But I also do want to acknowledge the hard steps that we may need to take. And I know this is going to be a long presentation and I know you have a lot of questions, but this is kind of a story. We've laid this out to try to tell the story of this process. And every story has a beginning, a middle and an end. And if we stop the story in the middle, we may lose some context. And so as much as we can wait towards the end to have those conversations, make, take some notes, things like that, so we can get through this in order to have all that context. But if we need to, we can, we can adjust and stop throughout it, but I'm going to go kind of as quickly as we can, but I want to make sure you have all the context around the information. So looking at this decision-making framework and with the student experience focused at the core, we also have to plan for other variables. Financial sustainability, we know that we have one very important constraint right now, and that is we cannot continue to operate our low enrollment campuses the same way that we are now. And we know the challenges in front of us and know these aren't just financial decisions. We want this to be data-informed and financial sustainability is very important to the future of this school district. And also our access and our opportunities to our students because that impacts their student experience. We believe all of our campuses are very important. They all serve a very important access point for all of our students. We want to continue that. And then looking at the community and allowing that input into, you know, future decisions on how these could be implemented, understanding that any change is hard. And so that input can help inform the future planning in those steps. So there's some key data points. Enrollment is always a good one. Enrollment is very difficult these days, as you've seen from a demographic standpoint. There's just so many different variables and here, it's even more unique because we have high growth in the north and we have some declining enrollments and stabilization in the south and in the central. And then our facility utilization, you saw the work of the Long Range Planning Committee and all the hours that they put into developing this matrix and developing thresholds in order to try to help inform some of these decisions. And then per pupil spending, that's another data point that we can look at. We're going to go through that and just compare the campuses and look at, you know, how are they, how do they compare across all of our elementaries in the district? Understand that we have that shifting enrollment patterns and some of the areas are stabilizing, others are declining. And then looking at those variances and what story, what is that telling us to help us make these decisions? So let's look at the methodology. The methodology is going to be something familiar that we've talked about before. We mentioned the matrix and the tool that the committee developed. That's step one. And what, how that utilizes, it's identifying those campuses that are under 60% capacity, 60% utilization. And how we compare that is utilizing this year's PIM snapshot data. It's the most consistent data that we can utilize in applying this matrix. And so that's how these campuses were identified, under 60%. And once we have this list, then we look at key district space needs, which we talked about, I think, back in February or March. Identifying those needs in programs and looking at the matching. Which campus that's underutilized could potentially be the best match for that program or for that need and that use? And that's kind of what we're going to be talking about tonight. So I wanted to let you all know how the process and evaluations worked. When we do that, this is a glimpse into the matrix and all the data that's involved here and there's a scoring that's involved as well. And when we look at the scoring, these are the categories that are really tied to just facility optimization, tied very specifically to the facility itself. But each campus gets a score and once you tally all those up and then they're sorted. When you look at the sort, here's the campuses from most favorable to least favorable for potential repurpose. And that's just based on these categories that were identified and that they were scored in this, in this order. You'll see some of them, one example is a Blockhouse Creek, right? It's not the newest campus on this list. It's older, but its enrollment actually is projected to increase over time. And so that affects the score and hence why it's near the bottom. So here are the key districts of space needs that we have. We have ranges for square footage based on those different programs and the needs that they have. And so this was utilized in looking at matches, looking at available campuses within that, within that list and some of the needs that they had and make sure that we account for all those. So why is this critical? I want to go over the district's current reality. Based on those campuses that were identified under 60%, within those, they're running around 52% capacity, which means about one in two seats are available in those campuses. Now those campuses are charted on this map here in blue. You see all the blue dots working all the way from the south, all the way towards the north. And how to better represent that is to utilize a, an image actually from the demographic report that was presented in October of last year. And then we plot those individual campuses. What's happening is you see that swath of light gray that's kind of evolving and merging into the central, even towards the north. All of these fall within that swath of declining enrollment or lower growth over the years. And so I think it reaffirms what we're seeing and why these campuses are on this list and why they are under that, need that 60% threshold. So when we look at from this year through 2030, kind of a five-year outlook on this slide, it's kind of hard to tell, but those in blue are below 60%. And you can see Blockhouse and Giddens kind of jumps up and it comes back down from the 60%. But Blockhouse is kind of slowly increasing over time and why? Because it's attendance area includes growth areas, includes new developments on the far east side of its attendance boundary. And so we wanted to show this because it's important to look at where we are now and where we're going because we hear a lot about just from how many kids are enrolled now, if we move here and there. Let's understand that these campuses, there's still changes that could happen over the next five years. This is important to highlight because we're going to be talking about multiple data sets here when it comes to enrollment. So for 24-25, that's our PIM snapshot data that we submit to TEA. For 25-26, our demographer actually goes in and gives us grade level projections and that's what we base our staffing on. So they provide that in December of each year for planning purposes. That's what we're using for 25-26. And then beyond that, we go to the demographic report and those projections that are included there to project out in future years. This is similar information, just plotted on a graph. And to try to see that a lot of those campuses, you see clustered together in the middle. They're all kind of slowly declining over the next five years. Most significant decline is projected at River Ridge Elementary. And you'll see how Blockhouse grows and Giddens, both of those are kind of outliers when we look at this data alone. Now let's talk about those per pupil spending models. And this is all of our elementaries plotted on this bar chart. And you'll see some unique bars which are outlined in that reddish orangish color. Those are our Title I campuses. So understand that this is based on our general fund expenditures. What is coded to that campus that we are spending money on? And so Title I, actually, we do get some revenue from that. That's not included in this model, but this is just an example of how we can set a baseline. The orange line you see going across is the average and to see, and that's around $6,800 per student. Here, we see those under enrolled campuses highlighted in yellow. And you'll see most of them are at the line or above that line. And so this kind of highlights, we can understand that there's a certain amount of money that is spent to support these campuses and that's just an equation divided by the total number of students that are, that are there and enrolled. Then we take that and sum it up and compare these campuses to that, to that average. So we have our current enrollment, the capacity and the cost per student for those campuses. And then you have the delta and when we compare it to the average, again, majority of these campuses are above the average that we spend on elementaries and you can see what those numbers are per student and then that equates to a total campus spend. Also, there's one in green and that is Cypress Elementary. And so we look at, we look at, we look at components there and there's, there's no necessary outlier. But when you get to low enrollment, different variables can significantly impact this number. And so even when we just look at the staff, look at the experience of the staff, it's all an equation and the expenditures that go to that. But again, I want to highlight that this is one variable, this is one data point in all of this, but it's important to highlight kind of where each campus compares to the, to the average spend. Now let's look at the paths through the decision. We're going to review three paths today. Path one is the vacation, the vacated campus and consolidate with a nearby campus, okay? And then that would equate to a complete repurpose of the vacated campus in order to meet the needs that were identified early. Path two would be implementing an updated staffing guideline for low enrolled campuses. Right now, our staffing guidelines go from one student all the way up to 449 students. There's a lot of variables in there that can change. And so this would introduce a different threshold, a different level that could be applied to low enrolled campuses. Given this path, there still are opportunities to co-locate some of those needs. Some of those needs are scalable and some of them you could parse out to different locations. But one constraint that we have with path two is when we look at the needs and you look at New Hope High School. You look at the New Hope High School, trying to co-locate that on an elementary school campus would be very restrictive. And so that's one thing I wanted to highlight when it comes to a needs and co-location strategy. Path three is a hybrid. And basically, you look at the unique circumstances that may lie within a community, may lie within a campus and an area, and you may apply different path one and path two. And so we'll go over one of those examples and those scenarios. Gives you a little bit of flexibility, given the information that we're going to share. But again, you'll see 26-27 school year is the first school year that this could be implemented. All right, so let's look at path one. So when we look at all of our campuses, our current enrollment and our utilization, what this would look like is that Fabian Elementary would combine communities with Westside Elementary. Now you'll see Westside's not on this list, they're just above the threshold for consideration. But when we look at just adjacencies with some of our communities and our, in their neighborhoods, the communities could fit within the structure of Westside. Currently, about 10% of the zoned Fabian families transfer into Westside. And so there are some families that have made that decision. And so that would equate to a projected enrollment of about 776, which is 92% utilization. Allow some classrooms from some of the special programs and things like that. Now, the next one would be Cypress Elementary combining with Nomin Elementary and reside at Nomin Elementary. And that projected enrollment would be around 841 and that's 98% utilization. One thing I want to point out though, and we'll see is the, when you look at 98% utilization, you have to also consider outlying years and what the projections look like for both campuses and those enrollments as they slowly decline over time. Now, the last one is three campuses involved and that would be Steiner Ranch Elementary would combine with both Laura Bush and River Ridge communities. And so certain areas of the Steiner Ranch attendance area would attend Bush and the other portion would attend River Ridge in order to balance both of those enrollments initially. And so all those within a community and you can see the enrollments there that Laura Bush would be 587 and River Ridge would be 527, again, just above that 60% threshold. So what that means is then those three campuses could be repurposed. And when we look at Fabian and being the location and that was matched up with New Hope High School, is a new location for New Hope High School in the central part of the district.
So just as you jump into this, can you just highlight the fact that, how, of how the matching was done because you used the tool?
Thank you, Dr. Gary. So when we look at matches, we have Thank you, Dr. Gary. So when we look at matches, we identify our campuses. And then we have program specifications for each one of these programs. And it says, I need this much parking, I need this much outdoor space, I need this many classrooms, I need these collaboration spaces. So they have a list of program needs and then we match those according to the campus and what they offer. And it's really important because when we look at the next one and that Cypress Elementary, when we look at just administrative services, professional development, police, things like that, that parking is very important in those situations. Cypress has more parking than the other campuses in the area, right? And if we look at just the layout of that plan itself, we look at the U design allows more segmentation and demarking different areas in its two-story layout. And so that's what we do. We look at what is needed for those programs and we see which campus matches best to those needs. And then the last one is campus repurpose of Steiner Ranch Elementary. And that one is matched to pre-K tuition-based or partnership. We have to understand with Senate Bill twelve and the implications potentially there from a tuition-based pre-K that may lead to further conversations just around a potential partnership there in order to meet those needs and to explore. I wanted to acknowledge that Senate Bill twelve could impact this path. But there are other strategies that we could implement as a district in order to meet that need. So we see this quick timeline. A lot of this is contingent upon tonight and the direction that we get. Because the next step is going to involve some community engagement. We need to hear from our communities that will be affected. And so we need to do that. The summertime beginning and end are really important because then rezoning would need to happen, you know, for some of these scenarios. And so that would need to happen next fall, all working up to a twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven implementation of these. And why you see twenty-seven, twenty-eight campus repurpose is because it would have to have work depending on the use. Would need some work within those facilities in order to get them ready for twenty-seven, twenty-eight implementation of those repurposed strategies. But quick timeline here on why it says twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we quickly look at Fabian and Westside and then those communities coming together. We wanted to look at it a couple of different ways. And we know there's so many levels of impact to families. And so we wanted to say at Fabian, around seven thirty a.m., there's multiple times that we looked at, what does a ten-minute drive look like? And so we utilized G I S software in order to map this. See, how far can I get away from the core of Fabian in ten minutes? And what happens is when you plot this, you can see that Westside is within that ten minute. You see it's on the edge. It's on the edge because west of Westside is a preserve and a whole bunch of land. And that's otherwise the little gray area we go farther west. And then on that little iPhone image, you can see, actually, when you plot this in your phone, you can see it's within that ten minutes, around nine minutes from Fabian to Westside. It's a data point. Understand that people live not at Fabian Elementary. But it's something that we want to consider when we're looking at impacts to families. Then we need to really look at what would happen with combining campuses. Is there an efficiency when it comes to enrollment, when we apply staffing? And so we look at the twenty-five, twenty-six demographer projected grade level enrollments. And so when you look at Fabian, look from K through five and you see how many students are projected in those grades and how many teachers are associated with that for next year. So next year, Fabian is predicted to have forty-one kindergarten and they will have two sections. And that's now. Things could change, I understand that. But that's what's projected for next year. Westside, the same thing. So then we total those, we combine. If we were to combine a campus now with these numbers, what would that look like? So you can see here that across grade levels, you pick up some efficiencies with these lower enrollment schools. And it nets out across a K through five school, that's out to about four classrooms. Understand that police and them said this could change, but this is a baseline of data that we need to utilize in looking at are there efficiencies to be gained when and if this move was to be made? I do want to express that I know like this, when we look at teachers, this means people, things like that. So I want to be sensitive to that. But we have to look at this from a data perspective to help inform the next decisions. I do, bottom left, let's pick that up. Here, pre-K, Fabian is a pre-K community. Those precares would, in this scenario, would move to Deer Creek, which is a hub currently in the vicinity. And so this better represents that. And so if we look at our total campus enrollment without pre-K, seven thirty-five, using those grade level projections, but our most important one is looking at twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so those don't include those precares because they would be at Deer Creek. And so you can see that it is at ninety-two percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven, but it does slowly. This is probably the most stabilization that you'll see across a lot of these examples of enrollment over the next five years, again, under ninety percent utilization. Then we look at bus routes. We know that busing is a thing as well. When you're taking students that may walk to a current campus and now they're going to be combining with another community, that it could impact the transportation. And so our routing team just looked at what could this mean? And this scenario would net out based on their calculations around one more route, one more bus. We budget those around fifty thousand dollars, not including the bus, in order to accomplish that. So that's all within the figures that we're going to show you. Let's look at this scenario of the combination of these two communities, Fabian to Westside. You look at classroom teachers netting out an efficiency of four teachers, non-classroom teacher positions of six and a half and some additional staffing, about eleven positions. So we have a significant adjustment there, just efficiencies built on the combination there. So it's projected approximately one point four million dollars in savings that you'd have the initial year. And every year after that is really a cost avoidance because that's your new budget that you would adopt with this in twenty-six, twenty-seven moving forward. Okay, so that's Fabian, Westside communities coming together. This next one I want to talk about is just the Cypress and Noman communities. We did a very similar thing, plotted in G I S and see what that ten-minute drive looks like. You will see from the core of Cypress and a ten-minute drive what that looks like. And then also we did, the commute is around six minutes. If you do pull up a map, these campuses are very close in proximity. But again, what have we always done in this district? We build campuses when and where we need them. And that's just what has happened over time and now we're faced with a different reality in enrollment. We look at our grade levels again and looking at those across the board combined, compared to both campuses and the combined campus. That nets some savings projected in second, third and fourth, so for a total of three positions. This pre-K community would also be projected to move to Deer Creek. And so we're kind of balancing those along the way. And we do have capacity at Deer Creek in order to make these moves. And we look at, again, you can see right at a hundred percent capacity if we were to do it with next year's numbers. But we wouldn't be doing it with next year's numbers. And looking at the projection, we bear about ninety-eight percent. You can see how those kind of taper off over time, over the next five years. Looking at bus routes, this one's unique because there are nine routes, but seven buses serve both of these campuses. And so really it's a net zero impact. They would just route them a little bit different and utilize the existing buses. So here's the summary of net savings. Your staffing, your classroom, three teachers, staffing, non-classroom teaching positions of six and a half and then non-teaching positions would be eight and a half for a total of eighteen and potential savings of just under one point two million dollars. I do want to highlight, I didn't highlight before, this doesn't include child nutrition positions, you know, that are involved in the kitchen because that's paid out of a completely different fund. Okay, so last of path one. I know this is taking a little while. Thank you for your patience. So looking at the Steiner Ranch community joining both Bush and River Ridge elementaries. You'll see the drive time. We know what Steiner Ranch equates to from a drive time standpoint. But one of the important pieces here is, this is a little bit more complicated because how can we show you what this looks like? How we did it is we took Steiner Ranch with Laura Bush and River Ridge and said, these are the next year's grade level projections across all three and we totaled all three. So when we combine all the campuses, next year, there's going to be approximately just over twelve hundred elementary kiddos attending all three schools next year and sixty-five teachers teaching those kiddos. So that's our basis. And then we have to work into how those would be, which campuses they would be attending. So we look at that, we take those numbers down, twelve oh four and sixty-five you see at the top. And then we look at Steiner Ranch and Laura Bush and that combination of those communities. We see those staffing models. And then we look at Steiner Ranch and River Ridge, we see those staffing models. And we total those up and you can see that the efficiencies that are included there. Approximately six positions could be netted out based on this realignment and joining of communities in that Steiner Ranch area and those three schools. So now we look at individually the new combined campus of Steiner Ranch and Laura Bush. I'll point you to twenty-six, twenty-seven when this could be implemented at five eighty-seven or sixty-seven percent capacity. You'll see that this one's going down a couple percentage points each year. And then we look at the River Ridge scenario. Go to twenty-six, twenty-seven, you'll see just over five hundred, five twenty-seven, sixty-three percent. But this one over time actually drops below that sixty percent again. And just given the decline in enrollment over time in the projections. Again, we're using the demographic projections there. Another similar situation to the Cypress and Noman that we utilize, we have nine routes and we utilize seven buses. So we share buses down there between those campuses. And so that would not net any change in number of buses needed. Then we look at overall, those six positions from classroom. We look at six non-classroom teaching positions and then non-teaching positions of eleven for a total of twenty-three positions that could be reduced based on the numbers that we shared tonight and just over one point five million dollars. And so you can see that these different paths add up between all of them. And we'll share what that total looks like a little later. And so this is again, some of the timeline that would be needed in order to implement these. Community engagement, you can see right there. We're going to talk about this a little bit later and how we believe we can connect with our communities. But you'll see there's multiple steps here and why we don't expect any action tonight because we want community input and then we're going to need a decision when we come back for the fall. Okay, so path two, which is staffing guidelines, this was not as long, not as many slides. So the key factors when we look at implementing an updated staffing guideline for low enrollment elementary campuses for that twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We look at some of the fundamental key factors are that it preserves that community school where feasible. The proximity to adjacent campuses can serve as an additional staffing efficiency. When we look at reducing staffing at a campus, but I am able to look at my adjacent schools and looking at how we could share some of those resources, it becomes a valuable resource for them. And then co-location, where possible, that's going to increase the utilization rate of the building itself. We have to turn on the A C to the building, we have to turn on the lights. There's only so much efficiency we can actually realize with just a portion of the building being used. And then I'd said this earlier, but it's really hard to co-locate New Hope High School or even the Leander Extended Opportunities and Leo Center in an elementary school. So let's look at these. I'm going to draw your attention to the bottom first because that's our current staffing guideline in those ranges. We go through one student to four hundred and forty-nine and then we go four fifty to nine ninety-nine and then we go one thousand plus. You can see that there's steps and positions. You gain positions as you get more students. The thing is that there's a big range in the one to four forty-nine. And so what's proposed here is looking at an intermediary threshold. So up to three forty-nine and then from three fifty to five hundred. So this would be the adjustment. You can see that there are some ones to point fives. That's where, that's the biggest difference I think that you would see is from one F T E to point five. And when you look at that, it really, you look at the skillset of the staff that I have because you may be combining. You're taking your point fives and trying to make a one. And you can do that based on skillsets. You know, you may have an assistant principal slash instructional coach. If I have the right person in that role, I might combine some other ones. Gives you some autonomy from a campus level perspective to implement this and how it would work on your individual campus. I will let you know that this is not perfect either. And so this will still be very difficult for campuses to implement. There'll be challenges involved with this as well. But it does allow for some adjustment in efficiencies and from that financial sustainability to look at a different staffing model moving forward. I will remind you that in that scenario where we would combine in Steiner Ranch and River Ridge, you'll see one gets below sixty percent. So then we're revisiting the same conversation and so staffing models may be able to address that.
I think in the staffing model, it's also important to point out that this doesn't have to be isolated to that one campus. It could be that the point five is one person shared between two adjacent smaller campuses.
And that's the benefit. When you look at, most of these campuses have adjacent campuses near them because they're all experiencing the same kind of enrollment patterns. And so that does create some efficiencies and opportunities for them to look at the staffing guidelines and apply it. There's a footnote at the bottom. This does not include the general teacher positions because those are applied based on a student ratio.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that so this does not talk about combining grade levels together or any other kind of innovative approach at this point. So we really stuck to what we know for sure. But there are other opportunities to have further conversations about what this could look like down the line. The other thing I want to just point out as a general rule, remember we're taking snapshots and providing data based on like one moment in time. Things change over time. So as you go from this year to next year, the grade level numbers change. And so this is never going to look the same two years in a row. So just remember that this is just a snapshot of a moment in time.
But this document and all the ones that we're looking at, like when we talk about communities saying, oh, I want to keep my school or my community, like no matter what we choose out of these options, not fun. It's gonna look different.
That was the very first thing that Jeremy said at the start of the presentation was we cannot continue to operate schools the way that we are right now.
Very good observation though. And so you look at these models and we're really working within the one to four forty-nine of the existing. And so you'll see there's sixteen staffing positions there. And the difference, you'll look ten and a half from three fifty to five hundred and then eight from up to three forty-nine. And so that carries you into the next slide. So if you're from one to three hundred and forty-nine, the delta as compared to current staffing guidelines is eight. It's eight fewer positions. And if you look at the projected savings there, and unfortunately, we don't have any campuses meeting three hundred and forty-nine, or fortunately, I guess, it would be better term there. But we do have campuses within the three fifty to five hundred projection. And that's a delta over five and a half positions. And when you apply it across six of these campuses, there's potential savings of one point seven, just over one point seven million dollars in applying an updated staffing guideline. And again, this just shows you the projections that we're using, doesn't include any utilities as well. Okay, so timeline, very similar, right? But there are some steps, because there's some steps we need to take in order to do this. Community engagement is still an important piece of this conversation. Action is still needed in order to move forward. We have to prepare our staff and any family for any type of staffing guidelines that would be different from one year to the next. And then again, that last step of implementation would be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Now I'm going to go path three. Path three again gives you some flexibility. It's really that strategic response to unique needs of different communities in the district. Again, we can preserve that community identity where feasible. You'll see that because of some flexibility and manage it under utilization without a one-size-fits-all approach. You've seen path one is one way, path two is another way. Path three gives you a little bit more flexibility to explore. path three gives you a little bit more flexibility to explore creative solutions. So if we just looked at this in an example of example three, you'll see all the campuses are on here, and in path one, you'll see some repurposing and some consolidation. One thing I want to point out on this slide is that, say Blockhouse Creek, because of that growth, that, that is deferred, and so it's, it's not in our calculations. Another one is Giddens Elementary. So Giddens Elementary comes into play significantly when Elementary 32 would come online in 2829. And so it's a future discussion that we're going to have to have at that time in planning for that implementation and the opening of that school. So our green box bounds our discussion from a financial sustainability perspective. So path one, that's just showing you what we've already gone through. Path two, it's the same, implementing the staffing guidelines. But path three, you see that there's still some repurposing consolidations on there. The first one is Steiner Ranch. And so you have to look at Steiner Ranch, and what did, what did the projections show us? And so those projections are going to continue to decline over time. And if you lift it, the same River Ridge is projected to be under 300 students within the next five years. So there's still something that needs to, to happen there. And even when we were to consolidate those, there's still a chance that those enrollments of the combined campuses would drop below the 60%. So you still have a trajectory that's not moving in the, in the right direction. And then Fabian Elementary, we still, there's the need for, for New Hope High School. And so, New Hope High School, if it was to need a home, there is no home currently. And so a campus could be utilized for that, and if that's a need that still needs to go forward, then a consolidation would be necessary in order to create that opportunity at a, at a campus. And so, the other two gives you flexibility with staffing, staffing guidelines. What we want to do is show an example. This could go a couple different ways, based on our conversations, based on some of your thinking and discussions, but path three does give you a little bit more flexibility. It's, it's less rigid than path one and path two. Okay, we're at the summary, so we're almost done. This is important, because what does this look like overall across all pathways? So if you apply the entire path one, it'd be just over $4 million. If you applied path two across six campuses, that'd be $1.7 million. And then path three is in between there. So path three, as we gave that example, would be just over $3.5 million. These don't include, again, these don't include Blockhouse or Giddens at this time because of their unique circumstances. But this is for us to have a conversation about, and for you to utilize data to inform the discussion in the path forward.
So just to be sure that we're very clear, so these would be cost savings that would apply in the 2627 school year. And then after that, so we'd see that saving in 2627, we would not see it in 2526, because we would not have done any of this yet. And then thereafter, that will just be our new reality. So there won't be additional savings, it's just this continued cost avoidance over time. Our budget, whole budget adjusts.
Thank you, Dr. Gary. And then, when, when it comes to community engagement opportunities, right now, how we plan to engage the affected community's thought exchange, deploying that online platform to reach out to our communities, to gather their voice, gather their perspectives, gather what's important to them as a community as we continue these conversations. So that's going to go out immediately, that, you know, that's planned to go out tomorrow, just to go get, go get that information, so we can have it, and, and help inform some of the path forward. But also, community forums for those affected communities, depending on what path is chosen and what direction is given, community forums are going to be important. Those are those in-person conversations that, that we would have with any affected communities. And so those will be planned. We want to, we, we, we want these to be in a place at a time that is respectful of our communities. And so those would be planned for just after school starts in August, in order to have those conversations. Let everyone kind of settle down for a couple days in school, and then engage them in some conversations. And that's why on the timeline, you see that that final decision, that final action from the board would come in early September. So then, any, any work that needs to be done, we can continue that and move forward with that in the fall, because information is going to be very critical in, in, in those next steps after that action. So those are some of the steps that we've planned on taking at this moment. And here's the updated, all those things that I talked about, all those steps are here, okay? We have some CFAT conversations embedded in this timeline as well, depending on what direction we want to go with the future bond. But all this, we have to consider all this at the same time, because they're all community conversations, and it's all community engagement. And so, we want to make sure that we identify those on, on our chart and on our map and, and the next steps. Again, this, just, just a reminder, this is a discussion, no, no, no final decisions have been made at this, at this moment. So what we are looking for, we're about to engage in a kind of discussion, but we're, we're looking for guidance on the strategic direction moving forward, specifically on which path that we as administration should, should further develop. With that, I want to thank you for your patience, you did incredible. But now it's for me, it's time for me to, and these two gentlemen, and whoever else you need, to answer some questions.
So, thank you, and it was real hard for us not to jump in there, and we did it. And I think everyone probably has a slew of questions. And so what I'm going to ask the board to please do, if we could, we'll start down here, and one question each, and not multi-part, five parts, and we're going to move down. I'll skip mine, and I'll go, I'll go last in the rotation, and then we'll start back over, because I know that we'll have multiples, but I want to make sure that we're all given an opportunity to ask those questions. So Francesca, you're first.
I do first, just quickly, I want to say thank you. This presentation is what I have needed to have these conversations, and I also want to acknowledge that there is exactly no one in this room that wants to be having this conversation right now. So thank you for the work that you all put in for this presentation today. My first question is on the Steiner, the Steiner Ranch schools. Why are we looking at moving everybody farther back from Steiner Ranch instead of moving River Ridge up? Especially given the traffic concerns that so many of the community is mentioning, and because that seems to be a more convenient location, especially for the apartments and whoever else is going to that campus.
Yeah, so, so one of the considerations there, obviously on the matrix you see in the, in the scoring and things like that, but another consideration is when you look at the Houston, if it's projected to be tuition-based, you know, pre-K, and then any other pre-K partnership, the accessibility at the front of the community gains some value there. When we look at even from an open enrollment standpoint as well, when you're trying to bring, possibly bring individuals into a program, it's very difficult. Just the geographic layout of, of Steiner Ranch, it's, it's proven difficult. And so, looking at getting everyone who's already in that community to stay in that community still, but work back towards the, the bottom of that, of that area, and where we can fill from the bottom, and work, and work towards the top. And so Steiner Ranch just kind of lent itself to, to being the repurpose option.
I will add also that River Ridge is our new building concept, and so from a standpoint of learning, that's a much better facility for learning than Steiner Ranch is. I'm not talking about the teaching, or the people, or anything like that, but we, in our new prototype design, we have collaborative spaces built in. We have the, the neighborhood concept, so that River Ridge is a newer facility. I think traffic is the other issue, so at Steiner Ranch, getting in and out of that building is much trickier than getting in and out of River Ridge. Those were the other two things that I thought of.
Yep, good point.
Okay, so my question's going to be one thing, but I'm informed by the fact that when I went, I looked at the budget and looked at how much in bond funds have not yet been spent. Now, I know that some of them, though, were like technically defined, but when I came up with 421 million overall, it made me think about like, okay, how are we envisioning these buildings? Because some of these buildings were on bond. And so I'm wondering about Leo. Can Leo not be, kiddos moved, a three-story building, we do admin, we do Leo, all there in that facility? Can we not do New Hope and Early College High School together? And I, and you've gotten tons of questions. So here's what I want to know is, if I want to have the conversation on revital, I know she's going to call foul on me, if I want to have a conversation on revitalizing, or how we're actually going to spend these bond funds on these issues, how, how, how do I instigate that, or how do we have that conversation?
I think one, first, first step would be really to, I would love to, to get you probably the most accurate update as possible from a bond standpoint on what, just because it's not spent, doesn't mean it doesn't need to be spent, right? We, we also have to look at from a proposition standpoint, and how funds can move around as well. And so there's some limitations and constraints, and so I think if we identify those constraints, then we'll really know what we may have in order to, to have that conversation. I think that's kind of step one that me and my team can work on.
Well, this is kind of piggybacking off of what Trish said, because we're, you know, the, one of the plans is to repurpose Fabian for New Hope High School. And when was it, last board meeting? I can't remember, last board meeting, we had a presentation about a design for Early College High School. And some of the conversations during that presentation were, could we combine New Hope with Early College High School? Because let's be honest, we don't know if we're going to go to another bond again, or if we're going to be able to pass another bond. And so my question is, is what is the possibility of combining New Hope and Early College High School? We know Early College High School is right down the road from Cypress. I mean, I think when I look at optics, y'all know, I talk about optics all the time. And so for me, I know currently, our numbers for New Hope are low, right? But it's low because, given the constraints and the portables, right? And I'm going to be honest, we haven't, I feel like we haven't advertised it, I hate using that word, in the way, in the positive way it should be, right? We know that. And so I'm kind of just wondering, you know, given the financial situation we're in, is that even a possibility and what that looks like? And if we could have Dustin come up and talk about that.
Sorry, can I just clarify your question? Are you asking to have both of them in Fabian?
Yes, I want to see what that possibility looks like, just because, again, it prevents us from building another building, right? And then I think also for me, when we talk about location, and we're talking about innovative academies and schools of choice, Early College High School being all the way in Leander is not going to benefit our students in the south or in the central side. And I, I'm not sure how it's also going to help with overcrowding up there. So I'm just trying to understand if we can combine that, is that an option? What does that look like? Because what does learning look like for that space too? Because to me, having those two schools of choice in that place would really optimize that facility space, rather than 100 or 150 kids.
To clarify, your question is about combining Early College and New Hope. I think, given space constraints, I think it's something that we could do. We haven't explored, looking at that model of those two programs together. They are unique in how those programs operate, but it's something that Angela and I have talked about with some principal changes on those two campuses, it's something we can absolutely explore. We have not done that to date. I don't know what our agreements are with ACC and the MOU there, as far as having those two programs combined, but it's something that we can absolutely look into.
Can we get more information on that, please?
I, I will say we can, and there is more than one option there. So you spoke specifically to say Early College and New Hope High School at Fabian, but I think there are some other options as well that we will look at and bring back to you.
Yeah, I would like all the options. I think, right, again, my whole thing is just, we don't know if we're going to go to bond again. And I would love to build a great building, but I'm trying to just think of our current situation right now, and just maximizing the spaces we have. So I would love all the options you can bring to us, but in particular, Fabian with New Hope.
I want to clarify, when you say we may not go to bond again, can you help me?
Because we don't know.
Yes, well, at this point, I think we do know more than we did last time.
I, I understand that, but as a board as a whole, we haven't called it. We don't know what our direction is. We don't, that's where I'm going with, there's no set. I haven't talked about it, because I don't even know how I feel, but that's where I'm going with. I know we have needs, but I also know, I don't know what the rest of the board members feel about going to bond or not.
Well, I want to clarify, though, that, that what we were, what I was concerned about was what the legislature might do with our absolute ability to go out to our community to ask for bonds in the first place. I don't think any of that is necessarily in place. So we still have the ability to go out for bond. I want to make sure, yeah, thanks.
I mean, we don't know that.
I want to make sure that the community knows that those, us going out to bond is still absolutely necessary, even if we never build another new facility in this district, because we have to maintain our existing facilities, and that will always require bonding.
No, I get that, I totally, I guess my words were not right. I think for me, though, because the board hasn't had a conversation, and I know how I feel about it, I just don't think we're in that right set of mind. Maybe we will be in a month or two, but that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, and I agree, I just want to make sure that we understand, you know, the possibilities, and the possibilities still exist for us to build new construction, if that's what the community wants us to do.
Can you please explain the, the utilization or the capacity? How that is determined, whether a school has 840-something or 860? Because is it really just a count of the number of rooms? What programs are there? Can you just explain it, because there, there've been some questions that have come up about that.
And, and so, I think it was February of last year is kind of when we revisited as a district, before my time, but obviously I went back and then listened to that whole conversation, and, and how it got to where it was. You know, a lot of it had to do with just consistency purposes, and so, yeah, we have somewhere 842, 879, 860, and from an elementary standpoint. And basically what it is, it's you, and it's looking at your classrooms, your available classrooms for instruction purposes. And then you have 22 to 1, so it's really a formula that you multiply your classrooms by your student ratio, and then there's a utilization rate. So an 85% utilization rate allows you 15% of flexibility, understanding that you're going to have some special programs intermingled in with just your general K through 5 education, or your pre-K through 5. And so it allows some flexibility. That's why if we went 100%, we just wouldn't, the 100% number is higher. So you're seeing these 860. Total capacity without allowing any space for special programs is much higher, it's over 900. And so, allowing for those special programs gets you that 85% utilization. And that's where our numbers are. It's for consistency purposes, because while there may be special programs needed on that campus today, there's no guarantee that those programs will always remain at that campus. And so that's why we want to have consistency across, across the board.
All right, thanks.
All right. One, definitely want to echo the thoughts of, of the board members when we say, like, thank you for the thoughtfulness and the kind of courage, leadership around this to facilitate this conversation. My thing that jumps out for me, like, the concern is around the utilization of the combined Fabian and Wes and, and, and Naaman. And so I know we're using kind of the, I put the worst-case scenario, but we're using the kind of low enrollment scenario that we kind of just recently moved to. Seems like there's kind of a low margin of error in, in using that scenario, given the utilization. And so, just would love to know in the future, kind of like, the utilization of our high enrollment schools, and how this would, the new combined school would compare to our current highest enrolled school, and like what that utilization rate is, and the range of those schools.
Yeah, and so one, if you, if we just talk about, so this like reduced scenario that, right? That we, we started looking at, I would say, from an application standpoint, like where would you feel the most comfortable applying a reduced scenario with? It's probably in your declining or your stabilized projection areas, which would kind of be where we're talking about these campuses. So really, I kind of, you know, from a confidence standpoint, you know, there is margin in any projection, right? And so the variables are fewer in, in, I think, the areas that we're trying to apply that. And so, I would like to, clarifying and comparing utilization rates from, say, these central campuses to your high enrollment campuses, what, what would be the, the end goal in trying to, for comparison purposes, what, what would you want to look at?
So what I'm trying, so the, the concern is, are we creating another problem, right? Are we creating another school that is now on the high enrollment side? And this decision is kind of a, you know, it's, it's hard to pull back from. And so, just kind of thinking through, what if... And so, just kinda thinking through, what if, what if things change and then we can't go backwards at the end of the day? And we've created this scenario, and it's just a, a thought.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good point, and what we wanna look at is, say, over a five-year period, you look at, there's gonna be a spike, right, when we combine, and then as, well, it's a climb, then it starts to settle down, right? So that's a trend you can look at. And also, you know, we track our campuses, and a hundred percent capacity is not necessarily a lever point that we utilize, right? We track them in that, when we get to a hundred and twenty percent capacity is really when it becomes red and we know that we need to be looking at, uh, making a, maybe a pivot there. Um, so just at a hundred percent, it's not necessarily, I would say, uh, beyond what we've experienced most of the time when we're fast growth, so. That's was one very bold.
Yeah, so just to expand on that, because we've, we're really good at fast growth, we've been doing it for the last twenty years. And so our plan has always been, as we know a campus is gonna hit a hundred and twenty percent, that's the threshold that we know we have to open additional facilities to manage that. We don't have any right now that are at that point. We do have a couple coming to that point, which is why we're looking at Elementary thirty-one and thirty-two in the north. But that's, that's the long-range planning part of that. It used to be just a pure growth issue. Now we're on the other side of that, but you've, you see in the data we presented to you, we don't have anything. I think we have one at ninety-eight percent and the other at ninety-two percent. And then over time, they don't go over, they actually decline down. And so we're never gonna hit those thresholds, and so, I, I think that answers your question.
Yeah, and it speaks to Jeremy's part of like, understanding we have, um, there's precedent to operating at that ninety-eight percent, and other schools are operating at that percent currently.
Yeah, yeah, just trying to like, it's sometimes we think about that the schools were designed at eighty-five percent utilization for eight hundred and sixty students, you know? And so that looks like a hundred percent, but it's not technically a hundred percent of the maximum capacity. It's a, it's still allowing for flexibility. Not that it will, won't look different than they're operating now. And I think that is really the consideration, and what we wanna be sensitive to is it's very, it'd be, it'd be very different than how they're operating now.
Given that these past reports are often flawed, and it's hard to have a crystal ball to everything, have you gone through a calculation in our given area demographic per house, and how much value they would lose in those neighborhood schools models closing?
No, sir, I have not done any, any analysis on, uh, the impact of, of home values.
Well, I think we should do something like that for the general public, because closing a school in a neighborhood values are directly tied. We had forty-seven people sign up tonight, not everyone spoke. We had fifty-one the last time, we had fifty-two the time before that, when they heard about any talk. And I told them, if you're gonna wait till we make a decision, you have missed the point. So please show up, so I would love it, the next time we meet, that you have that. Not for me, for the public.
We will do everything in our power to get you something, but I'm not, I don't know that I've ever done that before. I don't know how possible that is, um, so we'll do everything in our power to get that for you.
If we can come up with something that tells us how many kids we're gonna have, and this one from twenty-twenty-one says that the low, we're gonna have forty-four thousand by this time. That was a low, the high would be fifty-one thousand. I think it would be nice if we have the public a little something about how much their home values would lose if we close, if we change something, if we move something. It is going to directly affect every single person in that community, cause you look at these communities, the school is the centerpiece, it is the sun. And if the sun doesn't come up tomorrow, people will hurt.
Absolutely. So Paul, we, 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 we will do everything, um, that we can to explore that, that opportunity, because it'd be, again, it would be great data if we can, if we could generate something, um, we'll, we'll do everything we can.
Thank you, board, y'all have asked a lot, I think we have a lot of similar questions. Um, my question is, if we, if we did nothing, if we said, no, we, we wanna keep every school open, we don't want to reduce, we, we don't want to do this. I know that nobody here wants to close a school, nobody here wants to go to a low enrollment model. I know this year, we had some really hard discussions, none of us wanted to increase the classroom size. Nobody wanted to get rid of campus technology. Nobody wanted to get rid of our librarian IAs. Those are the things we did this year. If we didn't adjust, what, what, what would that leave us in a year or two? I mean, can you answer that? I mean, I guess one of the things I keep thinking about, that I heard some, some of our principals, some of our teachers say, this year, they felt that we were slowly bleeding out on our other campuses. Our campuses that are fully enrolled, our campuses that, um, are over-enrolled, that they're having to keep our under-enrolled campuses open, that it's impacting them, right? When we increase classroom size, if you don't have that many students, increasing that classroom size didn't impact a lot of our under-enrolled campuses. It really hurt some of those campuses at capacity, because they felt it. You know, they, they felt those classroom sizes. So, I don't know, given what we found out today at Ledge, about hold harmless, given where we are, what are, can you, you know, talk to me a little bit about what, what those impacts could look like for us?
I'll go first, uh, just from the finance side. So right now, even with the update I provided earlier, you know, we're about two million dollars over the four and a half percent threshold. So we're, we'd be dipping into fund balance twenty-one and a half million going into twenty-five, twenty-six. So if we do nothing, uh, you're starting off the next year at twenty-one and a half million. Oh, no, the good news, if you wanna call it that, we, we, the weird thing on that hold harmless is it comes back in year two. So I guess we get six and a half million. So that will knock, knock us down to fifteen million, which is probably close to your three percent. However, no pay raises, you're still gonna have some campuses over, some campuses under, assuming if no attendance zones are adjusted. You know, we're, we're, we'll be further behind, you know, area districts as far as, as, as salaries go. We still gonna have programs in portables, you know, you're gonna have New Hope still in a portable, right? We're gonna have a lot of, of issues. Uh, we're gonna be in a, a, you know, a position where we're gonna go below our three months on our fund balance. I mean, we only have about one or two more years of dipping into fund balance to the point we're at, where we're gonna get to the point where it's gonna start affecting our bond rating, it's gonna start affecting, uh, you know, those things. Uh, you know, this year, we're gonna end the year at about one, one sixty, hundred and sixty million. We're going to next year at, at negative, right now twenty-one and a half, till we do anything, so. You know, there's, if, if we don't do anything, we're, we'll, we'll be the poster child of, of how not to manage a school district. Which is not, I know it's not, I mean, that's, that's kinda extreme, and I know that's not where you're going, but I'm just saying that's, if, if we don't do anything, we're, you know, we're, we have about two years, and then we'll basically be in a position to where our bond rating will be instrumental, we won't have quality, we won't, we won't be the district that attracts the best staff. I mean, and it, we won't be able to be as competitive, we won't be able to keep up with our neighbors. We won't be able to provide the education services that we wanna provide, uh, you know, just to, un- unless the legislature does something in two years, and I'm not gonna try to predict, uh, predict that. So we would, I mean, we, you know, basically if you look at us as an injury and we're bleeding, we would just continue to bleed out, and it's, it's, it's not gonna put us in a position to where we're gonna be able to continue to, to be the light that Leander ISD is in, in this, in the Austin area.
Pete, you did mention those staff salary, and I just wanna make sure, I mean, the legislature's passing, there's a certain amount of salary that will be increased, because it's gonna be legislatively mandated. You're discussing the part that isn't.
Yeah.
And so I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, it's not like we're, of course, that's gonna, whatever's in there legislatively, we're gonna do, it's just everything else.
Yeah, you have, you know, fifty or sixty percent of our staff that aren't in that category, they don't get that. And then on the next phase is, you have other districts around us that, you know, yeah, you're getting this money from the state now, but now they still wanna do a two percent raise, we just fall that farther behind.
Right, and to clarify, your question is, what if we don't do something? I mean, this doesn't, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do some things. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
So to add to that, I just, uh, we need to put this in context. So later in the agenda, we have the update on projections through end of year in twenty-four, twenty-five. And if I'm reading this correctly, there's a twenty-three point seven million dollar deficit running in twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's this current year. So this is not a new problem, so we're already eating fund balance by twenty-three million dollars this year. Um, we already reduced expenditures for next year by over fourteen and a half million dollars, and we're now gonna run still a twenty-one and a half million dollar deficit on top of that. This is, this is a structural problem that I, I wanna point out that we don't resolve a structural budget problem, closing schools. That's not, that's not the solution to a budget problem, those are two separate things.
And who is leading that, Dr. Gearing? Who is leading that structural problem? A year ago at this time, I went around to schools to tell them the river ahead, and you guys, at the very next meeting, said a six-to-one vote that I wasn't allowed to go to the meetings, I'm sorry, to go to the schools and tell them what's going on without your approval, of which I have had to sit and go through meeting after meeting, wondering when I was gonna be arrested, because I was not allowed to go on a campus unless I had your approval, which included the meetings. And when I asked the chi, uh, police in the area, Cedar Park and Leander, and I said, well, they are the governing body, and they have warned me, could they actually arrest me if I show up to a campus? And they said, well, we don't wanna be involved, but yeah, I suppose so. So my, my question is, in the leadership of how we are doing this, and I saw this happening years ago, and under government immunity, every one of us could simply walk away, and the community would be left holding the bag. That's not what I want, I do not want to lose control of an ISD, because when you start closing schools, you lose control of it. That is historical, that is what happens, that you're bleeding money and you don't show that you can run it. Talk to the people down in San Antonio, they closed thirteen schools last May, thirteen. By February, they're taken over by TEA, and then what?
I have another question for the panel, if that's okay.
I was gonna say, we'll move over, I do wanna address, um, Paul, that decision was made via board policy, um, our board operating, and when board members go to campuses, you have to let campuses know. Uh, I believe in that meeting, we talked about that, it was a public meeting, so if anybody wants to see that. Um, most of us, we operate and we work in professional spaces. In my professional space, if an employee or somebody comes into a meeting that's not an employee, not invited, proceeds to sit on the floor in a meeting, proceeds to act erratic, perhaps cry in a meeting, I would feel that that is a security issue for my staff, and I would feel the need to protect my staff and, and remove all of my employees from the room. Um, people weren't feeling safe when you would proceed to push your way into those meetings, sit on the floor, and behave in erratic ways. And so this board had a discussion of, can you please notify our staff? Let them know that you're gonna visit, so that was a separate issue.
I never pushed my way into a meeting, I was invited, they asked for a chair. I said, they didn't have one, so I said, it's fine, I'll just sit on the floor.
We talked about this previously, this is not on the agenda, so we're gonna move back over to this agenda.
We're talking about how we run this community, and it matters. It matters how we are running this.
We're going to move back to our agenda item.
Is Shay here? We're just calling everybody. I have a question regarding the police facilities, because Path One is actually the only one that addresses the need for administrative and additional staff spaces without having to expend extra funds on those. So I'm curious, from your perspective, how is the, the proposal here to put the police department in a location like Cypress? Because when I'm thinking about that, Jeremy mentioned earlier, you need extra parking, you need extra space to move around, there, it has to be more centralized, so y'all can get to different campuses faster. So from your perspective, with the police department that we're having to start, how would that work? And do you feel that is what's best for what you need?
Are we specifically talking about Cypress?
That is what's in Path One, so that is what I'm going with right now. Because that is, Path One is the only one that's addressing concerns outside, because we do have administrative space issues that have to be addressed.
Correct. So, um, specifically with Cypress, um, I will say ideally, um, the options are, um, not particularly great for response times. Um, if we have to fit administratively in any building within our district, that would work perfectly fine. But response time-wise, there will be some impactful, um, issues that we may run into. Um, but ideally, um, the location is fine if we have to house there, but response times would be just a tad bit concerning. Um, logistically speaking, uh, we would need to run the route ourself just to make sure that we're able to get from north to south comfortably in an, an emergency, um, response time. Um, but I will also say this, um, having a patrol division will help with that. So I don't think that it's, um, a huge impact, but it's based, it's based on how we place the officers um, on our patrol division to ensure that we can respond accordingly. Seconds count when there's an emergency going on, but you have law enforcement coming from all angles to help you out with those things, so, um, there's a whole lot involved with just your question that you're asking, but significantly speaking, response times are everything, um, in an emergency. So, um, my plan is to, uh, make sure that we're fully equipped and staffed patrol-wise to get to our, um, our north, um, cause if Cypress, we're talking about Cypress, north would be my concern. But that's what we're dealing with when we talk about patrol, um, and making sure that we have, um, a fully-staffed patrol division to respond to those calls.
So let me just ask on this, as I'm looking at the, where this is located, um.
Hey, Paul, we're gonna move this way, so if.
Oh, I thought we were just talking, Jen, we're gonna go back to the.
We're going, so we went back to Francesca.
Can I just finish my question real quick? Cause I just wonder, are we gonna change the speed zones in that community? Cause response times are very important.
So, no, we're not gonna change speed times, but emergency vehicles have lights and sirens that'll, um, help us get to where we need to in a safe manner.
So, um, I'll go ahead and follow up then, since we have police here, but I'm curious about our transportation centers. Since we have a transportation, a bus hub that we're gonna do in the south, and we have one in the north, and we, is there any one in the central? Is there a way where we can look at kind of combining resources here? Um, I, I understand we'll need to still do something, but it's, it's not like, it's, it's putting on some different areas, it's a way of combining resources, and I think when, um, the question was asked, there are operational similarities between the police departments and transportation. Secure prod, uh, parking's one of them, logistics. Um, has that been a conversation that's come up yet?
We are scheduled to meet in a couple weeks, um, with Transportation to discuss, um, dispatching services. So there is some overlap, but the services are totally different, um, they're not the same. Dispatching for bus services versus dispatching for police officers are totally different. So, um, to get some context around that, we do need to sit down and have those conversations, but I, I wanna make myself perfectly clear, the service is very different for emergency personnel versus bus.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, when you have the conversations, if you could just get us back the logistics of what does that look like, right? Is there a way to somehow prop up?
We're gonna work on that for sure, but yes, we'll get you that.
Are, are you talking just about dispatch? Or are you talking about come, put in the police department at one of those transportation hubs?
Yeah, I said, can we take the transportation centers and use a small portion of them for our police force, since they have similar dynamics, maybe able to share resources? And the answer from District was, they do share some, parking may be available, current office space is limited, and would likely require some expansion or renovation, which I'm like, okay. I mean, that's just one way to look at it. Housing them, right? Like, so, uh, we'd have one in north, central, okay, okay, I'd like to see that information.
And, and that is, um, possible, so housing, it's kinda what I said about the patrol response. Um, having some, um, officers stationed north, central, and south will help with. Um, having some, um, officers stationed north, central and south will help with the response times. So that, that is ideal for us to do and officers are, let me just, um, clear this up as well. Officers will not just be sitting in the office, so we will have folks sitting. I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, officers will be out patrolling and making sure, but housing purposes. Their cars are usually what they work out of and so the ma- the vast majority of folks will be on patrol or inside of a campus working. The administrative team will work out of a centralized location and that's what we're talking about when we talk about Cypress.
So community engagement, that is gonna be huge in this piece. My concern is, beginning of the year is insane. Like, I don't even know the first two weeks. I'm lucky my kids get their lunches. How are we going to engage with our parents when they're dealing with all of that? You've got all these different fees, time to sign up as room mom, to sign P T A. I'm just trying to understand because I know I can't even get to some of my kids' events because it's just insane. So how, what is that direct effort gonna be to get to these individuals' community impacted by this and not through thought exchange at all? Like that one-to-one, I'm thinking of that, I don't, I'm just thinking of that meeting we had at Vandergriff. I know that was a really rough one. But it was good because the community had a chance to get up there and have that one-to-one time that many individuals don't get with our administration. And so can you give me an idea what this looks like? Are we gonna have our area su- area superintendents? Bruce, you, like, who's gonna be at these meetings? What is that gonna entail? Or is it gonna be, tell us your thoughts and dreams? Or is it gonna be like, here's a scenario, lem- let me know what this looks like. Are we gonna present rezone maps? Can you give us an idea of what to expect?
I don't have all the details, but, you know, when, the timing is critical. Uh, and there's, if, if you think about from a parent perspective, there's like never a good time. If you tell me when would be a good time with my kiddos, it's like never. But, um, so we have to be very intentional, um, about communicating it early to put it on the calendar. So that's our goal is just to generate when those dates are gonna be. And then the structure, we haven't nailed down what the structure would be. But we have to do it in, in such a way that when everyone does leave that meeting, that they feel that they did have a voice. Um, and the, and we want to have a team there that can listen and can, and answer the questions, right? And so I think it's very appropriate that we have, um, the critical individuals there. I just don't have the perfect structure. But I will tell you that we're gonna be working on that, cause we need to get it out pretty soon, um, way, way ahead of time. So as soon as we have that, we will, we will share what that, what that's gonna look like in the details.
Really, really, I know y'all are dealing with a lot of stuff, but I feel like that that is an important piece to this puzzle and that needs to get out as soon as possible. Because I just, I wanna make sure everyone's gonna have a chance to have their voice heard in this. It's crucial that we meet parents where they're at.
I, I will follow up that comment with the, um, one of the critical factors that you know is who are we engaging and why are we engaging them? And so that's why, you know, hopefully towards the end of this, we, we're, we're left with some, some kinda direction and that will help us formulate that plan.
So I just had one comment when we were talking about the, uh, when we're talking about the bleeding. One of the things that I actually wanted to add in there is, even though our focus right now is on elementary, but that bleeding goes beyond elementary. It happens, it's happening in middle schools, it's happening in high schools. We're hearing from all, uh, from teachers, from principals. So trying to solve a problem at an elementary level makes the middle school experience and the high school experience even more solid. And that's another reason why we're engaging in this. So my question has to do with the slide that, um, that has the cost per school. We looked at Cypress Elementary, they're below the average. And one of the reasons that was given could be, well, some campuses have maybe seniority or something like that. Can something be looked at at a different campuses just to make sure that we can be more efficient? I mean, to see why Cypress was on the green and every single one of the other ones was se- se- um, was way out in the red and, and try and understand what can be done to make them more efficient if possible.
We, we actually looked at that data today and there was no anomalies at all. It was strictly number of teachers, zero to five or, or, or higher, not a lot of teachers over thirty years. I mean, there's a lot of those factors. But everything else was the exact same. The per people allocation was the same. It really, the only thing that was different was, was the salaries of the staff. They had, we compared them to, uh, I'm gonna forget whatever campus had about forty, forty less students. There was two teacher difference. That was the only, only thing that was different, so. Cause we did, we looked at that, we, we poured into that today because we knew that was, uh, Jeremy was very had, uh, good, good foreplay. So we're gonna get a question on this tonight, so we need to know. So, uh, Emily, myself, uh, and, and Agina, the budget, we looked at, at those campuses specifically and poured through that data today. And it, it really, at the end of the day, you know, when we budget, we budget by the year, uh, year, year of service of, of the teacher. And so it was the, just the difference in, in the, in the experience of the teachers compared to some of the other campuses. That, that was the, the main difference. Everything else was, was basically the exact same. There wasn't any special programs difference between the two campuses we looked at. It was like, says a forty student difference. There wasn't, uh, nothing that jumped out that would have made us thought that there was something special or something just out of the whack, uh, or out of the ordinary, just everything was. We compared two campuses that had the exact same, very similar, you know, uh, the special pro- special ed programs and the bilingual, but everything else. There was no, uh, a, a, a program transferred in or anything. We, we kept apples to apples. And so the numbers were very, the only thing that was different was, was the salaries, based on the experience of the, of the, of the, of the teachers and other staff.
All right, I have like ten questions here, but I don't know how many rounds we're gonna do. So I'm like, how do I combine?
We would do as many rounds as it takes.
Um, but, but, but definitely, um, Anna's, Anna's, um, focus on community engagement kinda jumps out at me. And, and what I see is that it's gonna start now, says summer, starts in the summer, um, before the decision is made. And so it's gonna inform the final decision. Um, so I guess just as a part of a comment, um, is that I know right now we're focused on the change and the logistics and those pieces. And, um, what I would kinda challenge us to do is like cast a vision, um, in a way. And like, what does it look like even as, as some of, um, the families that are gonna be impacted? Maybe looking at another school environment or, um, to like s- speak to that. And like sell that vision and, and emphasize the culture, um, that they might, um, be, be going into. Some of the efforts that will take place to welcome some of those new schools if we should choose Path One. Um, so I just like, uh, I just challenge us to like cast, cast a vision. And I wanna like hear a little more about the opportunity and the vision.
I like where you're going with that, cause we have begun those conversations on what that could look like, right? It's all about perspective and trying to get into the perspective of, of those families as well. So it's an important note and we'll, we'll continue to work on it.
Jeremy, while you sit there, can you turn the air down some more? It's getting hotter and hotter and you have the more questions I ask, the hotter I get.
Well, we need to be sitting on a, a layer of ice is, is how it is, um, there, so.
Paul, it's your, you can go.
Um, the early childhood center ran over budget for about four million dollars and it came in front of us a couple of months ago. Um, with the constraints of, of building costs what they are and trying to change schools into something else. I know it's hard to get a guarantee, but, um, is there a way that we can try to mitigate those kind of costs if we were to change something around?
I always think there is. There's, there's, there's always a chance that the more that we can define the scope of work, and that's kinda what we're doing now. Like this is the beginning, the first stage of saying that if there's a direction and a path that we wanna go towards. Then we can generate exactly what that scope of work will look like, right? And then we can look at what we have and what we need to do and see where we land. And then we have the conversations of what, what are we capable of doing, given the parameters that we have? We need that though. It's, it's hard to commit without knowing exactly what we're going to do. But if we're given a direction, that's exactly what we would do. We've, we'd take step one, be like, what would this cost to, to do this? To implement this, um, scenario. And then we bring that back to you and we can have those discussions. Uh, I would, I would've loved to have it in this scenario. I just, I don't know all the details quite yet.
So I think m- most of us trustees, we've been watching in our free time, right? Every other school district's board meetings, kind of watching all this and sending y'all information. And I was watching Fort Worth and, you know, they're about to close, they voted to close eighteen schools over the next four years. But they're still building. And, um, I, I, I know our community's asking questions, help, help us understand. Can you speak to that? Um, why, why we're building in some areas? But also talking about consolidating schools and others? Um, I think, I think that's a really valuable question. I think it's a valid question that our community's asking. And, and so if we could speak to that.
Absolutely. It, it is a good question, just because as, as you just observe. Now, I believe our district is very unique and why it's unique is just how it's laid out. And some of the demographic cycles that we're experiencing and we're seeing those. Uh, the, at, at a time, we needed three elementaries in Steiner Ranch. There's a talk about a fourth at one time. Because of the growth, we're averaging almost two kids up rooftop in that community. So that has happened over time and we build schools again, when and where we need them. Uh, but given the demographic cycle, it's, it's put a challenge in front of us and now that we have to deal with. But just like we were in the south, um, we're now experiencing that in the north because there's growth. We're literally, you can see the growth even in Liberty Hill ISD. We're growing towards each other and because there's opportunity there. And so that's what we're experiencing. Um, so we have different stages of growth. And even regeneration happens at different times. Regeneration can, has already kinda happened in Steiner Ranch. And then, so then the central part will experience that as well. So we're, it's, it's weird because we can see that entire path across our district, which is really unique. And we are used to just fast growth across the board. So now we have so many different demographic cycles going through it. Uh, but in the north, we do have campuses, we have growth, we have campuses, then the next five years are gonna go over a hundred twenty percent capacity. E C C will help in, in kinda the short term. But if we look at doing it strategically and building campuses where we need them in order to provide that relief, that's the purpose behind that. And so we've continually done that. We can see in the projections that we're gonna need that. Um, and so that's, that's what we're doing right now is to accommodate that growth. And we have some growth in very concentrated areas. And sometimes that growth doesn't happen in the middle, it happens on the outskirts of our district, all the way on the edge. And so we have very unique circumstances here in, in our district, um, that have provided us with some challenges. And the biggest one is in front of us and then how to accommodate under enrolled, because we've talked about before. We know how to, to approach the, the growth because we've, we've done it before. A lot of districts have learned from us and how we've done it. Uh, but that, that's why they're, they're still needed because of that, that continued growth in the north.
I appreciate the map back there. So that reflects our over two hundred square miles.
Yeah.
Of Leander ISD.
Abs- absolutely. And you see that, um, that map is a rectangle, it's a vertical rectangle. You know, it's not a square. If it was a square, I think we, we'd have a little bit more flexibility. Just we're very vertical in our alignment across our, our s- uh, district. And so I think that has posed challenges over the time.
Daniel's gonna bring it up for us so that way any of our community watching can, can kinda see that. Yeah, I've often thought like if it was a square, cause there's other school districts, you know, and looking at their layout, it's very different. It's just from one end of the district to the other, right? Which I think a lot of folks in Steiner, when you go up to the admin building, you kinda feel that. That, you know, it's a good forty-five minute drive when there's no traffic. And I think that brings up good questions all around when we're talking about transportation and safety. Um, you know, I want, I want our police to be able to get to our students quickly. But it also brings up a lot of other questions and, and, you know, why we're, I think, why we're building in some areas and having these discussions and others. So, thank you, Jeremy. Francesca?
I have a Path Two question. And this is probably more a, a people question. That is a lot of point fives and point two fives on there, on slide fifty-nine. And while I absolutely understand why a lot of our community is gravitating towards that because it's just switched the staffing. But how do we do this and not completely overwhelm our staff? Like a point two five R five oh four coordinator? I have no idea how you do that with a six percent increase in special education services every year. And then I'm thinking about all the other programs. You've got technology, you've got learning programs, you've got Quest. How are we, if we were to do Path Two, how do you maintain anything going on in any campus? With a point two five or a point five staff member?
Sure. I, I definitely, I'm gonna have to quote a, a lot of people that are a lot smarter than me and say, we're gonna definitely have to rethink what school looks like to be able to do that. Uh, we're gonna have to look at combining positions. Uh, you, you might, and I know Jeremy mentioned the possibility of an assistant principal and instructional coach. There's a lot of reasons that people wouldn't want to do that, uh, but there are some, that it's, it's a possibility. You would have to really look carefully at the skill set of staff members that are in these positions. Uh, we'd have to work very carefully with them to, to help them, uh, gain the experience and back, or have the background that they need to be able to do perhaps multiple positions. We'd also have to look at the campuses that are close together and have some staff members that might work. Transition between two campuses, uh, to do their work. And so there would be part-time on one campus and part-time on another campus to make that happen. Have to really look very carefully at what the program needs are on a campus and rethink how we approach those needs with staffing. A lot of work needs to go into it. It would definitely be a collaborative decision, would be a discussion with leadership. Uh, it's a discussion with the people in those positions. We'd have to really work carefully with them to better understand the scope of work. And assign staff members based on that. It's not perfect. It's definitely a, a decision that we don't wanna make, like Jeremy mentioned. But it's, it's, it also creates at times some opportunities for us to really reexamine the work that's being done and how it's being done. And, uh, those that are working through the, the, the challenges of having a smaller staff would, would work with the H R department and other leaders to, uh, make sure that the work continues to get done. Uh, we might be looking very carefully at maybe not having a point two five. It might end up being, uh, less depending on program needs on that campus, or it could be more depending on program needs at that campus. Thank you.
I, I think this is a really important point because we really are gonna have to reimagine what school looks like and what learning looks like. Um, this, this is not the same as what we're doing now. And that needs to be very clear that, that your point is very well made. Like this is not the same thing, just less. The, it's, it's completely different.
Yeah, and just, I guess, one thing I wanna clarify there is that some of this, some of these things can't be different. You can't do special education differently because it's required on both a state. Uh, no, and absolutely not. And I, I am a special education parent, so I'm looking at a point two five thinking, how?
Just understand that this happens in the state already, in our small rural schools, they already do this. Um, and it's not the same as what we do in Leander ISD. It's just not. And so that's what people have to get used to.
Bruce, that's a whole nother conversation. I'm just telling you, if, we got conversation on that. All right, but let me ask my question. Um, and that's what happens is I have a question and says, somebody says, I'm like, ooh, wait, I might ask this question. Somebody says, somebody says, wait, I got this question. And so. We, no, no, no. Okay. So let me go ahead. I'm gonna try to ask this one right now. Um, so campuses want to fill and they are unique and they are valued. And it is important. They are their community. This is all import- like the things that we're hearing tonight from the speakers. I would agree. I think the board would agree. We appreciate the uniqueness of the community, um, schools. I think the challenge that we're having is, I, I understand, and I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take the discussion on special education and put it over here. Cause that's a, that's a different conversation we need to have.
But it's gotta look really different on campuses when you're talking about, you might be in combined grades, you're, I don't know, maybe your PE, you have PE one day, but not, maybe it's a recess the next. I mean, there's just so many different things when you're thinking about how do you deal with the staffing model? These communities would look different if we choose this, if we consolidate, they look different. No matter what, we're trying to figure out how to address the situation. And so this brings me to my question, which is that if we're gonna have to have change no matter what, the change to me appears, when we talk about structural, to be enrollment. How do we get the enrollment done? Because that's some of the questions, if you have low enrollment over here, it's not balancing out right. How do you get enrollment even? So here's gonna be my question, and I said I wasn't gonna ask it, but I brought my book so I could keep reading just in case. From twenty twenty-one, we did a discussion on attendance district wide rezoning, massive rezoning. Here's the thing, when we did this discussion, we had different numbers back then. And so, um, I feel like it would be possible to do the, like you said, if we were a rectangle, that up there part rectangle, based on the numbers you're showing me, like, well, we can consolidate. Because if we're consolidating campuses and they're driving, that's the same thing as a rezone. Except the rezone happens systematically to get all of our enrollments balanced, to get everything even. And I, I get it, this isn't, there's no good option here. I'm just trying to figure out how do we still balance what we have? And basically when we did this, it's, we were told, yeah, we can actually do the enrollment to rebalance our campuses up there. It wouldn't work for the South, it won't, because we talked about transportation and there was a lot of conversations there. But I just wanna know, um, what does that look like? Now, given the information and how much wiser we are, has that been discussed? Cuz I'm, I'm, I'm wanting a partial pathway number four here. And I, I'll also say, when we did this, it said, the projection numbers reveal, be necessary because of increased enrollment to rezone the district wide again in four to five years. Uh, that's, that's why this was a non-starter for me also in part. But it seems like our enrollment's changed and we could possibly section off parts and rebalance. Because that's what we're trying to do is address enrollment.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we, we have discussed this, just, you know, internally, like, what, what does this mean? How does it even fold into this conversation? I think most of the constraints and the limitations that were identified then still exist and some of them are exacerbated. And so our enrollment is not what they probably thought in twenty twenty-one, it's not what, what, right? And so that is exacerbated. And so what we were trying to solve just became more difficult because we have more seats that we are trying, would need to fill. And so while it would be a wa- wild, wild exercise, you are really having to try to take up and just push them all the way down. And then, and then we he- we reach really big gaps, once you get to six twenty and try to pu- and pull them down. And so very disruptive, uh, but it, I respect you for bringing it up, right? Because from a community standpoint, those watching are like, well, why aren't we considering just rezoning? Um, it, it would be very difficult to start bringing all of those kids down because I, I don't know what that would equate to from a transportation standpoint, but, but that's a lot of buses. Um, and, and we struggle even finding, uh, you know, drivers currently, so.
So I can't ask my part two, I'm gonna have to hold. So that's part of my story, I'll have to do my next chapter when it comes around.
Okay, um, I want, yeah, I'm, I'm excited for that one because I remember what, Twin Creeks neighborhood went all the way down to Vandergriff? Yeah, that's insane. Okay, slide fifty-nine. I'm gonna go back to the, uh, proposed low enrolled campus staffing model. So even if, um, per the, I don't wanna say recommendation, but what y'all presented tonight was Steiner Ranch, Lower Bush and River Ridge, right? If we were to repurpose Steiner Ranch to a pre-K, you still see, uh, Bush and River Ridge, um, at this low enrolled model. So it's, I mean, it's inevitable that we're gonna have to have this low campus enrolled model. And then when I start looking at the bigger picture, right? I'm only looking at our twenty twenty-five demographic, there's like ten campuses that are under five hundred. So I mean, I guess for me is, when we're talking about this, we really don't have a choice but to do both, it seems. Like it'll be a purp- like kind of both, a little bit of repurpose, but we're gonna have some campuses, it looks like, that are gonna be operating under this, uh, low enrolled campus model. And so I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so we, this is the first step to this, correct? We're getting our, we're getting the feel of what this looks like, you know? But regardless, the South side's still gonna have this low enrolled campus model. So my question is, say we, I, I don't know how to say this the right way. If we, Path One or Path Three is like kind of the combined thing that the board goes to, right? Repurposing some, but low enrolled models. Will we start those low enrolled campus staffing models for Bush and for River Ridge? And then also the other campuses that are under five hundred? Will we start those low en- model, low enrolled models the following year in twenty-seven? Did I make sense? I hope I know. Like, we know those low enrolled models are here, right? They're not going away and we can repurpose all those campuses we want, but they're still gonna exist. When are we gonna start that staffing model is what I'm trying to understand? Because it's, it's coming.
I would like to start that staffing model as soon as is feasible with enough notice. So be- because of our budget situation, we, we need to do that as quickly as possible. I don't, we can't do it for twenty-five, twenty-six, but I think we can with planning, do it for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So then, we know that we have these other under enrolled campuses, I, I named them at the last board meeting, but I'm, I'm, I don't wanna name them again cuz people are gonna get nervous, but are we gonna look at doing those to a lower en- old model? Like for instance, um.
So, so that's, that's the purpose, hold on, I, I don't think you need to name them because that's the purpose of having a district-wide model that looks at the numbers. Because then as campuses drop into those, then you look at them automatically, so they know where they lie.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, like, we weren't just starting with just these four campuses and then we wait.
This, this becomes a district-wide
I love, okay.
staffing guideline that we use for the whole district.
And it'll trigger not this year, but the next year, correct? Okay, thanks.
Gosh, I did, same thing happened to me, I had a question, but now I have to have a part two to Anna, so I'm gonna have to come back. But, so I, I agree, right? I think it, it has to be some type of hybrid because we're gonna have to do this, but we have to go to a low enrolled model as well. What does that look like? How do we think about that? How do we adjust that to allow schools that have the potential to grow with open enrollment? We know that there's some campuses that might have some potential to expand, depending on where they are on this boundary, right? And there's some, we've seen it in other districts that do open enrollment. It has a lot to do with where that school sits, in like, in a physical location, adjacent next to other districts, things like that. How do we do this low enrollment model, but still support campuses that are pursuing open enrollment? And, and giving them the flexibility to, you know, to increase and pull those students into there so that we can perhaps pull that school out of a low enrollment model? What, what would that process look like?
Yeah, I would, I would say just real quick that, you know, I wouldn't think a staffing guideline would restrict, um, you know, any potential growth in the future, right? The thing about a staffing guideline is it's, it's basically thresholds that you navigate. And so if you were to increase your enrollment and it work your way outside of that threshold and, and go up to the next, um, next level, then the associated staffing would come with that, right? And so I think that's where we, we get into the ratios, um, a little better. It's easier to adjust, uh, given, given the enrollment, from, from year to year.
I think some of the fear that I've heard from administrators a- at some of these campuses is that we are not going to allow them to grow and not allow them to expand in staff, but we're not gonna allow transfers. We're, we're gonna say, this is what our current teaching capacity allows. And not be willing to increase that teaching capacity to allow open enrollment to really flourish. And I think all of us have heard that from administrators and right now in regards to transfers. And so there is that, that fear or that concern of how that's going to play out once we, you know, bring in this policy of open enrollment. So maybe that's something the policy committee thinks about too, you know, when we talk about open enrollment. But I'm curious, um, you know, I think just hearing that makes me feel a little bit better, but I wanna make sure that, that we have the protocols in place to be able to support those campuses to grow.
Yes, the only caveat I'll give is there's some logistical complexity in that because of how you have to add staff and how many students you have to add to get enough revenue to be able to add staff, does that make sense? So if I open enroll and I have two sections of kindergarten in my campus, but I already have forty-four kids in there, but I only open enroll five more kids, I have to open a third section and add a teacher at kindergarten, but that, the, this five kids doesn't give me enough revenue to pay for this teacher, so.
I guess what, I've seen other districts, they have that open enrollment application window. And the way they, you know, some of the other districts have said is, this is the close. And then they look at what they have and they tell people, it's based on, in order for our funding structure, we need to have, to make this, you know, to make this work for the school, we're going to have to have at least fifteen transfers of sixth graders in order to be able to, to do this.
What I should have started that conversation with was, our core value is to fill up all of our schools if possible. Um, that, that's our ideal, right? Is to fill every seat that we have available. And so that's always gonna be where we're gonna try to work, um, we just have to figure out how to do that well.
It wasn't my turn and I jumped in, I'm sorry, Nikosi's looked at me like, Gloria, I got, I, I got so eager with hers. I'm so sorry, Shaday, I'm sorry.
So one of the, um, comments that we heard tonight was around, um, the entire Steiner Ranch Elementary being made into a pre-K. And for the other two schools that are still gonna be under enrolled at some point in the near future, even with the com- combining those two, um, or combining two schools in one. Um, could, the recommendation or suggestion was to have pre-K on the remaining two campuses? Or at least on those two, the other two campuses? But my question really is, what else can be done? Or, or how successful do we expect that pre-K, six hundred kids plus in, in that one elementary school? Um, or what else can be done with that school?
Uh, so there are unknowns, right? I mean, we're going, there's a lot of unknowns in the conversations that, that we're having. Um, but the one known that we do know is that there's declining enrollment. And so, um, that availability that you see in the campus, even if you tried to co-locate, will continue to increase over time. And so when you look at that Path One for that area, it was looking at trying to balance enrollments above sixty percent on as many campuses as possible and that equates to two. Um, and so we don't know right now on, on how successful that would be. And we imagine, uh, that there would be, um, interest and it's, but it's gonna be very specific in how we im- implement it because there's certain needs in certain communities and areas that we need to make sure that we meet. Um, and so there are families that do pre-K and kinder private in that area. So what do they need and could we provide that on, on that campus? And so there's further research, um, that will be needed. Um, but we don't know the exact number of, of what that o- could equate to. We know how many pre-kers we have in that community right now. Um, and we've also talked about though, how can we increase that opportunity for pre-K? And hope that they have, either remain in our district, you know? Or even from an open enrollment standpoint, become part of our district and then, and, and stay, and stay with us. So it creates that opportunity that we've talked about before, um, of access to, to, to more than, than what we're doing currently.
There are complications with the legislation that's in House Bill Two on tuition-based pre-K as well. So we're watching and trying to make sure that we understand that carefully and what's possible or not. Um, and also then what potential partnerships with private entities could look like.
Uh, for, for the, uh, the Steiner Ranch, um, scenario in Path One, are, would only the Steiner Ranch Elementary School families be rezoned? Or would that entire area be rezoned?
Good question, and so, you know, kinda surface level, we look at the Steiner Ranch zone community, right? And try to balance that, but, uh, you know, within that scenario, if that was to move forward, then there would still need to be some, uh, tenant zoning process that would go through in order to identify the best path forward to, to meet those efficiencies, right? And so there is a step involved in there in the fall in order to implement that in the most efficient way. So it'd go through a ve- very similar pro- attendant zoning process that we typically, it just probably wouldn't take as long because it's a, it's a, a focused, um, effort.
I have a pretty, I have a pretty basic question for you. And it really goes to, to change your mentality. Is a glass half-full or is a glass half-empty in keeping the schools open? You know, it's a mindset, you know, you talk about negativity, you talk about low enrollments, you're talking about we're going downhill, you're talking about, oh, woe is me, does that attract people to you? Closing schools or consolidate them, building new schools, and we're gonna raise attendance? I want to challenge you to change your mindset. What I wanna hear is simply that you're, you're coming here, hey, this is how we're gonna keep the schools open, more than this is how we're gonna change all the schools. Because I've said this before to many people, you know, we, we married this neighborhood school model, there is no divorce, no matter what we do, right? Even in the talk of it, because I, I was just at a, a, a graduation a week and a half ago. And there was a school at Austin ISD, it was a middle school. And when we drove up, my kids were like, what is this? Is this where the graduation is? I'm like, no, I think it's the church next door. But we drove around it, they had closed it three years ago. There was graffiti on some of the homes nearby, they had sold off all of their equipment. It was sad, that's what my kids said. I don't want that for us, I want you to try, do your best to change that from a glass half-full to a glass, I'm sorry, half-empty to half-full. Because it, more and more, it, it sounds more half-full or half-empty, I, I want it to be half-full. I'm, I even keep Freudianly saying, I want you to think about it, half-full, half-full, how do we keep going up? How do we get the attendance up? How do we get people to say, I want to be at Leander ISD?
Yeah, and, uh, so it's, it's a very important comment because, uh, we do want this to be perceived as, uh, as a, as a half-full conversation. Uh, but it's very challenging, right? We're, we're faced with a big challenge that we've never faced before. And so administratively, we don't, again, we don't want any particular thing. We wanna bring paths and, and options to consider, and some of those considers, uh, considerations would go that way. But given the challenges and from financial stability, yes. And I'll tell you, so me personally, uh, I've been a part of this broader community for forty, over forty years. Um, I, I played little dribbles basketball in every one of these campuses, in Cypress Elementary and Fabian Elementary. I did all that, all my friends went to these schools. I had friends in Steiner Ranch that drove all the way to Leander High School back in the day. And so I know how important these campuses are to these communities. Uh, I know these schools are more than just buildings, right? I mean, they're, they're home to traditions and, and memories and relationships that all these families have built over the years. And so I know this is very difficult for them and I know it's very difficult for yous, it's very bit difficult for us. Um, but it's a conversation we have to have. And what we wanted to do administratively is just put some details out there so we can make a decision knowing that we have to do something. And, um, and maybe the solution isn't exactly here within the, within these slides. Um, but we, we do have information that we hopefully can inform, uh, the, the, the path forward and the next steps.
Your timeline is just really fast, that's my concern.
Gotcha, thank you.
I'll skip since I jumped last time, so I'll move back over to, I cut last time, so Francesca.
How are we balancing the equity piece of this? I mentioned it in the last meeting.
I mentioned it in the last meeting and a comment that I get a lot from community members in the over-enrolled schools is that we're doing all these things to immediately fix the under-enrolled. We're, you know, shifting things and moving stuff around and, you know, like Dr. Gearing said, regardless of what path we go with, things aren't going to look the same. So how are we balancing the work we're doing here for the under-enrolled campuses with the work we have to be doing for the over-enrolled campuses? And to make sure that all of the students across the two hundred square miles and our staff members are going to have the same access to programs and academics and buildings even.
I think it, you know, at the core is that student experience, but I think we can't forget about staff experience um as as well. And so if we look at what resources do they have, whether it be in uh low enrollment or um uh over utilization um a- as well. I think we, our educational model is very scalable, right? And so that's our primary goal, is not to take away resources, with like the staffing model, we're not trying to take away resources. We're just trying to distribute them and allocate them in a more efficient efficient way. And so I I don't believe that we have um any sacrifice of resources or access to what our students and our staff need. Um, whether they're at a over-enrolled or an under-enrolled campus. I think that's kinda the core of what we've been trying um trying to do, is to ma- maintain that access the 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 entire time. So it is a core value that in a in a in all the work that we've done.
And I'd like to piggyback on that, we're about to start engaging in a collaborative process with stakeholders to really examine staffing guidelines that not only address are of course our smaller campuses, but address the needs of our larger campuses. So we're working with the stakeholders in those larger uh campuses with higher enrollment to better understand what their needs really are, so we can achieve that important balance.
Sorry, great, it's just along the same lines, are you having that conversation all across, even with second and secondary level as well?
We will be, yes, we're s- we're starting that process, it's a a process, it's a big project that is starting. Our goal is to be finished with those discussions with, that would include secondary campuses uh uh by Thanksgiving.
Alright, so I did my whole buildup question, I was coming back to part two and gosh darn, people asked other questions, and so now I'm all all lost and and trying to figure out what's the best one now. So I just wanna, before I can move on, I think I have to make sure I resolve this in my head. Because one of the things we're talking about is the 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 funding, how do we better like make sure we're not, I don't know, spending more, although we're not gonna use closure for our budgetary. Still something here on our sheet is like how much do do under-enrolled schools cost? And I wanna go back to the the Cypress model. And I just, I need to close this in my head so I can ask the next questions I need to ask. Which is when you're looking at the the fact is the faculty is actually what dictated that cost. Then does that become something we adopt on under-enrolled campuses or across the district? Or is that something you start thinking about? Can you do those dictates of, and I I I think the answer is no, I just need to hear the answers. Uh, you know, a teacher who's been around for thirty years, you can have a teacher at fifteen years, I mean, I just wanna understand. Because we're trying to use numbers of staffing to say this is the model that makes lets us operate efficiently. But what you're showing me here is no matter if you pick a point five, a point five of a staff model has been here for thirty years versus a point five, somebody who's been here for like just now. Those are gonna look different, so the point five, even though we went to all this work to do the new staffing guidelines so that it's affordable, it's still not. So can you help me just un- cause I have so many more questions, but I think I have to get that solved before I can move on.
Certainly, and it's a a variable that you wanna address. Uh, it's a variable that we have to really examine, but I and I've been part of a a staffing model in the past where you you like principals were assigned a level of experience that they could hire for. Uh, because of the costs associated with someone that had more experience. We want every classroom to have the very best choice available. I don't wanna limit principals to, hey, you can only hire prin- teachers that have three years' experience or less. It's not an avenue that I'd like to go down.
And as we're saying this, uh just because we're just looking at numbers, Cypress has wonderful teachers. We're not saying they didn't have their best choices either. This is just the way the numbers fell out, and so I just wanna make sure I'm exploring that. Just because, you know, there's lots of different parts here, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what happens. So the numbers, point five, point two, they may end up different. But we still feel overall on average, it doesn't always turn out that way. But that's the best way for us to control as we get under-enrolled, is that correct? It's a staffing model, not saying
Correct.
number of years or whatever.
Absolutely, and and there are countless examples in Leander ISD of teachers that have very little experience that are just eh eh expertly prepared for the position, even though they have relatively low experience. Definitely not discounting that that group of uh teachers. Uh, we want our principals, we want our decision-makers when it comes to hiring, to be able to hire the best candidate for the position. Regardless of experience.
Th- this is one situation where looking at the bigger averages actually m- makes more sense. And I'm I'm listening to myself saying that, that's not what I'd usually say. Because it it doesn't, when you look at individual campuses, you see those differences. But overall is what our budget is on the overall, not on these individuals.
So comment and question, I do, um, back when Francesca was talking about the point five art coordinator, right? Uh, point two-five, that is already our reality now, just so y'all know. Cause we're so understaffed in special education, so that is a reality, so it's not gonna be a change. Like our school psychologists right now, their caseloads are insane, and they're usually split, I wanna say, two to three campuses. And so this reality already exists for our students in special education, so I just want to make that clear. So, I mean, we're still doing great, I mean, we're giving services, but anyway, that's, I just need to get that out there. Okay, this is in regards to your pre-K thing, um, so Steiner Ranch paid pre-K. Um, my question is, we know we have our pre-K hubs, y'all, y'all know I love our pre-K hubs. When I look at that section of the district, we have Grandview Hills Elementary that has a pre-K three element childhood community. And then you have Laura Bush that is an early childhood community for pre-K early, pre-K early four. And so my question is, with Steiner Ranch becoming a pre-K campus, are we looking to combine those pre-K hubs to Steiner Ranch? And removing those pre-K hubs from Bush and Grandview Hills? Because to me, that seems like, one, a great inclusion model, right? You're, this is, it's mandatory pre-K we're doing. And it'll helpful at the campus because I'm trying to, what happens when that campus gets only a hundred applicants? And we only have a hundred kids in this building that we just kicked, we removed, I don't wanna say kicked out, sorry. We removed, no, we rezoned to the nearby campuses. Help me like walk me through that process. Cause I want it to work, y'all know I love early childhood, that is the key to a strong foundation for our students, but how will that work?
I think there's a pathway there. I know, I know the numbers of Stein, uh Laura Bush pretty well right now. I don't know off the top of my head, um, our our pre-K Gran- Grandview Hills uh numbers. And um so it is part of a pathway that could get us there. So there's a good couple of different ways that we could actually do this and and how we structure that. Um, you know, just given what constraint we're actually gonna have in the end, uh given the legislation, but.
Cause I I look at it like the ECC off of Housley, it doesn't have a name, I wanna make that very clear. Um, I mean, cause that model, granted, it's gonna, when it opens, it's going to be at capacity, right? But we have these pre-K hubs in this center, and I, for me, it's like, not center, I'm sorry, south. If we're gonna really get behind this pre-K model, why can't we kind of, it's not gonna look the same. Each ECC is not gonna look the same in the north and the south, I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna go forward through this, we're given it the foundation it needs, and we're not setting it up for applicants, you know, a hundred people come in and it's like, what did we do? When we have these pre-K hubs here, how do we, how do we utilize our sources in the best possible way to really give it that early childhood like experience?
It it it's a it's a reasonable approach that we look into.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out which question next.
Well, how's your with Fabian? So it's showing that the enrollment um without pre-K, well, for this year, enrollment without pre-K is about uh for K through twelve is three hundred students. Um, um, K through five, sorry, K through five is three hundred students. And next year is supposed to be about two hundred and fifty six or so. Um, or is it the first year, I I don't have it up right now. But the only reason why it's showing up as a larger number is because that was set up as a pre-K. Yeah, that one, yeah, as a pre-K hub. Um, we do have another one down the ru- road, which is um Deer Creek. And so when it comes to the K through five section, like what is the minimum number that we are looking at? Like that we're just willing to accept as a, like, even if we go through, say, um, path two. Where it says one through three hu- three forty-nine, it's like, how low can we go?
It's a very, very good question. Um, and both Fabian could experience at K through five and River Ridge as as well over over time. Uh, I I don't know specifically what the floor is um on on what that what that would look like. So.
And just a related question, because they do have the dual language um pre-K over there at Fabian. Um, and Reed is a dual-language campus. Um, were they, uh, is there, has there been thought to put the dual-language just pre-K portion at Reed? To be on the dual-language campus?
Uh, there could be a possibility, uh they they have capacity in order to do so. Uh, you know, from this standpoint, if Fabian, it it's two fifty-six, well, you know, if it was to go path two, we'd probably retain the pre-K on on that campus, that's one thing to consider if you kept it just as is. But two fifty-six is a very, very low number.
It's me again. Uh, yeah, I'm um, I'm I'm getting some closure tonight. Um, you know, I think Trish continues to, she always puts me like the the why, and so mine is more of a statement than anything of like, I just keep asking myself, like, what's the why to make sure I'm grounding myself? And um, you know, I I don't think I'm being hyperbolic when I'm like, like, it really is to ensure that LISD like exist in ten years. Um, and we mentioned that um, you know, doing nothing is isn't, I put it, it is an option. I think we've concluded that it's like the worst option. Um, and so I just, you know, I I wanna, as 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 we think about the the fa- the community engagement, the things that really line up to me is one, just ensuring um that we lay out the implications of each option and um and kind of, you know, as it as it pertains to the long-range success of of LISD, um, I think there's an ask of the community to um and and I'm so empathetic for each individual family's kind of experience um with their community schools. Um, and and I think like clarifying the ask, like, what do we, what do we need and what's the ask of of our community? Um, and certainly as it pertains to not only like what's best for their family, but like what's the ask of how they can support LISD and 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 that community? And so just like being very clear about what the ask is um for each each member of our community. And so um I think I'm I'm good with the conversation. Um, but that that just, yeah, that stands out to me, just like be very clear of like what each option gives us. And why, like answering the question, why would I choose path one? What is gonna be the benefit to the long-term success of LISD? Like what does this, each option position us to do? Um, and then being very clear with each community and like have a call to action and a real ask of the community, like what do we need them to do?
Paul, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I've got lots of questions. But it is one of those interesting parts where, you know, what what what's our lane, we've talked about that before, you, a lot of you have mentioned it before. And I've and I've learned over the last, you know, couple of years being on this board. But I don't like knee-jerk reactions. I I said before, I don't like the timeline. I would love to see more information on scenario five, scenario six about what other budgetary cuts we could do to keep these schools. Cause what I don't want is that we close down schools, we consolidate schools, and then all of a sudden we have a resurgence in those areas. Because we just do, you know, oftentimes that happens. And once again, going back to what I had asked before about having the um changing your mindset of a half-full, and that's kinda like the, you know, can we just get another scenario where we do some more creativity, uh cuts, services? Um, you know, this, I di- I didn't pay for this, this was paid for by the community and I am grateful to eat it. But that's, you know, one of the few things, again, can we do more to cut a few things that will really add up? So that that would be my next question, you know, and that's a, like I said, it's a deeper question. But I don't have all the details to those answers, but I'm hoping you guys will.
I wanna say, I I appreciate all of this data, I know we've been asking for a lot of this for a long time. And and I don't think it's knee-jerk, I think a lot of community have actually saying the opposite to us right now, why are y'all taking too long, like, you know, make a decision. And I think it's cause it's a hard decision and and, you know, I I remember a few months ago, I said, I'm really confident that this legislative session's gonna do something different. And Trish, you can say, I told you so. We we had a discussion and I told her, no, I think you're wrong. I think that this is gonna be the session that they're really gonna come out strong because of all the pushback they got two years ago. I really, really believe it. And Trish was like, Gloria, I I I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen. And and here we are, right? And so we're at this point now, after two years of us talking about declining enrollment and and, you know, what we're gonna do. I think we've talked about how we're gonna engage with the community, with parents and with staff. I mean, with parents and students, you know, and and those different things. What I'd like to talk a little bit about is staff. Um, what what it means when when we say, you know, um, we're gonna combine. And I think, you know, what happens to those staff? I think we went through some of that this year, right, as we um increased classroom size. Can you talk about what, how this year, as we combine classroom size, we reduce the number of positions on campuses, but what we did with attrition? And what this would look like? Because I think a lot of it is, we have great staff and how do we, how do we take care of our staff through these models? So if you could talk a little bit about that.
Certainly, uh it really does start with, you know, we're having collaborative conversations about uh what will our staffing look like next year, what will our staffing guidelines uh look like next year? Those conversations have to be anchored in really the 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 preferences and the uniqueness of each campus. We have to really explore what the campus needs are going to be at the different sizes. Uh, and then, you know, lessons learned from this year. Uh, obviously, we wanna make sure that uh we give opportunity for for our stakeholders to have a voice in the process. Uh, make sure that our our decisions are are made well in advance, but but like the decisions about what surplusing looks like are are clearly articulated to everyone that's involved. And so there 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 are lots of opportunities there for us to make sure that we include everybody in the conversation. This isn't new for Leander ISD, I mean, Leander ISD has surplus staff members. As far back as I could find, Leander has had the surplus staff members for a whole different reason. Uh, because they were opening new campuses, and when you open new campuses, you shift enrollment, so your staffing needs to shift, which means you have to sur- surplus staff. And so that part's not new, but that that just the the reasons for it have changed. And so that part's not new, but that that just the the reasons for it have changed.
So this year, when we increased staffs, but we increased classroom size. Um that gave us surplus. And can you, just so that, you know, a lot of the stuff we saw in the media right after that was Leander I S D is. You know, um gonna be letting go of over two hundred employees and stuff. And what I've heard as soon as this was out is, oh my gosh, we're gonna let go of another X number of employees. Um I think people don't understand kind of what surplus looks like and how attrition works and so. As, you know, different media outlets were saying that we were letting go of two hundred staff this year. Because of increasing the classroom size, what did that, can you talk to us a little bit about what that actually looked like? And what attrition and how surplus works?
Uh it's it's unfortunate that the media did uh did uh share inaccurate information. Uh because we didn't lace teachers off and and when we increased classroom sizes, uh there there. Teachers were surplus, but we use attrition to surplus. So when we had teachers that were resigning otherwise, uh you. Leander's a large school district with historically has over three hundred teachers resign every year. Uh when you have two hundred teachers surplus and you have three hundred vacancies, you have places for each of those teachers. Uh which is the case this year, we've placed, we've placed all of them. We have still, I think, eight or nine surplus uh teachers remaining on that list.
So we imagine if we did a low enrollment type of projection here, our priority would be. You know, um we would go into surplus with those staff and we wouldn't, our priority through H R would be to find, find them. A another spot in L I S D.
Absolutely, that's a commitment that we have to our teachers, to our contracted employees.
Thank you. Francesca, it's back to you.
One of the largest concerns that I'm seeing in the communications from the community is traffic. The streets around Nomin are smaller than they are around Cypress. And then relocating the Fabian students to West Side leads to increased traffic there. And same with, I think I mentioned it earlier, moving all the the Steiner Ranch Elementary kids back. Um where traffic does get very congested back there between Bush and River Ridge. What were the conversations around the impacts to the traffic flow?
Yeah, and so if we if we look at, we can start with the, you know, the Nomin versus um, you know, Cypress. You know, model, there's a couple of different ways you can look at it, you know, from a Nomin standpoint, it's um its posture is facing a community. And so like Brighton Bend, those are local community streets, right? It's community roads. Uh when we look at Cypress, um its posture faces um El Salito Parkway, which is an actual arterial road. That basically connects you to other thoroughfares like six twenty. And so given that um with around Nomin and understanding within a fifteen to twenty minute window. There ain't a campus in this school district that doesn't experience traffic to some degree, but you're not, you're not. Blocking an arterial road like you would be at, let's say, El Salito. Both campuses have reasonable um onsite. Roads, you know, even Nomin has a considerable amount of of uh s- um roads built onto the the site. Uh but one thing to know is that, yes, it can get congested. But these campuses are built for eight hundred kids, right, eight hundred students. We also do have. Uh you know, bus transportation as well, um and so it will be a consideration. Uh and but looking at traffic as a whole, we can't get away from traffic congestion. But looking at what that impact is, in my experience, you know, when you start impacting arterial roads, those are. Tough conversations with municipalities and so if you can avoid that, um it's it's more favorable. Obviously, yes, Cypress does have one road that comes off of El Salito back into the to the neighborhood. Um but we did look at that, uh you know, Steiner Ranch, it's 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 difficult to get around, having to get on Quinlan Park and and drive around, but. We've long, long time ago made it a priority to put as much queue space on our property and our sites as as possible. And a lot of our campuses do have that. Fabian, not one of those, you know, just being as old as it is. Uh but it's always been a priority in our in our designs, so uh we did, we did look at it, can't completely eliminate it. But tried to think of mitigation efforts and which campus can serve the best.
Yeah, and our, I will add that our campuses do a really good job with that. I know my son, when he was in elementary, was at. An over, over enrolled school and we had Williamson County out there, we had Travis County out there when I was a crossing guard. And it was a lot, but they had that cleared out in twenty, thirty minutes every single day.
Yeah, I'll tell you that when we experience this, we we meet with campus leaders and try to, if we need to. Change the way in which we do drop off, which we do pick up, those are conversations that we do have, like, let's look at this. You know, don't just go with what's always been in place, maybe there are op- opportunities and so we can walk those campuses. We've done a couple already this year in in preparation for next year, trying to solve um some some issues that they've seen, so. It's the same approach we would take with these campuses.
Okay, so um. Let me just go ahead and kind of get to where I'm I'm looking at. I I like the path three. I know that your path three is an example, and so let me tell you what I like and what I don't like about path three. Um because it's a hybrid, right, in this example, so here's, here's what I'm looking at, is that. We pointed out or asked some questions earlier about bond dollars and how we could build those district facilities and those those. Things that we did with bonds, i- are there other ways to do it than put them onto a campus, right? What I, what I don't want to do is feel like. There's this weird give and take, where is it like, oh, we need a camp, we need a district facility, so let's put it on a campus, or here's a campus that's empty. It's a district facility. I think we have to be very careful about how we do this process and so. Mentally for me, if I pulled district facilities off the table and I say, oh, we could redo this somehow, right? Is that the Leo three story or I don't, I don't, again, don't know, but we move that off. Then what I'm looking at here is when I look at these campuses, i- i- it 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 pulls up to my question then. Which ones do we need to implement staffing guidelines on? Which ones that even after we implement a staffing guideline, we're still gonna have to do something on, and I think we talked about that tonight, I think that's. The south schools, I think we have three schools and so it looks to me like two of them stay. And we still might, that that solves it for now, that doesn't mean we might not implement staffing guidelines later, but that's what we have for right now. And then we have Steiner Ranch is what it looks like, would be a pre K or a public private par- something. There, we've gotta talk about. I would like to know then, what does that something, now that legislation's wrapping up? What does that look like? Cause you can't just leave an empty facility. And there's gonna be strict things that we have to use these facilities for, um depending upon deeds, restrictions, all sorts of things. Right? And so we need to talk about thoughtfully what that looks like in that place. And then um my question for you is, then what do we do? Is it, are we implementing staffing guidelines then on Fabian if we don't put a district facility in there? What would be the other options? What would that look like? And have you all thought about that?
So I think, I think we put some things in front of you um a- as a board, but understanding that there's other ideas. And we wanna discuss those and as a board, if you say, if you're you're thinking about other considerations, then we can, we can, we can have a conversation um around those. But it kind of depends on what direction that y'all wanna go. Again, path three gives you some flexibility. Uh you, you've talked about one scenario i- in the south and um it's hard though to have those conversations without identifying needs. Right? And so if you identify a need, what is the solution for that? If you're not gonna utilize facility optimization, what is the solution for that need a- as well? We don't wanna, we don't wanna forget about that. Um but we're open to to conversations, you know, different from that example. But we we just wanted to kind of lay out some some structure to start.
Let me just make sure I heard you correctly. Not asking questions, make sure I heard this right, which is that um. You, when you were, when you, when you gave us this example, you're saying if we don't do a staffing guideline, you wanted to show us what the other. What we could do with that facility, um so you're not foregoing that we could, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
Okay, okay.
I want to make sure I heard well.
Yeah, maybe, may I, I need to do better job of answering your question. Uh and and so one thing to consider is that we have a list of campuses here. I'd want everyone to be clear that. Um you know, this may be something that the district needs to consider even moving forward. There may be other campuses down the road. Right, that come, right? And so what processes, what procedures, what structure are there in place that, so that needs to be consideration as as well. That's where the staffing guidelines kind of come into play uh a little bit, so I'm not saying don't consider staffing guidelines. Um but what I'm saying is that if there's a need, say like New Hope, then Fabian is that, is that place. And that's why it's on here, cause that's, that's what the solution was in providing a home um for uh New Hope High School. But uh we also include staffing guidelines because we do believe that those still need to be in place because you, we're gonna have to apply those eventually down in the south.
So it, so if we don't do New Hope. In Fabian, then it wouldn't be on this list or would still be on this list?
Basically, she's asking if the need was the driver for putting the school on there, right?
Yeah, I just wanna, oh, I just wanna be.
That's what she was asking.
Yeah, just, I just wanna be clear that if 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 we don't, if we're not going to put New Hope in Fabian, let's assume. Maybe New Hope, we have some other brilliant idea that comes up, then Fabian doesn't fall off the list. We still have. We still need to implement the guidelines.
Y- yes, or close it and do something else with it. So so we've made some suggestions about what we think we can do with them right now based on the needs that. You know, we talked about before, but if not that, then what? And and that's gonna come into play in Steiner Ranch, cause if we have to repurpose Steiner Ranch and we end up not being able to do pre K for some reason, then what? And then later on, if other campuses fall below and we decide to repurpose them, then what are we gonna do with them? Because we have to decide that before we repurpose them.
So when I came into this meeting, I was definitely like, alright, path one, let's do this, we're saving money, it's gonna be great. But then as I s- started really getting and digging into the data and really looking at it, I feel like we have no, like. The inevitable is a ha- pathway three, right? Unless we start really closing schools and selling campuses, which we are not gonna do. And so I guess for me, no, well, yeah, we're not in that dire, we're in a budget crisis, but I don't wanna go down that road. But I guess what I'm trying to say is regardless whether we repurpose Fabian or Cypress. We still are gonna be in this hybrid path three because of the situation we're in the south. And there's only so many purpose, so many buildings we can repurpose into something, and so we're gonna have these other, other enrolled campuses. That are gonna hit the staffing guidelines and so I think for me, I'm gonna try to close this out. This is what I'm looking for, this is my direction to y'all and y'all can start. Is I think tonight what Trish brought up with the Transportation Department and how we have them in three different areas, north, south and central. That's a fantastic idea to possibly put our police station and make them hubs there, cause we're really concerned about time getting to campuses. I mean, I could not imagine trying to get an emergency from Cypress to Glenn High School. Y'all, that is a thirty minute drive. Or to Steiner Ranch, I mean, that's a long drive with no traffic and so I really would like for us to see what the possibilities that that looks like in regards to. The building or model, what is, what is that gonna do to those? I don't want it to impact transportation in a negative way, but. If we have these facility and spaces in the right space, then can we explore that? Wha- what does that look like? The other thing is our pre K program, y'all know I'm a big early education advocate. I'm excited for this E C C in the north, cause we know it's needed, it's gonna help alleviate, I think that needs to be said, alleviate some of these campuses at the north. That are at ninety and above percent. We heard, we heard concerns tonight from parents, but we have campuses right now that are at ninety percent. And they're functioning fantastic, but everybody, you know, it's still a little, little tight. So we know E C C is gonna help and so I think for me is, I wanna see what that pre K model in Steiner Ranch is gonna be like, because. It's gonna not look the same in the north, this, I feel like we have a one shot to make this pre K enrollment at Steiner Ranch work. And that's why I wanted to see if we could get Laura Bush and Graham Bu and make that a hub, but really, cause to me, that's gonna be the starting point to see if we do it else around the district. Cause that's, we're still gonna have this under enrolled problem. Staffing guidelines, y'all, Casey, you know, I'm like a big fan of this right now. But it can't just be our under enrolled campuses, I've gotta see our our, also our campuses at high capacity. Y'all know, I I promised Bruce I would not bring it up today, but. That to me is my big concern in all of this. I want each of our students to have, they're not gonna have the same experience, but man, I really want our kids. For instance, you know, in S A S S, being able to get that thirty minutes that they get at this under enrolled campus, to be able to get the same at this campus without overextending our staff. And then the other thing, community engagement, I'm excited to see where y'all go with this, but I really need to see some kind of. I mean, what y'all done, um I know y'all met with Fabian and y'all met with Nomin, I I lo- I wanna see some more of that, that one to one. You know, your area superintendent, your principal and even Bruce, I wanna see those, y'all there and having those conversations because. This is going to have an impact on our district that we've never seen and I think it's important that we give parents a space, but also understand like, this is our reality. We're not getting any money and we, it's not something that we did, it's because of underfunding from the state and I think that needs to be drilled in. And then my last thing is E C H S and New Hope. I know in an ideal world, we should have early college high school. I mean, it would have been amazing for me as a child, but I I want that program to succeed, but given the current budget constraints, like. I can't, I can't go in in good faith and be like, yes, please build this shiny building, but meanwhile, we have Rouse and Glenn and Leander that are getting at capacity. So what does E C H S and New Hope look like? Can we do that? Will that give a better experience for our students? I mean, what does that look like? Those are the things I need to see, but I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, I think regardless. Path three seems like something that it is the inevitable that this district's gonna have to do. And I think for me, again, going back, the biggest thing on all of that is the staffing guidelines. I gotta see what that looks like, so. You know, students are getting the same experience that they need, so that's what I need from y'all.
And as it relates to transportation, because uh some of those schools, like we heard from um Fabian, Nomin, Cypress. They tend, they walk to their schools, a lot of those students, and so what does it look like? Um not even path one, but Fabian is repurposed in both scenarios. But what is it gonna look like for for them? Are they going to all have a bus? Cause they're on the other side of Lake Line and can't cross Lake Line, so it's really just all busing. Um as opposed to, oh, you're within two miles, so there's no bus for you and you have to drive. And so that could also be a concern for people not wanting to to drive where they previously were walking before. The, uh, let's see. Alright, so let's see. Um and then I'm also. The hybrid version also is more of what's more, I think, step one. And then it looks like as we proceed, this is the first step and then as we proceed, see how it works. Then we can start having conversations with or looking at the enrollment situation around the district and for future years.
I think we give you a lot of guidance. I'm excited to see the next iteration.
In the lead up to the twenty twenty three bond, um there was talk about schools closing consolidation, just kind of a whisper. But we got a bunch of people that showed up one night and one of the things they talked about was, or kind of came up with, well, what about some other ideas? And one of those ideas was changing one of the schools into a library, um so just, that's my question. Are we changing any of the schools to a library?
You put, I already had my, I already had my mic on, um and so currently the the plans that. The culmination of our conversations around framework is kind of what you see, uh you know, tonight, based on those identified needs, right? And then running it through the matrix and 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 looking at what what options are are there. Currently, there's no plans to to convert any of the the schools to a library.
I think though, the discussion about that was read. I think though, the discussion about that was with regards to the Steiner area.
Yeah, it just, I think right now we were talking about revenue generating, and that's why we were talking about. Increasing enrollment or doing paid pre-K, because it would be great to have a library. Or have like Makerspace or just keep them as they are, but, um, it's a revenue issue. And, um, we're in a budget crisis, and so that's why we can't operate them just as, as they are. Um, I, I am supportive of path three. The hybrid path. I do have questions and concerns, more information requests that are similar to what you've heard. Thinking about our police department, you know, um. Is, is it possible to have a hub at one of the transportation centers and then have like those mini hub? You know, mini stations type of things at each of the three campuses, but maybe, um. Using some of that, those funds to, to create space for them. At the, in, in Cedar Park, so they're central to that area. Or, you know, just looking at what are some other options. I think I would like them more distributed as well. Um, thinking about accessibility to all of our campuses. Thinking about New Hope High School, I think there's a lot of potential to, um, expand New Hope High School. I'd, I'd like to hear about, um, academically, what, what are those plans? I know that I've talked to, um, to administration about some of the things that we could potentially do. That, um, I think would be advantageous to those students and allow, that might. Draw more students to consider going there with academic U I O, just different, different, um, electives. That don't have as much of that financial overhead. But being able to provide opportunities to students that could maybe alleviate some of the, the pressures that we are feeling. On our Leander High Schools. I also, I think that we have to think about what it looks like to have early college. In that same space, um, and, and seeing what that looks like with ACC. But I have a hard time, um, saying we're gonna repurpose this building and, and we're gonna. Repurpose it with just New Hope High School, uh, knowing that right now, yes, you know, our. Plan is to get it to grow, but where the numbers are right now, I, I just don't. I can't say that, yeah, we're gonna move these students out of there to move less students in there. It, that doesn't make sense to me. And so, um, would love for us to, you know, I can look at Cypress ACC on a map. It's not that far. There was a bus. They don't, you know, one of the things that we did hear when we were talking about. Early colleges, they spend a lot of their time at ACC, that a lot of their day is at that. So, um, I, I think being able to create something, you know, in that space. To be able to house both early college and New Hope, um, together. And that's what I got right now.
I keep going between path one and path three. It's, it's a difficult conversation all the way around because there isn't any campus in this district that isn't somebody's home. I talked a lot about that last weekend in between the few minutes I was not crying at all of the graduations. Because my kid's school was his home. He wouldn't have been on that stage last weekend without every single person in all three of, four of the schools he attended in this district. Every campus matters and it means something. And it's hard for me to try and balance that with the fact that we cannot keep doing nothing. It has to change because we are getting nothing from the people who are supposed to be maintaining public education in this state. It's actually in the constitution for anyone who didn't know that, that the legislature will maintain. A public education system in the state of Texas. And because they are not doing that. Districts all over the place are having this same thing. Somebody said earlier, Fort Worth ISD is closing eighteen schools. San Antonio is closing schools. I cannot even imagine what the rural districts are dealing with right now. I don't like any of these. I hate to use that word, but. For me, path one makes the most sense because it is handling the most of, of the issues. I would like to see New Hope High School and ECHS combined as well, and that's not something I was originally on board with. But I don't think that we are in a position. To build a whole new ECHS. I just, I don't think we're there. So I would like to see what it would look like to put New Hope and ECHS in Fabian. I would like to see path three start to Dr. Garing's point that they want to. You wanna start using the staffing guidelines on the campuses that are not specifically addressed here because there are more. So for me, it's sort of a hybrid between one and three, using one as a starting point. Because we have to start somewhere and then implementing three as we move forward. And thank y'all very much because this is a long conversation and it's an unpleasant conversation. And I really appreciate the work that you all did here.
I'd also like to thank the board for listening and, and asking the questions. Thank you very much Gloria for suggesting the one question, although, oh my gosh. Yeah, yeah, I'm growing, I'm growing here. It's a learning opportunity. So, um, I just wanna, um, just echo some of the sentiment, which is I think. We started off talking about this and I've asked about this a couple of times. We're talking about enrollment. The issue that we have is under enrollment in some, higher enrollment in other areas. And I will, um, go back and touch on that attendance scenario just a bit, demographics. I think, I, as I'm looking at some of the ones up in the north. Is there a way, I would like y'all to look at that and just tell us, is there a way we can look at some of those? Um, to address some of the enrollment issues in that part. I'd like to know when we're looking at this, and Gloria said it, and Anna said it, and they've talked about it a couple of times. Um, for, you know, we've, we've looked at, and I think some of the assumptions have been made, River Ridge, uh, Laura Bush, they're, they're. There, but Steiner Ranch is repurposed. I wanna know what does that mean? Does that mean part of the campus stays and then the other part is a pre-K? Is it a complete? If we don't do a pre-K, what would be the public private ship opportunity now that we can start asking those questions? Cause you didn't, you couldn't really explore that before. As we're talking about these campuses, I think the most important thing to me is, how are we looking at getting them enrollment? Because if we close down a campus and it becomes a district facility, then it's not about increasing enrollment. And so, that's where I'm just gonna keep leaning into is I'm gonna be like, are we closing off options? Um, there was a trustee who asked a question, believe it or not, I didn't ask this one. Um, and in the answer to it was, um, the, the trustee said, and, um, I have a guess. But the trustee said, what decisions can we make now that we won't regret later? And the answer came back, I think from the district, was we should prioritize decisions that maintain flexibility. Protect core values, including student and staff experience. And, and, and align with the long-term demographic trends. And so, that's, I think what I'm gonna be thinking about as we keep going forward with this is. How are we really protecting those opportunities as best we can? So, here's my question. When we, when we come down to it, I wanna know how we're building some kind of path here to inform our future process. Because as we've all said up here, there's more schools on the horizon back there. So, when do they hit a band that we need to start looking at implementing the staffing guidelines? At what point does that come into place? And then at what point does it ever go too low, or it's like, okay, now, now, this isn't, we've gotta. Go to the next, I mean, there's gotta be something in here, and I wanna be able to have this trajectory now. So that it's something we implement evenly across the district as we continue to roll out. And then at some point, we're gonna have to figure out, how do you roll this into middle schools? Cause that's another conversation. And so, it's not here, not tonight, but again, how do we keep enrollment going? And how do we, uh, best do this in a way, looking at all the different tools in our toolbox? That gives us some type of model that informs our future decisions. And I'm sure I'll think of all the other things I should have said, but, um, I think. I think that's gonna be where I, I need to stop right now. Any last comments? No? Okay, well, I think that we've given some great direction. I want to thank you all. I know that this has been difficult. I know we've asked for a lot of information. I know it's been this conversation in some form for over two years. I think that, yeah, I, I really thought the ledge was gonna be different this time, and we, we need to. We need to move forward and, um, and make sure that we're protecting. Leander ISD and the future of Leander ISD. And so, hard decisions have to be made. And thank you for the community for coming out. Thank you for the community that's still here. I'm sorry that, that we're at this place. I wish it was something different. And I will keep encouraging our community to talk to your elected officials. Um, talk to your legislators, talk to your senator, talk to the people in the pink building downtown. Because this, this is the reality. If you look at what's happening across the state of Texas, this isn't, this isn't isolated to Leander ISD. This is, this is happening across the nation, but we're really seeing it in Texas. And so, I appreciate y'all. Um, bringing back these paths and being, uh, open to all of our questions. And there were a lot of questions tonight, but, um. I know that there's a lot of other questions that y'all have been answering throughout the last few months via email. So, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
Um, I'm going to, um, ask for a ten-minute break, so we'll be back at eleven forty-five. All right, it is eleven fifty-eight and we are back from, eleven forty-eight PM. And we're back from our break. We're going to move to our next agenda item, which I have right here. It is Agenda Item 9B2. And before we get too far in there, Shaday has something she wants to say.
So after our last meeting where we talked about, um, getting an audit on regarding repurposing or whatever it is, we're gonna do a long-range, um, plan. So we've, we have an internal audit, or the internal audit function is, stays with the board. And so we do have a third-party, um, provider that we use. And so, um, I've had the discussion with them as the Chair of the Internal Audit Committee. And they will be looking at just a lot of what we just discussed today. Looking at verifying the costs and just looking at, uh, a slightly bigger scope to see what really our solutions could be. And then also for the reduced staffing model, they also would look at different options. Um, because we had discussed, this one is just reduced staffing. They look at other models of what, what could be small schools.
So Shaday was saying, ask that we not put this for vote, that we hold? Because the audit committee will have something back from our audit, our third-party audit company. Well, they'll be giving us a proposal.
Yeah, so as soon as we get the proposal, then it'll be coming back to the board. So, um, we can get that moving.
My only request is, I'd like to see something similar that AISD did. Because that was a pretty well-detailed report. I mean, it got down to the staffing. I mean, it was pretty solid.
Um, I did talk to them about the AISD, um, and they did. So that's gonna be part of it. And then on top of that, looking at different small school models.
And, and for AISD, I didn't see that. So I don't know what we're talking about there. But I do think there's this thing where, um, if you put in the data, you'll get out a result. And I think it's very important for us to be thoughtful of what data we're putting in. I mean, even tonight, we were talking about the different staffing models. What could a different enrollment look like? And so I really wanna make sure it's, it's as a robust look. Or it definitely tells us its limitations in that study. Because if we're gonna spend funds on this and we're using it to be a point, I wanna make sure we know its limitations. So I can be like, well, it didn't consider this. And, and I'd like us to figure out how it, and maybe Austin ISD had it, but how do you address the intangibles? You know, like, you're, I mean, people are talking about your community that you're, you lose, your trust that you lose. How long does it take to build that up? What does it do to the kids? I mean, I think there's a lot of different pieces that I hope, that it would hold. And if it doesn't, that we can hold the space to go, okay, it didn't cover everything.
Okay, or even Paul mentioned property values, if they can answer that one too.
All right, and then we're going to move over to Item 9B2, which is Discussion of Administration to Seek Requests for Qualifications for the Review and Verification of Cost-Saving Estimates. Nope, we just did that and now we're moving, sorry, it's getting late, y'all. Now, we are, I was, once I finished reading it, I was like, no, that's the thing. Nicosi's like, come on Gloria, get it together, get us out of here. Okay, sorry. Item 9B3, Discussion of the Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five Budget Projections.
Just to provide an update, we've, we've done this for the last month, during January through the, the budget adoption process. As, as mentioned earlier, uh, Dr. Gary mentioned this earlier in our, our previous discussion on our previous item. But you know, we're, we are still anticipating, uh, about twenty-three million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars reduction in the general fund balance. And I will just put with a little asterisk there, that's assuming we, we get our Shar's money. And that, that may not, we, we appealed it, so everything gets put on hold, so. Well, this is just the current year stuff. Yeah, not anything new, but, so just, uh, that number really hasn't, hasn't changed. Uh, you know, we, we will get some of the Shar's piece, I just won't, may not have it by June thirtieth, but I can still book it, so. But I just wanted to let you know that's where the number is. It's, it's kind of fluctu, it's kind of gotten pretty, pretty similar. It, it hasn't fluctuated too much the last month or so. But just give you an update on that, and we weren't happy to answer any questions if there's anything on that.
No thanks. Uh, you can move us on through to Item 9B4.
All right, 9B4, uh, this is our certified estimate. Yeah, I got a couple of slides real quick. I won't, I won't spend just a ton of time, uh, just to give you a heads-up. Kind of what we're looking at with our property values and recapture for the upcoming year. So Property Value Overview. Our maximum compressed rate, uh, is decreasing. The MNO tax collections has gone up because the value increased. Our state aid goes up, our recapture goes up. Our addition, there's no additional MNO revenue, and then the additional INS revenue. So just kind of give you an idea of what, what makes up our tax rate and, and how all this works out. So basically, we budget our four percent on the budget. Uh, on our budget development, we're at five-point-six-nine percent, or MCI, MCR, sorry. Originally was, we thought would be fifty-nine-seven-one, now it's fifty-eight-five-nine. That, that goes up because of the values go up. So our net MNO revenue, three-eighty-nine million, stays the same to three-eighty-nine million. Uh, just to give you a, a breakdown between the Travis County and the Williamson, uh, Williamson County values, our growth. Travis County is a smaller piece of, of our district value as a whole. But between the two, uh, five-point-six-nine percent. You can tell we've gone up quite a bit. Uh, for the previous years that we have starting to, one year over another. We had that slow taper there in twenty-three, twenty-four, then the last two years have been over six percent for both years, so. Uh, values are going up, we were surprised this year on Travis County. But commercial actually turned the corner, uh, in, in, in Austin area, the Travis County area. So that's kind of, uh, put us back in the positive. We were expecting negative four on Travis County originally, so that was a bit of a surprise.
How is that keeping up with, just wanna make sure we've got that right, on the, the comptroller? Um, you know, I'm saying the property value studies, are we still sticking the line? There's not an issue, we don't?
We're within the five percent, uh, confidence interval. So we're, we're still getting full, full, full state funding. Uh, the average home market in, uh, Leander ISD, looking back to two thousand fifteen, sixteen, you know, the average market, uh, was just under four-hundred thousand, by about three-seventy-five or so. And the taxable value was just a little bit less than that, maybe three-fifty, three-forty. Jump ahead, you have the big spike in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. The values have gone up, have gone up, have gone up. So the value, market value in twenty-five, twenty-six, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand. But the taxable value is, is four-eighty-five, because that's the, the ten percent cap each year, you're, you're, you can actually go up. So even with the, the values growth slowing down a little bit, the taxable value is still playing catch-up for the, for the, the previous years of being capped at ten percent. So that's how, what our impact on funding. Yeah, it's our net MNO revenue is in the green, the state aid revenue is in the, the light brown, and then the revenue per ADA. The, we had the golden yield, yield increase, we had the Vater in twenty-two, twenty-three. So our, that was the little jump there you see between twenty-one, twenty-two and, and forward. Uh, we're right at ten-thousand-fifty-three dollars, uh, revenue, uh, per average daily attendance. So that's kind of where we're, that's, that's where we're at. You can tell the bulk of our, of our budget is local tax dollars. Uh, we're, we're considered property wealthy, obviously paying recapture. Uh, then we get a little bit of state revenue, or state funding. Uh, look at this a different way, uh, you're, again, the green is our net MNO tax revenue and, and blue is our INS, uh, our INS revenue. And then the, the red is the local property value freeze adjusted. So you can see even with the, the, as the values go up, there is, the, the frozen estimates have, have gone up as well. Uh, and our tax rate is, we're looking at point seven-two-five-nine and thirty-three cents on the INS side. Uh, Property Value and Tax Rate Compression. You can tell our tax rate going back to oh-seven, oh-eight was a dollar thirty-three. Uh, went up a little bit throughout a lot of those years, and then now we're looking down at a dollar oh-five. So it has gone down, uh, you know, total tax rate, uh, uh, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, is a dollar six-five-nine. I jumped ahead to the last column there, but, uh, so it's gone down approximately twenty-seven cents, so. Uh, state mandated most of that, some of it was INS going down, and then the, the Vater piece, so. We are maximizing the state funding and still trying to do our best to...
But Pete on eleven, we were, we did start to vote down on the debt, like, Gloria was here, we, we went down the INS.
Forty-eight cents for a while, then you went down to forty-four and forty-two.
But what happened is in the states said, oh, well, now we wanna tell you how and what. And so we, we didn't have, we lost that flexibility there, right? And so it just, now it just looks like that, so.
Yeah, it tapers down, but you've got, uh, you guys, the district board, the district had already started to reduce their INS rate. And then we did the Vater, which was the, the six cents and the nine cents, nine cents down, six cents up. And so that shows, it makes it look like a little bit, slows that curve down a little bit. But since, you know, four years, four years ago, it's been, we've been at thirty-three cents. And then the only changes have been the compression on the MNO side. And our Property Value Impact on Debt Service, our debt service payment, you can, going back to sixteen, seventeen till now, we've had, you know, two bond elections in that time, three bond elections in that time, actually. Uh, we still have the, we've been at thirty-three cents, uh, since, uh, oh, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, we, we still have the, 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 that thirty-three cents of our value growth still provides, uh, meet our annual debt payment, so. Recapture Overview. Uh, my first year here, the big red one, the twenty, the forty-six million, you know, that was a, a, was, was an opportunity to explain how recapture works for districts. Uh, since then, with the, the Senate Bill Two, or the reduction, uh, in the, uh, MNO rate, uh, our, our, our recapture payment has gone down. We're at, out of tier one, and now it's just on the copper penny. So we've nine-and-a-half million in twenty-three, twenty-four, and we're kind of steadily go up about a million each year. Uh, Recapture Projections. Again, it's forty-six-point-five in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then we're still nine-and-a-half, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen million that we send back to the state, because our local values are, are higher than our, the allowable amount. Uh, any, that kind of concludes the presentation. I know it's kind of fast and furious, but you know, if there's any questions, but there, there wasn't anything that, that, in my opinion, that, that stood out as an anomaly, is pretty much the same, kind of the, the roadmap we've been on for the last few years. But we weren't happy to answer any questions if there aren't any.
No, but I do want an update later. Because what we just talked about for the Legis Committee, and how we're gonna do staffing, and all of this plays a role. So I, I'd like to see all the pieces together later.
So when it comes to, quick question about the recapture. What amount of either attendance or enrollment increase do we need in order to, to keep that? Attendance increase or enrollment increase to keep that?
Okay, I don't know the exact amount, but I know that as enrollment increases and as your attendance rate increases, that increases your WADA, which is your property value divided by your WADA. So it will decrease your recapture payment. So I'm acting, calculate back into it, but I know that, you know, if your enrollment goes up and your attendance rate goes down, you don't get much benefit. If your enrollment goes up and your attendance rate stays the same or goes up, then you get more, you're, you get a higher level of WADA, which, it goes in that calculation, which you have, which reduces your recapture payment. So like right now, if our, if we went from ninety-four percent to ninety-six percent of tenants, our WADA would increase, and then we would have a, a decrease in our recapture payment.
Okay, so maybe about, I think you said one percent was three?
Three million.
Yeah, okay.
Three million a local revenue.
That's close to five percent, all right.
Yeah, no, a lot of that may not come into play, because I really, when I answered that question, I was thinking tier one. A lot of ours is on the copper penny side, so we're capped, so. Our attendance, that really may not help us on the, on the, on the copper piece.
And, and honestly, the change in recapture doesn't make any difference to our revenue.
Yeah, it's just less we send back, but it's, doesn't get, I don't get a keep anymore, yeah. Now, if our WADA, but if our WADA doesn't go up, because, yeah.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll move to Item 9B5, Consider Approval of the Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Budget Amendment Number Thirteen.
All right, tonight we have Budget Amendment Number Thirteen. Uh, the, um, nothing of significance in this one, at the, at the, at the exception of the General Fund. We did increase the transfer out from the General Fund, uh, by six-hundred thousand uh, to transfer to the Child Nutrition, uh, Service, uh, for a, a TDA audit we recently had. And so we had some purchases that were made, that were made by, we used a co-op. However, for child nutrition, you have to use a co-op that meets special requirements, and we did not meet those. And so we had to reimburse, and we did appeal that with TDA, and that was not successful. So we did have to show that we transferred that money over to the So we did have to show that we transferred that money over to the Food Service Fund. And we are in the process of now reversing, trying to do every expense that we have in 199 that could move to Food Service. We are now doing that to try to get that back and help the 199 fund going forward. But we are trying to alleviate some of that, that transfer out. That's the main thing on that budget amendment.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve FY '25 Budget Amendment Number 13 as presented.
I second. Trish makes motion, Anna seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is 12:03 AM and the Board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Pending or Contemplated Litigation and/or Attorney/Client Privilege Matter. Texas Government Code 551.074, Personnel Deliberation Regarding Resignations, Terminations, Employment Reassignments, Duties and Evaluation of Personnel and Public Officers. Texas Government Code 551.0821, Deliberation Regarding Matters Whereby Personally Identifiable Information Regarding One or More Students Will Be Disclosed. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed-session agenda items will be taken when the Board returns to open session. It is 12:10 AM and the Board, having no further business, this meeting of the Leander ISD is adjourned.